Good morning and welcome to the February 6, 2025, meeting of the California Coastal Commission. I'd like to ask Ms. Miller to please call the roll.
Commissioner Baczko. Commissioner Calfee.
Here.
Commissioner Dumlaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Escalante. Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner Ketchum.
Here.
Commissioner Lowenberg. Commissioner Notoff. Commissioner Turnbull Sanders.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Here.
Chair Cummings.
Here.
You have a call.
All right. Thank you very much. I'd like to turn to our staff to notify the public of the virtual meeting procedures.
Good morning. This coastal commission meeting is occurring both in person and through Zoom. This meeting is also being webcast and can be viewed online at calsspan.org. If you have access to the internet and wish to watch or listen to the meeting only and not speak on the item, we recommend you use the Calspan website. Those who wish to address the commission today can do so in person through the Zoom platform or by phone. The speaker request forms may be found on the commission's webpage. Paper forms and a scalable QR code for paperless submissions are available on the commission staff table just outside the meeting room. For those on Zoom, we have posted virtual hearing procedures on the commission agenda page, which is a guide on providing comments via Zoom or by phone. Members of the public speaking during general public comments may be given up to two minutes to speak at the discretion of the chair. Request to speak during the general public comments period will not be accepted after 9:00 a.m. on each day of the meeting. In order to provide the opportunity for the broadest range of public participation, you may speak on a specific topic one time only each month. Those speaking on an agenda item that is not general public comments are typically allowed two to three minutes to speak at the discretion of the chair. We will accept a request to speak on an item up until the chair opens the hearing on that particular item. If you have access to the internet, please go to the commission's webpage and click on the link to fill out a speaker request. If you do not have internet access or prefer to testify by phone, please call the commission staff at (562) 477-9089. Again, that number is (562) 477-9089. Staff will provide you with a telephone number, telephone call-in number, and instructions for how to participate and provide testimony by phone. We will manage speakers coming in and out of the meeting through a meeting organizer. When it is your time to address the commission, the organizer will invite you to turn on your video and microphone or provide instructions on how to unmute the phone. Chair Cummings, that concludes the virtual hearing procedures.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, that moves us to item number three, agenda changes. I'd like to turn to staff to walk us through changes to our agenda today.
Thank you and good morning, Chair Cummings and commissioners. We have 14 changes to the agenda. Please bear with me for a moment as I go over the full list of items, but also note they're all accurately captured in the agenda changes memo posted to our online agenda. First, item 11A has been moved to consent for a CDP application by the Ventura County Harbor Department for beach management activities. Next, item 13A has been postponed for an after-the-fact CDP application for the demolition and construction of a single-family home in Venice. Next, combined item 13B and 14A has been moved to consent for an after-the-fact CDP inconsistency certification for dredging in King Harbor and Redondo Beach. Next, item 16A has been moved to consent. This is the time extension for a Humboldt County LCP amendment to update its sign ordinance. Next, 16B has been moved to consent. This is another time extension for Humboldt County LCP amendment to modify provisions related to the development of wireless telecommunications facilities. Next, item 20A has been moved to consent for an amendment to the City of Carlsbad's LCP plan, sorry, LCP implementation plan for ADUs. Next, item 20B has been moved to consent for an amendment to the City of Carlsbad's implementation plan for multifamily housing and mixed-use development. Next, item 20C has been moved to consent for an amendment to the City of Del Mar's LCP land use plan and IP to correct map records. Next, item 20D has been moved to consent for an amendment to the City of Del Mar's LCP land use plan and IP for affordable housing. Next, item 20E has been moved to consent for a time extension for a request by the City of San Diego to amend its LCP to remove parking requirements. Next, item 20F has been moved to consent for a time extension for a request by the City of San Diego for a range of minor amendments to its LCP. Next, item 20G has been moved to consent for a request by the City of San Diego to amend its implementation program to create two new community commercial zone bases. And finally, item 21A has been postponed for a CDP application for demolition and construction of a duplex in Mission Beach, San Diego. I know it's a long list. If you have any questions, want me to repeat, please ask. Otherwise, this concludes the changes to today's agenda, and that brings us to item four. And I'll turn the mic back to you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so we're going to move on to general public comment. This is an opportunity for the members of the public to address us to items that are not on our agenda. And given that yesterday we had to trail some people till today because of time constraints, we're going to start with the people who we had signed up for today from yesterday first, who are online. Then we're going to return to members of the public who are here with us today to continue with public comment. And then when we finish with the people who are here, we'll go back online to the people who signed up online for today. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chris to kick us off with public comment.
Okay, that would be me. So we have a total of 34 speakers and eight from yesterday via Zoom, 18 via Zoom, and four in person today. For members of the public, I will be announcing the names of the upcoming speakers and invite you to speak when it's your turn. Each speaker will be allowed two minutes during general public comments in order to allow for live video testimonies on Zoom. We will be bringing you in as a talent. As we bring you in, your Zoom will reload. This may take a moment to speed up this process. We will bring several people in at a time, but please remain muted and keep your video off until we ask you to speak. After your time is up, you will be moved to the attendee mode. For members of the public present in the room, I will call your names in the order that they appear on our signup list. When you hear your name, please line up behind the podium and announce yourself with your name when you approach to speak. Several helpful tips. There is a raise hand function that will help us find you in the attendee list. If you are using a phone or audio, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine. If you are participating by Zoom, you should see a button on your Zoom screen. If you have signed up to speak for this item and are able to do so, please raise your hand now. When it is your time to speak, we will invite you to unmute and turn on your camera. You can unmute yourself on a phone by dialing star six. Please remember to state your name for the record. First up, we will have Angelina Naglia.
Hello, can you hear me all?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I can't get the video started, but hopefully you have my letter and my PowerPoint loaded. Is that correct? I'm Angelina Naglia, and I'm from the leader for the Coalition for Safer Trains. And in my short time today, I know-
Give us one sec. We're trying to get your presentation up.
Oh, okay, cool.
All right, looks like you can get started. Ready to go.
Oh, okay, cool. Perfect. Once again, hopefully you've got the letter and the PowerPoint. And I'm the leader of the Coalition for Safer Trains, and I know you've received a lot of information from our groups yesterday as well, the legalities. We're here to talk about the Trestle Bridge really quickly. And as you know, it's in the jurisdiction of the coastal commission. This Trestle Bridge represents a problem for us because Sandag's- Following through on having the change- Go to the next slide if you could, sorry. We're a group ranging with people from all the way from Oceanside down to San Diego, and our mission is to really watch the alignment of where the 351-mile low-sand corridor is going to be and what's the least impact to communities and the environment. Next slide, please, number three. What's the issue? Is the Sandagito Bridge with the Fairgrounds platform, which has not been built yet? We're really asking the project should not be allowed.
I think we need to advance one more slide.
Oh, three. I'm on three. Are you on three? Okay, cool. Okay, so what we're asking about is the Sandagito Bridge with the Fairgrounds platform, which has not been built yet, which was passed over a decade ago, really didn't go through the real thorough secret approval, and it was passed as an existing structure. Well, I'm asking anybody, tell me where the event platform is. There is none that exists, and that's how it was passed as an existing structure with an event platform. The other issue, and so that should be looked in from a legality standpoint. The other issue, because it was just done so long ago, is now we have the whole low-sand corridor that's being discussed in the alignments to go with it. Well, the rail stakeholders' alignments of options B and C, which were in the July 2024 NOP, both would utilize the new bridge. Our alignment does not utilize the bridge. So we're asking the coastal commission to stay or postpone the construction of the bridge to the full alignment, which this bridge is part of that alignment. It should not be piecemealed because that's illegal as well because it minimizes what community environmental impacts this bridge might have. So we're asking the coastal commission today, it should be delayed till the optimal track route is chosen. It shouldn't be driving the choice. And if it's built, that means our option A, which made our shortlist, it was the only non-rail stakeholder alignment that made it into the shortlist. We lower the train in the Solana Beach trench, and we'd be 140 feet under the-
Thank you so much.
Sorry?
Thank you for your comments. Your time's up.
Oh, my time's up. So you've got my PowerPoint, so you can read it, and you've got the letters. You can update what we want about staying or postponing the bridge. That's what we're asking for today. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Arati Desai, and followed by Arty Galla.
Good morning, commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. My name is Arty Desai, and I'm a founding team member of Arunay Foundation. Thank you for this opportunity to speak before you today. Our foundation is based in San Francisco Bay Area, and we are dedicated to enhancing beach safety through initiatives such as installing lifebuoy rings and conducting safety drills for elementary and middle schools. I'm here today to emphasize the urgent need for stronger beach safety measures. Just last month, a tragedy struck again at Half Moon Bay's Cowell Ranch Beach, where a father and an eight-year-old son drowned. Next slide, please. Arunay Foundation was founded- This is the Cowell Ranch Beach, as you can see, where on Jan. 19, 2025, a man and his eight-year-old son drowned. Next slide, please. Arunay Foundation was founded in memory of Arunay, who was swept away by a sneaker wave at this very beach, Cowell Ranch, in Jan. 2021. Despite an extensive community search, he was never found. Next slide, please. Over the past eight years, at least 23 drowning incidents have been reported at Northern California beaches, including Half Moon Bay, Santa Cruz, San Francisco. Through the actual number is likely much higher. High-risk areas like Cowell Ranch Beach, Ocean Beach, and Panther Beach continue to pose serious dangers due to strong currents and unpredictable waves. While some search and rescue efforts end in success, far too many do not. These heartbreaking tragedies remind us that our work is important, far from our goals of making our beaches safer. I would now like to bring my colleague, Arty Galot. She will share more about the mission and what we have achieved so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Arty. Good morning, everyone. Next slide, please. Here you can see the deadliest beaches, which, you know, line up in the area. If you can move on to the next slide, I have content on the next one. Here, we are trying to tell you that- Can you go to the next? To begin with, I want to shine some light on the cost comparison of installation of our life rings against the cost comparison, which goes into rescue and search for any victim. It can be seen that the gap between two numbers is huge. Approximately $9,000 taxpayer dollars are used in rescue, whereas our life rings sum up to about $2,500. There is one last important number I would like to mention is that every fatal drowning, there are at least three non-fatal drowning incidents. The numbers should alarm us and help us make the decision. Next slide, please. Next slide. Now let me tell you a little bit about what we have achieved so far. In the last three years, if you can move on to the next slide. In the last three years, we have installed about 25 lifesaving buoys along the coast, from Half Moon Bay to south of San Francisco. These lifesaving rings have been critical tools and have already saved lives. Every year, there are numerous rescue operations along our coastline. Next slide, please. Arunay Foundation is proud to be part of the success story shared on our social media, where lifesaving rings have turned out to be handy for our first responders. Next slide, please. At the Arunay Foundation, we are not just installing life rings, we are also educating our community. We conduct beach safety talks at schools to teach kids how to stay safe near the water. We have already educated nearly 1,000 kids and their families. Alongside this, we also organize an annual walkathon to raise awareness and inform the community about drowning prevention. But awareness alone isn't enough. We need action. I would like to invite my colleague, Sunali, to talk about what we are asking. Sunali?
Good morning. Esteemed members of the coastal commission, my name is Sunali Petodia, and I'm with Arunay Foundation. And we will stay on the slide as you see it on your screen. The answer, the question is, why is the Arunay Foundation here today? We are here today to seek your support in expediting approvals and developing a plan to install lifesaving ring stations at beaches across Northern California. Additionally, we urge the implementation of improved signage or even temporary closures on high surf days to enhance public safety. Because sometimes the best way to save a life is to prevent people from getting into dangerous situations in the first place. One of the biggest hurdles we face is navigating the permit process with the California Coastal Commission. If the city can help streamline these approvals, it would be a game changer for our mission. And just to be clear, the Arunay Foundation is fully committed to funding and donating as many life ring stations as needed. Just let us know how we can move forward together. We are also actively working on fundraising and would love to apply for any grants we may be eligible for. If you know of any funding sources that could help support this effort, please let us know. We are ready to do the work. Our key request, Arunay Foundation is ready and able to install life ring stations at any and all beaches across Northern California coastline. All we need is expedited approvals from cities, counties, state, and California Coastal Commission. We would like to collaborate with California Coastal Commission to find the most dangerous beaches and get permits to install rings at priority, working alongside appropriate cities, counties, and state. Not long ago, 12-year-old Arunay was swept away by sneaker waves with no lifesaving ring nearby. Today, the Arunay Foundation stands to ensure no family ever has to endure the same tragedy. With your support, we can take a crucial step towards making our coastline safe for everyone. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next should be Sharmi. Sharmi, if you can, please unmute yourself. Sharmi, if you hear us, can you please unmute yourself?
Uh, yes, do you hear me?
Oh, no, no, no. Sorry, ma'am. Not you, Ms. Bonnie. Ms. Sharmi. Sharmi, are you there?
If it's Bonnie, then yes, I'm here.
No. Okay, let's go with Carol. Carriage. Please unmute yourself, Carol Carriage.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. For years, Del Mar residents have known that the train would need to be removed from the bluff in our town, but no one ever thought it would happen in our lifetime. We have heard of several possible location options, and the fact that Sandag has likely narrowed the decision to two options, which both require double-track tunneling through the Del Mar hillside and pollution-generating tunnel portals close to homes on the coast. Even before a route option is fairly evaluated and chosen, Sandag plans to reconstruct the exiting rail bridge over the lagoon to double-track and lengthen it to make more likely that a realignment option will be chosen that will require a portal close to the coast and on the north side of the Del Mar hillside. This bulky widened double-track structure will span entirely over the recently restored lagoon and the Sandagito River Valley floodplain as it flows into the ocean and is projected to carry double number of trains. This area is also at the end of the western corridor of the river valley, which was a location of powerful Santa Ana winds during the Witch Creek Fire in 2007. Scientists have warned all California coastal cities of extreme weather, including likely unpredictable volatile atmospheric river storms. And our region, this includes more frequent and stronger Santa Ana windstorms. How can an agency justify the Sandagito River Valley floodplain as an area safe for train passengers, cargo, and essential military equipment, even if the structure is elevated? Along with considering sea level rise predictions, high tide, stormy seas, groundwater flooding, and the area's proximity to an earthquake fault, there were two waterspouts noted in this region last week. Please help us by recommending the Sandag safer realignment routes located inland. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Bonnie Ernest, followed by Tiffany Curry, followed by Mia Di Costano. Bonnie, if you're there, go ahead and speak. Thank you.
Uh, yes, Bonnie Ernest, Oceano, California. And I have a video I believe you should have there. You can show any time. I'm a member of the Oceano Beach Community Association, a group that has long advocated for protection of our coastal environment and safe public access to our Oceano portion of business. What you see in the video is the result of recent permit waiver-
Hang on one sec. We're getting the video loaded right now.
Okay. And my time stopped.
When would you like to run the video? Do you want us to run it?
Anytime, anytime.
And then if we can reset the clock since it's been running as well.
Thanks so much.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started.
What you see in the video is the result of recent permit waiver approved last December. We recognize that buildup sand along the seaward side of Strand Avenue is of great concern to some homeowners, many of whom use these properties as vacation rentals. Permit and 55-page plan authored by homeowners claims wind as the cause. We counter the problem is decades of vehicle traffic and heavy machinery that have disrupted natural sand movement. When the beach was closed to COVID, to vehicles during COVID, we presented undeniable evidence that stabilizing Fordunes formed naturally within weeks, protecting both the beach and the adjacent homes. Now, under the guise of restoration and enhanced public access, which is a false claim, this five-year experimental project is being used to justify a massive manipulation of our coastline. I ask, does the commission fully understand the scope of this project? I estimate about 16-plus acres. Who's accountable? State parks, OHV, Slow County, a few dozen homeowners, the staff at CCC? Please recognize this project at its core is basically a free pass on bulldozing this beach for the next five years and a concession to private interests, all at the expense of our shared coastal resources. And I appreciate your hard work, and thank you for this time to speak in extra time.
Next is Tiffany Curry, followed by Mia Di Costano, followed by John Dow.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good morning, Chair Cummings and commissioners. My name is Tiffany Curry, and I'm a part of the Public Policy Coordinator position at Outdoor Outreach. I'm a San Diego-based nonprofit connecting youth to the transformative powers of the outdoors. Our mission is to ensure all young people, especially those from underserved communities, have meaningful opportunities to experience and enjoy public beaches, parks, and coastal spaces. As previous recipients of the Whale Tail Grant, we are deeply grateful for and strongly support continued investment in coastal access programs that remove barriers for underserved communities. Yet, when trying to run activities, we often face restrictive permitting policies that limit our visits to the coast, what days of the week we can go, and which beaches we are allowed to use. For this reason, we sponsored AB 2939, legislation that was formally supported by the commission. As of January 1st, we now have a statewide standard that gives coastal equity programs the same exact access to local parks and beaches as the general public. However, we continue to see permitting requirements from coastal managers that do not align with this new law. We are urging the commission to develop and provide clear guidance to the coastal managers on the alignment of AB 2939 with the coastal act. This will help all local governments, equity-based organizations, and tribal groups work together to expand equitable coastal access. Thank you for your time and leadership on this critical issue, and I also appreciate y'all prioritizing speakers from yesterday. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Mia Di Costano.
Hello, commissioners. Thank you for taking my comment. My name is Mia Di Costano. I am representing the UCSB Stop Sable Student Coalition and 24,000 UCSB students. As UCSB students, we take pride in our coast and will do everything we can to continually protect it. We are very concerned about the potential restart of the pipeline which devastated our region 10 years ago. Given that so many questions about this pipeline remain unsolved, we ask you to extend the current cease and desist order and require that Sable obtains a coastal development permit before being approved to restart. This oversight from you and other agencies ensures that our coast is as protected as possible. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Next is John Dow, followed by Suzanne Cummings, followed by Nina Beatty.
Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
John Dow, Save Our Beaches San Clemente. I was going to speak yesterday about OCTA's needless destruction of San Clemente's beaches. However, after listening to Monday's recording of OCTA's coastal rail project update, those comments are irrelevant. I'm now compelled to ask this commission and staff for a response to what I heard. Because if OCTA's claims are accurate, then this commission, not OCTA, would be responsible for any further destruction of San Clemente's beaches, a situation I find unimaginable. A little context, only after significant public outcry at OCTA's planned hard armoring of San Clemente's coast did they acquiesce and commit to placing over 500,000 cubic yards of sand on San Clemente's beaches. Common sense would have had that sand delivered before this winter. It didn't happen. Remarkably, due to mild weather and San Clemente's own sand replenishment efforts, train service has not been disrupted so far. OCTA now claims sand placement may likely take over two years due to permitting issues. And when asked what was their biggest obstacle, their CEO stated unequivocally it was this commission. OCTA asserts that you have created a logical permitting dilemma. If they seek to proactively place sand to protect their tracks, they must undergo a lengthy CDP process. Yet, if an emergency arises, they can bypass this process and place beach-damaging boulders immediately. This doesn't protect our coast. It destroys it. Everyone knows if no preventative action is taken, another service interruption is inevitable, and more hard armoring will result. Please tell me this is not the position of this commission and that you will grant OCTA emergency permitting, authorizing them to place sand now before another preventable crisis occurs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Suzanne Cummings, followed by Nina Beatty, followed by Lucia Casta Lee Nuelvo. Suzanne, if you can go ahead and speak.
Good morning, commissioners and staff. I'm Suzanne Cummings, a lawyer and member of the Sierra Club Angeles Chapter's Airport Marina Group. Thank you for following closely Sable Offshore's unpermitted work on the oil pipeline that caused a huge spill in 2015. I agree with fearless grandmothers and others who have spoken so eloquently over the last couple of days. Please follow up on the reports of new viol- Please follow up on the reports of new violations and require CDP permits before any work is done. Please ensure that Sable follows the law and undergoes environmental review. Thank you for continuing to enforce the law and to protect our beautiful coast.
Sounds like we lost your sound. Uh, maybe check the, you might have hit mute.
Suzanne, are you there?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay, I'm sorry. Shall I start over? Yes. Good morning, honorable Commissioners and staff. I'm Suzanne Cummings, a lawyer and conservation chair of the Sierra Club Angeles Chapter's Airport Marina Group. Thank you for following closely Sable Offshore's unpermitted work on the oil pipeline that caused a huge spill in 2015. I agree with the fearless grandmothers and others who have spoken so eloquently. Follow up on the reports of new violations and require CDP permits before any work is done. Please ensure that Sable follows the law and undergoes environmental review. Thank you for continuing to enforce the law and to protect our beautiful coast.
Thank you. Next up is Nina Beatty. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good morning. My name is Nina Beatty from Monterey. The Monterey Bay Aquarium is doing a high-decibel geophysical survey all day today in Monterey Bay. That means the aquarium will blast the ocean, the marine sanctuary, with Saturn V rocket decibel levels that will maim and kill sea life. And I wonder if it could cause earthquakes, too. Please contact the Monterey Bay Aquarium and tell them to halt today's survey. I wrote you last week to protest the surveys done already in January and today's, and I signed up to speak yesterday, but public comments were halted before I could speak. The impacts of sonar and seismic testing are known. They're devastating and completely disrupt the ocean environment. In the name of science, in the name of Earth, and the ocean, and all our relatives, please halt these toxic surveys. Last week's surveys were without even proper notice. Their equipment blasted 191 to 221 decibels. Lower decibel levels damage internal organs, rupture membranes, cause embolisms, and cause animals to strand. You don't have to hear decibels for it to harm or kill you. Powerful resonance also damages organs and whole bodies like it did to the Tacoma Narrows Bridge. The Monterey Bay Aquarium surveys are eight hours long. Ocean maximum for humans is 110 decibels for half hour. Decibels are logarithmic, so the aquarium's 191 decibels is one billion times higher than ocean's limit and is a thousand times higher than military LRED weapons. Marine animals from plankton to whales are acutely sensitive, and the ocean is already extremely stressed. The aquarium failed to even provide this notice. This is not in the ocean's best interest, which should be the first priority. Please call them to halt this now and oppose future surveys. This affects everyone in the water, plankton, krill, fish, seals and sea lions, otters, fish of all species, crab, starfish, dolphins, turtles, diving birds, whales, and any humans in the water. This is extremely toxic. And they're using this simply to do topographic and geographical surveys. This is unconscionable. Please call them to halt the survey now. Thank you.
Also, it sounds like you need to speak a little bit louder into the microphone and introducing panelists.
Okay, then. Lucia Castellini Nuevo?
Yes, good morning. This is me, but I can't start my video. Okay, doesn't matter. You don't need to see me. Uh, good morning, Commissioner. This is Lucia Castellini Nuevo, Oceano Beach Community Association. And you already have seen what's happening on our beach through Bonnie's video a few speakers ago. The natural lay of Oceano Beach is that the four dunes start at the mean high tide and rise gently towards the houses on Strand Avenue. We have seen that during COVID when vehicles and bulldozing were not allowed. But now, most of our beach has been turned into flat, wide highway for vehicles, as you already know. This bulldozing project is nonsense. You are allowing state parks and homeowners to move and push sand onto the beach where it used, from the beach where it used to be and from where they have been moving it for the last few decades to make room for vehicles. Soon enough, state parks will have to level the beach again and push the sand back again against the homes. There is no way around it. Unfortunately, I think your staff hurried this project on without properly educating you and without public scrutiny. Before approving this project, you should have waited for the court of appeal decision next week. If you win the lawsuit, the sand against the homes could still be removed, but placed where the four dunes used to be, where the vehicles highways now. And it could be used to fill the ramp, that abysmal hole that you see on the picture on the beach and through the four dunes excavated by state parks for monster-sized mobile homes and trucks to access the beach. You see the hole on our beach and you see the sand piled against the homes? On the other hand, if you lose the appeal, then this project won't solve anything because not the wind, but vehicles and state parks are creating the problem. You are giving homeowners and state parks carte blanche to move sand up to 2,000 years. Please review this plan. Please review this plan again. Thank you.
Okay, next is Ann Cantrell. We don't see her online. If you're in here, please raise your hand. Yeah, okay.
She's here in person.
Followed by Rachel Wilson, Steve Ray. If you guys are here, go ahead and start walking down the aisle. Just stand in line for us, please. If you could turn your mic on, please. There's a little button at the base of the microphone.
Oh, wrong base. Good morning, Ann Cantrell, Sierra Club Los Cerritos Wetlands Task Force. And I'm here to, another person to urge you to please require the oil, the oil line in Santa Barbara to receive a CDP. Our organization is against oil extraction online, on the coast and off the coast. And this is, as you know, an extremely dangerous location. Rafigio Beach already received thousands of gallons of oil from the last oil break, uh, or pipeline break 10 years ago. And we do not need any more oil-killing pipelines offshore. Thank you.
Next is Rachel Wilson, Steve Ray, Daryl Gale, and Anna Christensen. Please state your name for a record.
And I have a PowerPoint.
And Rachel and I will be sharing the same PowerPoint, so please leave it up between speakers. Thank you.
Uh, good morning. My name is Rachel Wilson, and I'm here to give you a Morro Bay power plant update. That actually is Moss Landing, but it really could have represented Morro Bay's harbor. Looks very similar. Next slide, please. Um, Measure A 24, which was put on the ballot in Morro Bay, passed with a 60% vote. The other part, uh, those who voted against it were really more against the idea of taking local control away from the city council. They were afraid that Vistra would go to the CEC. But what this did is, the power plant property is visitor-serving commercial, and it said that if the city would approve anything that was not visitor-serving commercial, the people would be allowed to vote on it. So the people would have to vote on a best project. Next slide, please. Uh, the Moss Landing fires created a lot of concern because this is what we'd been concerned with all along. To the left there, you will notice the area that humans are having health issues. Uh, this can be running noses, burning skin, eyes burning, breathing problems, et cetera. Uh, we know that the estuary was polluted with toxic heavy metals two miles out. San Jose State University has done a 10-years of soil samples. They found cobalt, manganese, and nickel. And a family horse living in Hollister had to be put on IV antihistamines due to, uh, the air quality. Next slide, please. Several communities, uh, next slide. Several communities have done urgency ordinances based on health and safety that put a moratorium on new construction of best plants for two years to allow our time to study public safety concerns and to establish land use and siting policies, since most communities do not have those. Morro Bay and Taiutus have both.
Oh, good morning, Madam Chair, or sorry, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, I'm Steve Ray. I will continue. Uh, yeah, this, uh, these freezes in these various locales have put a moratorium on any activity related to building any of these battery plants in their communities. Next slide, please. Additionally, it's also stirred action in the state legislature. Dawn Addis, Assembly Member for, uh, San Luis Obispo County, Monterey County, and Santa Cruz County, has introduced legislation, Assembly Bill 303, that would, uh, make it more difficult to create these plants. Right now, there's an AB 205 measure would allow, that allows those plants to be streamlined by going directly to the California Energy Commission and skipping the local jurisdictions. Uh, AB 303 would correct that and exempt, uh, the battery plants from that provision to go to the AB 205. Next slide, please. And, uh, now, the Vistra, the company that's building the battery plants, has not exercised AB 205 right to go directly to the CEC at this point, as of, as of three days ago. Uh, but, uh, the best permits, uh, best permitting process in 205 takes jurisdiction away from the local jurisdictions. And the CEC then has 270 days to conduct a full, complete, sequo environmental review. And then the Coastal Commission only has 90 days to do its business before it has to adjudicate the matter. It's ridiculous. It's like putting handcuffs on the Coastal Commission. It can't be done. Next slide, please. Coastal Act Safety prioritizes safety, which you guys recognized yesterday. Uh, we have a team of planners, scientists, medical practitioners, lawyers, and coastal experts who are volunteering to work with you and your staff on these issues, and we would be happy to do it, and we're serious about it. Thank you very much for your attention.
Next, we have Dale Gale, Anna Christensen. Please come up.
I'm Daryl. Hello, Nuclear Regulatory Commission? Hi, this is Connie Canister. Can I call you NRC for short? Great, I'm Connie Canister, and I'm representing 9 million people living, working, and going to school near San Onofre. And we really need your help now. We've got 1,800 tons of nuclear waste stranded on the beach in possibly corroding thin metal canisters right next to the closed plant. The tides are getting higher, sea level is rising, and our Coastal Commission told us to call you. They told Edison it was okay to dump it on our surfing beach. So can you come here right away and move it inland? Into one of your safe repositories? Yeah, I know you're in Dallas. Can you bring some helicopters, trucks, and men with hazmat suits and Geiger counters? What? You don't have that? Okay, just send some of your inspectors. What? You don't have a place to take it to? You're busy and you're not coming. So what are we supposed to do? Look, I was on the beach. I took my car down to San Onofre, and I was on the beach, and this is what I found. All over the beach. And this. What am I supposed to do with these dead animals? You know, I realize I probably shouldn't have picked them up and put them in my car, but I just don't know what, what to do with these dead animals. Will you tell me? And please come out here when you can. Thank you.
Up next is Anna Christensen. And after that, we're gonna go to Zoom, and we have about 18 people left.
Good morning again. Glad we made, you guys made it through the gas incident. I heard you, heard that on the phone yesterday. And I also want to thank you. We, uh, Sierra Club did write a letter. Sierra Club California Coastal Subcommittee wrote a letter in support of the voters, and it was great to hear how much they were heard. Really appreciate it. I'm just gonna speak briefly about something that's gonna be coming before you, and that is the City of Long Beach has again applied for a one-year extension for their pool project, which grows more modest. As, and as it shrinks, it also becomes less environmentally just. And we, you will probably, even though the permit will expire before your next meeting, I doubt, I'm sure you will renew it. And then you will be looking at a whole new plan, a much smaller, much less ambitious plan, primarily due to lack of financing. The city can't come up with the money. The plan is, does not comply at this point, from what we've understood in the last public meeting the city offered, uh, with the environmental justice requirements of the original plan, in that it will, the city does plan on closing the facility to all but competitors during competitions, which is not supposedly allowed. Another brief point I want to make, I only have a few seconds, is that you did require a public survey. A survey was conducted, but they failed to ask the question, can you swim? This is not simply a recreational issue. This is a public safety issue. The majority of residents in Long Beach, people of color, cannot swim, which means they won't bring their children to the pool. This pool, once again, we cannot sand up. It's in the wealthiest, widest corner of the seventh-largest city. It's all about location. There's no way. The city isn't even talking at this point, nor does it have to, if it's permitted, about an actual bus that would allow normal residents, seniors, anybody to come to the pool. A few kids going to a special summer camp, a recreation time, it's not safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, again, we have 18 left on Zoom. So we have Lauren Segal, followed by Camilla Rang, followed by Mandy Sackett. Lauren Segal, if you're available, please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm trying to unmute the video, but it doesn't seem to want to start. There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Lauren Segal, and I'm here to talk to you again about permitting ADUs in the Venice Coastal Zone. I would like to talk about a longstanding issue in Venice, the financial, time-consuming, and procedural burden imposed by Los Angeles Planning Department in requiring ADU applicants to go through the full CD process to permit low-impact, affordable, market-raising housing units. I want to thank Steve Hudson for issuing a letter to the Los Angeles Planning Department and Councilperson Tracy Parks' office, making clear the commission's desire to simplify and expedite the processing of ADU permits in the Venice Coastal Zone. Unfortunately, there has been no movement on the planning department's part. Juliette O, the planner overseeing the processing of these applications, told the council office she was too busy to address the issue. Under further insistence, she arranged a meeting, but that meeting did not take place in January as it was supposed to. In processing permit applications in the Venice Coastal Zone, city planning is by law limited to using a predefined checklist to establish a project's conformance with a Venice-specific plan. The department is not allowed to go beyond the parameters of the checklist in determining a project's conformance with Chapter 3 of the Coastal Act. The Coastal Commission is not subject to such limitations. I bring this up for context. LA city planning has ventured far beyond the simple predefined yes-or-no checklist it is legally required to follow in processing CDPs and CAXs in Venice. This is extraneous illegal addition to permitting process that inflates the cost, expands time required for processing small projects. Please help us convince the city that housing affordability in the coastal zone is important. Please help us convince them to respect legally-defined pathways for processing permits. Please help us convince them to offer Venice residents a quick Please help us convince them to offer Venice residents a quick, cheap, and easy pathway for permitting ADUs and other low-impact, affordable, market-rate housing solutions in Venice. We need your help. Please help us. Thank you.
Camilla Rang.
Good, good morning, Commissioners. Camilla Rang from Del Mar here. In 2017, you gave Commission an environmental exclusion right for a construction of a new train trestle through the very sensitive San Diego to Lagoon. The construction will start in a year. Much has changed since you approved of this project eight years ago because of the planned relocation that railroad off of Del Mar bluff, and this trestle may not even be needed anymore. The trestle will cause much disturbance through a particular lagoon with dredging and floodgates because it's enormous. We already have problems with too low flow through the lagoon, and last year we saw tragic fish deaths in a thousand because of anoxic waters due to sandbanks building up at the river mouth, hindering the flow of the ocean's tides. With this new trestle, it might not even be possible to dredge the river mouth. Perhaps all this environmental cost could be overseen because of the common good of the train, but since the train may not even take that route in the very few year, future, it is no longer proper to construct this environmental monster. It makes absolutely no sense to build this trestle before the relocation route has been decided. Not only would the lagoon have to be, have been destroyed and disturbed by the construction, now we'll have to suffer through a demolition of the same just a few years later. With the relocation in mind, this change of plans after your 2017 decision fits perfectly in with new circumstances. In Land Endurement 15 CFR Paragraph 93066A2, with your required supplemental consistency certification from SADAC since the project has not yet begun. The environmental toll of this bridge is huge. Make sure it's actually needed. I'm absolutely on board with this trestle when it's clear it's needed after relocation. All we're asking is that it's postponed until the route is decided, which is only a couple of years away. Please help us convince SADAC to not destroy the lagoon for something that may only be used for a couple of years. The wetlands need you to speak up for it. Please protect the coastline, not the train.
Okay, up next is Mandy Sackett, Alex Ferrin, followed by Lydia Ponce.
I have a PowerPoint.
Can, can you just guys just hold for one minute? We, we're bringing somebody from the back, we're short one, just a second. Okay, we can go. Go ahead, thank you.
Okay, good morning, Chair Cummings, Commissioners, Mandy Sackett, Senior California Policy Coordinator for the Surf Rider Foundation. I want to start just by reminding you of the emergency permits issued to Orange County Transportation Authority in 2021 and 2022, which allowed over 800 feet of riprap to be placed on San Clemente Beaches right next to the world-renowned trestle surf spot, which this commission saved from a toll road not so long ago. OCTA has placed several hundred feet of unpermitted armoring here as well, and we've been hearing from the community that these boulders are disrupting the first wave that makes up trestles and causing real harm to the one of the most iconic surfing locations in California. There's no way to mitigate the erosion and damage that this riprap is causing. Sand nourishment will not undo this monstrosity. We're asking you to please get these boulders off of our beach. Next slide, please. OCTA is now proposing a separate permit to extend the Cypress Shores seawall that I just discussed by two-thirds of a mile, which would cover San Clemente State Beach shown here. This is a really important area, not just for its natural beauty, but it's also a coveted surf, surfable beach break, and it has coastal dunes. But it also hosts a 168-spot campground, one of the few low-cost overnight accommodations in the region. And it's, it's frequently booked up. I was really heartened to hear of your priorities yesterday, Chair Cummings, to preserve actual low-cost overnight accommodations, and I think this is an important opportunity. No one goes to the beach to visit a seawall. So please, we urge you to deny this permit when it comes before you, potentially as early as this April. If we allow both of these seawalls to go forward, we're risking zero incentive for the OCTA to proactively plan to get their tracks off of our beach. And just quickly, I wanted to respond to the previous speaker, John Doe, who said that the commission had denied. My understanding is that it's actually the Army Corps that's holding up any potential emergency sand nourishment, or even OCTA staff themselves, not this commission staff. So we do support OCTA's delay in environmental review and doing this project right. Thank you so much.
Okay, next is Alex Ferrin, followed by Lydia Ponce, followed by Mandy Davis. Alex, if you can unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Alex Ferrin Minjona, I'm the Living Shorelands Coordinator for the Surf Rider Foundation, and I am here to share some good news from the field. Surf riders working to uplift community voices in coastal planning processes, and that's currently playing out in real time at San Onofre State Beach. In 2017, an emergency permit was issued to temporarily install a revetment to continue to protect, to protect the only access road to Surf Beach. Since then, erosion has continued to accelerate. Meanwhile, no alternative access exists. San Ono is both deeply loved and heavily used by the public. That's why Surf Riders are supporting the development of a long-term resilience plan in partnership with state parks, Marine Corps Base Camp Pendleton, and in collaboration with the local Hatchaman Tribal Nation, and of course, with the input of the community. We've been gathering data on how people use and think about the beach, their concerns, and important features through onsite pop-up mapping events. We brought together community groups, stakeholders, and user representatives, including adaptive surf rider, surfers, paddlecraft users, to discuss the issues there more deeply. At the same time, we've been investing in shared understanding with the community about coastal dynamics and highlighting successful nature-based solutions through many, many presentations, community meetings, and hands-on events like our new monthly beach and habitat restoration events happening at trestles just down the beach from where Mandy was talking about. And where last month, volunteers removed up to three tons of ice plant from the beach. We're thrilled to have received a grant from the Coastal Conservancy to fund engineering studies that will be used to, along with the community, envision a nature-based shoreline resilience project for San Ono, which will bring more community outreach and public meetings to work towards a truly shared vision for this coastlands future. Efforts like this are informing Surf Riders state and nationwide work in how to support equitable, sustainable, and community-driven coastal resilience projects in the future. Thanks so much for your time. Hope this is a bright spot, and if you're ever near trestles on the third Saturday of the month, we would love to have you come out and join us pull some weeds.
Lydia Ponce.
Good morning, relatives. Lydia from Venice, Sagna, known as Sagna. Respect for the fire, the source of energy that it is, with so much loss of material goods and memories turned to toxic ash that fell from the sky. We have, we have to look at the decades of relatives suffering political, racial, social, economic racism, that fire, the names on waiting list for affordable housing that never are prioritized, much like the local government and the developers and the nonprofit housing orgs prioritize Palisades, Topanga, Malibu, and yeah, not the ones on the list. So what do I have to say is that I know that there's domestic violence, members of our community who've been waiting for months prior to the fires with emergency housing voucher. We have to take a look at the infrastructure, how we're not supporting each other before natural disasters happen. We have to speak of the ills of black mold and some of the affordable housing projects that use subpar materials and cut corners to build. It was an insult that Airbnb's, to some of us, it was an insult, that was offered by CD11 to unhoused coastal file relatives. It was proper, but it was still an insult because none was offered for the atmospheric river. All of the unhoused people that were on the streets, and we had to demand that Oakwood Park be open. All the while, just recently this week, the Eaton Fire unhoused relatives were offered shelter in the units above Skid Row. What's the difference? I'll say it, black and white. I am disgusted by the lack of neighborly offerings, and there's zero collaboration across, across council districts to support all of LA. We have all these creative endeavors and all these creative corporations that want to help, but they only help select few, economic elite. The equity is always proposed on paper. It looks good and it sounds good on paper. We need to do better. This LA disaster racism is visible and it's here. And I just did, thank you.
Mandy Davis, followed by Mike Mayer, followed by Andrea Luker. Mandy, if you can unmute yourself, Mandy Davis.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Mandy Davis. I'm president of React Alliance. The recent EO, Executive Order that related to energy technologies and most specifically offshore wind has created an incredible amount of uncertainty. Yesterday, Nicole Dorfman asked the CCC to produce a statement that would clarify their position as it relates to this executive order and your relationship to the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management and any other federal agencies. We would ask that not only do you make a verbal statement, that, that you actually issue a statement to all of the stakeholders, so it is very clear to us. Because there is one thing that is not uncertain, and what is not uncertain is React Alliance's response to offshore wind on the California coast. We will continue to fight this destructive, inefficient, variable technology that is not appropriate for a state, nor is it appropriate for the nation. And that should be very clear. We will continue to send viable information to the CCC that your staff has not presented to you when they are making recommendations for permitting, and that has been a real problem in the past. So will we not only send information to the staff, we will send the volumes of information that we want to send to the commission itself. You will see right here, I want to make it very clear, that, that the port systems that they are suggesting, the operations and maintenance ports are much more extensive than what they are telling you. This is a picture of an OM port in New Bedford, Massachusetts. Take a look at this because we do not want this on the central coast. Thank you.
Next is Mike Mayer, followed by Andrea Luker, followed by Brian Bone. Mike, if you can unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Good morning. My name is Mike Mayer. My wife and I have owned property and lived in Del Mar for 40 years. I am speaking today to request your support to pause the Sandag-San Diego River Bridge replacement and new events platform project. Sandag is moving forward with this project before a decision has been made regarding the location of the low-sand track realignment through Del Mar. The bridge, which is estimated to cost hundreds of millions of dollars, is not needed for options that preserve Del Mar, only Sandag's preferred option through the middle of Del Mar. This preemptive move signals that Sandag has already made a decision regarding the track realignment, which is counter to promises made by Sandag to the residents of Del Mar, the most important stakeholder with the most to lose. It, it is my understanding that Sandag has not met all the environmental requirements to proceed with the bridge project, which is massive, will create havoc in the lagoon and visual pollution, which will spoil the overall coastal experience in this area. Sandag and NCTD have always been transparent about their primary goal of reducing travel time from San Diego to LA to increase ridership. This appears to be another example of taking the most direct route, that is, a bridge and tunnel through the center of Del Mar to save a few seconds of travel time. Devastating a historic beach town economically and environmentally is indefensible when there are other options which significantly less detrimental impacts. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Andrea Luker.
Great, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm Andrea Luker, and I do have a couple of slides. Thanks for putting up that first one. I'm speaking on behalf of React Alliance. Just to remind you, we are a nonprofit, nonpartisan volunteer organization, working to educate the public about the negative impacts of offshore wind. As you know, the West Coast is about eight to 10 years behind the East Coast in terms of offshore wind development, and that gives us, the West Coast, an advantage to be proactive versus, versus reactive. As, as we have seen, the East Coast has experienced an unprecedented number of marine mammal strandings in proximity to offshore wind activities. This slide shows just whale strandings, or deaths, and just from January 2022 through December 2024, 45 whales, and that only reflects those in New York and New Jersey. If you could go to the next slide, please. This slide shows you offshore wind sites located in the same area. We've heard over and over from various governmental organizations and other groups that there's absolutely no correlation between the unprecedented death and stranding incidents on the East Coast and, and related to offshore wind activities. But interestingly, in October of last year, the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, BOM, released a report entitled "A Programmatic Environmental Impact Statement Regarding Offshore Wind Development Planned for the New York Bite," which is the triangular area bordered by the New Jersey and Long Island coastlines. The report cites a wide range of potential effects, including acknowledging the potential major harms. The report admits that the proposed offshore wind projects on the New York Bite may have several negative impacts on the local environment and economy. The authors note, for example, that the effect on the North Atlantic right whale could be major, defined as having severe population-level effects that would compromise the viability of the species. In other words, potential extinction. Permitting a project that could compromise the viability of a species seems contrary to the, any part of the Coastal Act. Thank you.
Up next is Brian Bone. We have about nine speakers left. Brian, I'm gonna promote you to panelists again. Please do not decline. Brian, go ahead and unmute yourself, please. Okay, so next we'll go ahead and go to Lisa Gilfillan.
Good morning, Commissioners and staff. My name is Lisa Gilfillan, and I'm the California Field Representative with Oceana. I live just down the road in San Diego, and I'm here today commenting on the efforts by Sable to restart Santa Inez's oil production unit in Santa Barbara County, California. Just a reminder that this year marks the 10th anniversary of the 2015 Refugio Beach oil spill, and we applaud this commission for issuing that cease and desist order to Sable back in November. We're hopeful that you are still holding Sable accountable to the letter of the law. We're also encouraging the commission to continue to investigate violations, to extent, extend the cease and desist order, to require coastal development permits for restart, and we're asking for public transparency throughout. We, as an organization, are confident that President Biden's permanent protection of the West Coast from new oil and gas leasing will be upheld in the courts, and our state had the foresight to put restrictions on near-shore infrastructure to prevent an expansion. But the biggest and most immediate threat to our coast is this Sable project, which could lead to more catastrophic spills. It is not a question of if, but when another oil spill happens. A county preliminary environmental impact statement prepared for Santa Barbara County predicted a spill once a year. In addition, the greenhouse gas emissions will interfere with the state's ability to meet its climate goals. In many ways, California leads this country in addressing climate change and transitioning all fossil fuels. But we need this commission, other agencies, and Governor Newsom to act now to protect Californians and the places and communities we hold dear. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, we're gonna still go back to Brian Bohan. If you can unmute yourself.
Mute? Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, wonderful. First of all, I want to say thank you and good morning, Coastal Commission. Thank you for your concern about the Newport Harbor mooring fields. I'm an aide of a Southern California disabled, and sailing is a sport I could do on a fixed This mooring has been in our family for about 40 years. Having a sailboat on this mooring has made sailing a family tradition. I learned how to sail from this morning. I taught my children how to sail from this morning, and I look forward to teaching my grandchildren to sail from this mooring. Living on a fixed income makes us affordable. Changing the new plan may not make it affordable. The mooring fields should be for everybody, sailing should be for everybody, not just the wealthy. Thank you for your time and your concern.
Next is Marcy Snyder, followed by Kevin Patrick, followed by Richard Sadowski. Marcy, please unmute yourself.
Good morning Commissioners and staff. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is Marcy Snyder, and I'm a resident of Fort Bragg and a member of the Grassroots Institute. Thank you on behalf of the Grassroots Institute for filing the amicus brief in the John Myers case. Also, thank you for all that you do.
Are you done, Ms. Marcy? You still have time? Okay. Kevin Patrick? If you can unmute yourself.
Thank you. I have slides. Is somebody going to put the slides up?
We sure can. One second, please.
Let me know when they're up. Okay. So, my name is, can you hear me? My name is Kevin Patrick. I'm a physician and emeritus professor of public health at UC San Diego. Thank you for providing the opportunity for me to speak to you. I would like to add to the comments that you are hearing from others related to all bridge projects related to the entire 61-mile segment of the heavy railroad corridor from San Clemente to San Diego. We're at a crossroads now about the best use of this public right-of-way, continuing an increasingly underutilized and outdated train, or building a world-class coastal trail and park that will provide more benefits to more people. Let me explain. Next slide. It may take up to $20 billion over 10 years to move the train away from the beach in San Clemente and to tunnel under Del Mar, but few people use the train. Peter Crampton, an economist, and I have recently calculated that if we spend this $20 billion and amortize it over a 30-year period of time, the annual subsidy for each regular commuter approaches half a million dollars. I think you would all agree that this is indefensible. Slide three. What makes sense is to consider alternative uses for the 61-mile strip of public right-of-way. 30 years of public health research has shown that public trails improve individual and population health, they promote physical activity, reduce obesity, they help communities connect with one another, and provide safe places for recreation for people of all ages. Next slide. Moreover, evidence from the transportation and environmental research communities shows that public trails improve air quality, provide less expensive car-free transportation options, and have economic benefits, and promote sustainability. Next slide and final slide. In conclusion, we need an independent, forward-looking benefit-cost analysis that looks at the costs and benefits of sustaining the train versus other choices that we make as a society that are almost certain to provide greater benefits to more people. To date, entities like OCTA and Sandag are not doing such a study. Rather, they are assuming that the train will be here forever, and sustaining it at any cost is a foregone conclusion. I urge the commission to endorse an independent cost-benefit analysis of the situation, and will be happy to follow up with any of you to discuss this further. Thank you.
We have five speakers left. Next, we have is Richard Sadowski, Karen Lahr, Peter Crampton, Noah Anderson, and Alex Garcia. Richard Sadowski, go ahead and unmute yourself, please.
Hello. Could you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, this is Richard Sadowski, Homefront EJ, Morro Bay. I would like to kind of talk about with the new administration cutting back all the funding for schools and education, I would like to see the California Coastal Commission maybe have a program that'll help us, that'll help us with putting together like a grant program that'll help communities that have, that are using and addressing climate change with citizen science groups. And the reason why I bring this up is I applied four times to the Whale Tail Grant, and I get that it's not a good fit. But what we need is a grant program that'll help educate the future and the future of the people that are studying ocean acidification and using, like ocean acidification and using that data to go and learn about research. What is missing is the funding to help these kind of groups. And, you know, it's hard to fit into a program, especially what our program is called the Morro Bay Estuary Air Monitoring Project, that we've been doing it, we've been establishing baseline CO2 data around the Morro Bay Estuary and working with the California College Corps and the Cal Poly Carbon Lab, who's studying ocean acidification in the estuary. And our group is basically having field trips with Morro Bay High School and working with the universities and trying to educate the public. And this is one of the best ways to educate the public is help groups like, you know, that are educated.
Thank you. Next is Karen Lahr.
Yes, hello Commissioners. Is my microphone on?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you for your time today. I really appreciate it. I wanted to, my name is Karen Lahr, and I wanted to speak about the Trestle Railroad Bridge between Solana Beach and Del Mar. This bridge was built in 1916, currently slated for replacement due to age and the cost of upkeep. You approved the new bridge design in 2017. This was before Sandag began the process of identifying new routes for the train. You were concerned in your approval of the bridge of the destruction of the sensitive habitat, and that issue remains. Almost $400 million has been raised to replace the Trestle Bridge. However, the new route for the tracks is not yet named. It is clear the tracks must be removed from the bluffs, according to all experts, but where will they go? Route A requires no new Trestle Bridge needed, no lagoon habitat lost. Route B and C require loss of habitat, and there are other routes being considered. Fortunately, a federal guideline exists precisely for situations like this. This guideline mandates that if a project such as the bridge has been deemed consistent with the Coastal Act but not yet been constructed, and if significantly new circumstances arise that could substantially alter its impact on coastal resources, the state agency has the authority to require a supplemental consistency application before allowing the project to proceed. This is exactly the course of action the commission should take. The bridge has not yet been built, and it should not be allowed to dictate the far more consequential decision of rail realignment. I respectfully request the commission require Sandag to submit a supplemental Coastal Act consistency certification and mandate waiting for and fully considering the final rail realignment EIR before moving forward. If the bridge is built before the route is selected, the spending $400 million will dictate the route that will be chosen. The routes serviced by this bridge have grave consequences for homeowners and businesses in Del Mar, and they have consequences for sensitive habitat and beach access. You have the ability to require Sandag to hit the pause button by requiring them to complete a supplemental consistency application before allowing the project to proceed. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you. Up next is Peter Crampton. If you're available, please raise your hand. Noah Anderson, please raise your hand. And Alex Garcia, please raise your hand. If you're on the phone, please use star nine to raise your hand. Okay. We see one hand up. Let me allow them to talk. Can you please state your name?
Can you hear me? This is Joseph.
Okay. No, you are not on the list, Joseph. We're looking for Peter, sorry. Uh, next one is iPhone. We'll allow you to speak. Please state your name for the record.
Hello, this is Jeff Heller. Good morning.
No, you are not on the list. I'm so sorry.
Oh.
It's public speaking.
Okay.
Okay, we are going to try this other unknown. Nope, that concludes it. Oh. One more, hold on. Hello, can you please give us your name?
Yes, Lorna Moffett. Good morning Commissioners.
Hold on ma'am. What's your name?
Lorna Moffett. Can you hear me?
No, ma'am, you didn't sign up for the public speaking, so.
So I'm not, oh, we're not allowed?
No, ma'am, just this is for public speaking right now, not for an item. Please hold, thank you. Okay, that's it.
Okay, great. So I'd like to bring it back to the commission. Sorry. I'd like to bring it back to the commission to see if there's any Commissioners who have any questions or comments on public comment. Commissioner Nadav, and then Commissioner Escalante.
I just thank the public for bringing issues to our attention. It's appreciated. The testimony about public beach safety was something that resonated with me. I know that area of the coast well, and I had just read about the tragedy that most recently happened, and I want to extend my sympathy to the family that has established this foundation. I do think there are a number of issues that came up today that involve state parks oversight of beaches, and I just wondered if that was something that we could get a report on, or is there a regular kind of check-in with state parks in terms of management and public access and safety that we might do? Because we had the parks in, you know, we had issues on Oceano Beach that came before us that involved state parks. I continually see safety issues at Point Lobos that are of concern. So I'm just wondering if CNRA representative or others, is there a way we can kind of look at these things comprehensively? Because state parks have such an important role to play in terms of coastal access and safety.
Through the chair, thanks Commissioner. Yeah, we do have regular coordination with state parks on all kinds of topics. And while public safety has not, beaches has not been a specific topic we've covered, that doesn't mean we couldn't in the future invite them to come and do an update for you, for example, on sort of how they approach it at the state parks. So I'm happy to explore that option and bring anything back. There's, just watching the public comment as well, had a couple of thoughts, just wanted to be, you know, make sure the commission is aware that we absolutely did expedite the permits associated with the rings, the safety rings in Happum Bay, and we're just sort of thinking through some options, as was requested by some of the public commenters from our standpoint of how we could help expedite any type of installation of those types of safety, you know, again, the safety rings and signage, and so we're going to think about that. I think we have some options. The foundation really does need to work with the local governments in terms of placement and some of the details, but if they can find locations and, you know, we might be able to help with consolidated permit, for example. And we've done similar types of consolidated permits for MPA signage, for example, where we did like all of Southern California and all of Northern California consolidated permit across many cities and counties, you know, to kind of do it in one fell swoop. So we have, we have some mechanisms to do that kind of expedited permitting. So we'll be thinking about that and reaching out and to see where, where that might work and how we can be helpful. And then I can come back and let you know if there's any, you know, how we can maybe ask state parks to come and talk a little bit about it, or what makes sense in that front.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Escalante.
Thank you, Karen. Along that line, first, my condolences to the RNI family, and I commend them for channeling their suffering and pain into something I think that can have a significant impact on lives across the state. Actually, during this season when there were so many sneaker waves, I took a tumble with my dog, and one of the north coast beaches came out completely soaked, took a roll by a sneaker wave, was the first time ever faced one of those. So I know how sneaky they are, how terrifying the experience is, and there's sort of this blind, sign blindness. And I do appreciate, I don't know how, you know, they have, I guess, this sort of new technology or that they're trying to, you know, find funding for. I don't know, there's a way sort of that our public education team can maybe have a conversation with them and see how we can help move some of the solutions that they're working so hard to implement. So, and thanks again for working so hard to do that, and we hear you and appreciate your work. Thanks.
Commissioner Turnbull Sanders.
Thank you Chair Cummings. I just wanted to, through the chair, just wanted to ask staff about the swimming pool that was referenced in the public comment and shuttle transportation. I seem to recall the matter with the Belmont Pool previously and the replacement, and if memory serves, I made specific comments about shuttle services and programs, not only for basic life skills and basic swimming skills development, but also for the competitive arena as a former elite competitive swimmer, understanding what that can do for communities, what sports can do in terms of opportunities. So I just wanted to bring that back. I'm not sure if that is something that is going to come back before the commission, if it's resolved, but I do remember significant debate on that and conversations on the dais with our Commissioner Uranga in the past on equity issues around access and pool opportunities.
Yes, I would be happy to respond to that. This, this matter would come back before this commission as an amendment to the previously approved coastal development permit, and that amendment hasn't been submitted to us yet. But our understanding is that the city has been revising the project. There are reductions in the size of the pool and changes in the types of facilities that would be offered, and I don't have specific information at this point on how those facilities would change. But that would need to come back before this body as an amendment to the previous coastal development permit for your approval.
And through the chair, that will be coming. Thank you. I look forward to that conversation when it comes.
Are there any other Commissioners who have comments? Commissioner Hart.
Thanks so much. Appreciate it, Chair. I was hoping that staff could give us an update on Oceano or potentially just agendize that. I'm very concerned about what we saw in the videos, and I'm feeling a little out of the loop, to tell you the truth, about where things stand at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart. I'm actually going to ask Kevin Kahn in our Central Coast Office to give a little bit of a response. Kevin?
Sure. Good morning, everyone. Good morning Commissioners. Yeah, so briefly, with respect to the sand movement at Oceano specifically that we saw in the videos, yes, your staff's fully aware of and actually supportive of that particular project. It's something we've worked cooperatively with state parks, the county, and the homeowners on its parameters. We see that particular project as a dune restoration and public access enhancement project that will stabilize the dunes with native plants and restore the vertical accessways from Strand Way to the beach that are currently blocked off from excessive sand buildup. And actually, this is a pretty good success story in our view of our coordination with state parks, including with both of our ecology teams to craft that particular project. And just in the videos, that was the initial, the first step in the process to reduce the excessive sand buildup, create a more natural dune hummock, and then plant them. That project is also, we see it as pretty separate from the other issues at Oceano, including in terms of the litigation associated with it. I don't know if General Counsel Warren wants to talk about that issue at all, but in any event, this one is something we had been tracking, and we see it as a good one.
If I could just follow up quickly through the chair. I think it would be really fantastic if we could be, if we could be sent, or if you could present, or somehow show us the final native, native plant restoration, because as of now, it looks bad. show us the final, uh, native, native plant, um, restoration because as of now, it looks bad and I think it's great for the public to see where we're headed with this, so thank you so much Kevin for, uh, your work on this, appreciate it.
Thank you, I'm happy to do so.
Any other comments? Okay, um, well, I just wanted to start by thanking all the members of the public for coming and speaking and for those who came yesterday and came back today, just want to thank them for their patience and for returning today to speak to us. I had some, um, similar comments for the RNI Foundation and just want to extend my sympathy to their family as well for their loss. Um, but then I just want to, um, reiterate and emphasize, um, what, um, Director Hucklebridge brought up, which is, it's really critical that, people are working with their local jurisdiction, we play a role in a lot of these decisions, but if it's state parks property or county property, if it's city property, you know, it's really important that they start, that that's where they start. And it may come to the commission and we may pay, play a role, but in some instances, we may not play a role and the cities will just work to figure out where they can put those kinds of, um, life safety devices and so, just want to encourage the folks that are still on the line to work with your local jurisdictions and, um, and if we play a role in that, happy to get involved, but starting with the, whoever the entity is that's in control of those beaches is a good place. I had some similar concerns with Oceano Beach, so I just want to thank, um, Commissioner Hart for bringing that up. And then, um, as it relates to moss landing, I just want to mention that, um, trying to remember what date it was, but it was our last, I think I might have also mentioned this yesterday, but, um, I believe it was our last board meeting on February, on January 28th, we did have a presentation, um, from Monterey and Vistra um, about moss landing and so if folks want to go back to the Santa Cruz County website, there is a presentation, um, from them on that where we had a very long discussion about, um, the fire at that facility. And I just want to let folks know there's multiple independent investigations going on, um, and I know some of those have been advocated for by, I believe, the governor's office, Dawn Addis's office, Senator John Laird's office, and then Vistra's conducting their own. We've also expressed support of those independent investigations and so we're really wanting to get information back to best understand how those fires impacted the surrounding communities so that as we move forward, we're able to incorporate that information into any policy and safety decisions that are made. So with that, um, I just want to really quickly, um, for the commission, so we're going to take, I think we should take a 10-minute break. Um, largely because we are very constrained with quorum and so, um, by building in this break, it's like, let's go, you know, we have to use bathroom, get water, coffee, what have you, and then we come back and then if you need to leave during the next session, please let me know so I can make sure that we're maintaining quorum, um, throughout the meeting, so, uh, we will come back at 10:45. Okay, welcome back everyone, um, we're going to get, get rolling with the rest of the agenda, so the next item on our agenda today is item number five consent calendar and I'll turn it over to staff to give a brief description of this item.
Thank you Chair, as you said, the next item, item five, is a consent calendar for all districts on the agenda today. We have one item, agenda, agendized on the consent calendar today, a CDP application by LA County for water quality improvements associated with a park, public parking lot adjacent to a lawn tramp in Marina Del Rey. We're not aware of any opposition to this item and are therefore asking whether four or more commissioners object to the approval of the agenda, uh, item agendized on the consent calendar today.
Okay, are there any members of the public who are signed to speak on this item?
No, only available for question.
Okay, are there any members of the commission who would like to, or there four or more who objected to this item? Seeing none, uh, the commission concurs. So moving on, item number six.
Excuse me Chair, you need a motion for.
Oh, sorry, that's right.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Wilson, seconded by Uranga for item number five on the consent calendar, I'll turn it over to, uh, Ms. Miller for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Baczko. Baczko, yes. Commissioner Escalante.
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Hart, yes. Commissioner Lowenberg.
Yes.
Lowenberg, yes. Commissioner Nadoff.
Aye.
Nadoff, yes. Commissioner Turnbull Sanders.
Yes.
Turnbull Sanders, yes. Commissioner Uranga.
Aye.
Uranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Chair Cummings.
Aye.
Cummings, yes, the vote is unanimous.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to item number six, which is our consent calendar, I'll turn it back to staff for a description of that item as well.
Thank you. The, this consent calendar is, uh, for all items moved from the regular to the consent calendar for all districts on the agenda today. As mentioned during the agenda changes earlier this morning, there are 12 items staff recommends be moved to the consent calendar and those are, item 11A, uh, CDP application by Ventura County Harbor Department. Uh, combine item 13B and 14A for the after the fact CDP and consistency certification for dredging in King Harbor. Item 16A, the time extension for Humboldt County LCP amendment that updates the provision for placement of signs in all zoning districts. Item 16B, time extension for a Humboldt County LCP amendment that addresses development for wireless telecommunication facilities. Item 20A, for an amendment to the City of Carlsbad's LCP implementation plan for ADUs. Item 20B, for an amendment to the City of Carlsbad's implementation plan for multifamily housing and mixed-use development. Item 20C, for an amendment to the City of Del Mar's LCP land use plan and IP to correct map records. Item 20D, for an amendment to the City of Del Mar's LCP land use plan and IP for zoning capacity for, for affordable housing. 20E, a time extension for a request by the City of San Diego to amend its LCP to remove parking requirements. 20F, a time extension for a request by the City of San Diego for a range of minor amendments to its LCP. And finally, item 20G, uh, request by the City of San Diego to amend its IP to create two new community commercial zone bases. I would note in regard to items 16A and B, these are time extensions only, the amendments themselves are anticipated to come back to the commission within a few months. And with that, staff is not aware of any opposition to the project's move to the consent calendar and the applicants are in agreement with the staff recommendations. We're therefore recommending the commission vote and approve this item.
Okay, are there any members of the public signed up to speak on this item?
Um, just two speakers available for question across all the consent item.
Okay, are there any, we'll bring it back to the commission, are there any commissioners who have any questions, comments on the items?
Um, I'm, I would move approval of the consent calendar moved from regular calendar, but with, just noting that uh, several of the consent items expedited are to do with housing, affordable housing and ADUs.
I'll second and, uh, I'm hoping to expedite from my end 16A and B.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Nadoff, seconded by Commissioner Wilson, I'll turn it to Ms. Miller for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Escalante.
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Hart, yes. Commissioner Lowenberg.
Yes.
Lowenberg, yes. Commissioner Nadoff.
Aye.
Nadoff, yes. Commissioner Turnbull Sanders.
Yes.
Turnbull Sanders, yes. Commissioner Uranga.
Aye.
Uranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner Baczko.
Yep.
Baczko, yes. Chair Cummings.
Aye.
Cummings, yes, the vote is unanimous.
Thank you, uh, before we move on to item number seven, I want to turn to our, um, council to provide an, an update and report out on closed session from yesterday.
Thank you Chair Cummings, the commission met in closed session at the end of the open session yesterday. They received litigation information and advice and took action on the following cases. Grossman versus California Coastal Commission, City of Fort Bragg versus Medesino Railway, California State Lands Commission versus Martins Beach LLC, won at all. It also received litigation information and advice on the following case, Space Exploration Technologies Corporation versus California Coastal Commission. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Okay, the next item is our energy, ocean resources and federal consistencies, we're going to make a slight shift to the agenda, we're going to start with 7A. Informational update on permit conditions, compliance for the California American Water Project in Monterey County and then we'll come back to, um, the, um, Deputy Director's report.
Chair.
Yes.
Uh, I am going to recuse myself from the hearing on agenda item 7A due to a potential conflict of interest under Government Code Section 87100.
Okay, that sounds good, and then would, would you come back for item seven then and then 7B? Give us a question for staff.
Just looking to council, can I excuse myself for one of the items and not the other than this, yes?
Yes, you're able to do that.
7A and I'll be back for 7B.
Okay.
Thank you Chair, and with that, I'd like to invite our senior environmental scientist, Mr. Tom Lester, to provide the staff presentation on item 7A.
Good morning Chair Cummings and Commissioners, um, I do have a slideshow along with this presentation. Um, and before we present the, the Deputy Director.
Uh, before we begin, is there any way we can get this, his sound levels turned up?
Let me work on my.
The speaker online. Okay, if not, we may need to.
Is this any better?
That is actually better.
Okay, very good. Let me know if it fades again. Um, and I do have a slideshow with this presentation.
Okay, look, give us a sec to bring up that slide.
Okay. There we go. So before we present the Deputy Director report that includes an immaterial amendment for the California American Water Test Slant Well, we'd like to provide you a brief status report on the larger Calam desalination project that the commission approved in November 2022. You may recall from when you approved a, when your test of well extension last year, that the Chair had asked staff to provide this briefing as part of any subsequent extension request. As background, in November 2022, the commission approved a CDP for Calam's proposal to construct and operate intake wells and other infrastructure needed to support a desalination facility meant to provide water for Calam's customers in the Monterey Peninsula area. Most of the approved development within the coastal zone would be near the Monterey Bay shoreline between the City of Marina and the Monterey Peninsula. Next slide please. That CDP included 20 special conditions, including several Calam needed to meet before staff could issue the permit. Given the complexity of the proposed project, the commission allowed Calam up to five years instead of the standard two years to meet these prior to issuance conditions. This briefing focuses on the status of these conditions and commission staff has been working with Calam and other agencies and stakeholders on these conditions and I'll provide a brief summary of where we are with these requirements. Next slide please. First, special condition one requires Calam to obtain several other permits and approvals, these include a lease of state tidelands from the State Lands Commission, review of which is in progress, an NPDS permit from the Regional Water Quality Control Board, which is under review by board staff with assistance from commission staff and staff of other agencies. And approval from Monterey One Water, which owns the ocean outfall Calam would use to discharge its brine. Calam will also need a determination from the Public Utilities Commission as to whether the proposed project is necessary for Calam to meet its expected future water demands. This determination would allow Calam to recover project costs through rates to its customers and as part of the PUC's review, it is evaluating several different supply and demand estimates of the area's expected future water needs. We expect its decision to be issued by June of this year. These four reviews are somewhat related as the regional board review is likely to result in requirements to modify the outfalls to accommodate Calam's brine waste and might require additional mitigation to address any water quality related impacts. These modifications may require additional sequel review, which would require concurrents from Monterey One and would need to be incorporated into the State Lands Commission lease. State Lands is also waiting for the PUC to make its determination before considering the necessary lease. Special condition one also requires resolution of a groundwater related issue that is the subject of a pending lawsuit in Monterey County Superior Court and a related administrative proceeding at the State Water Board. In this lawsuit, the court is being asked to decide whether Calam has the legal right to extract groundwater for its project from beneath the site of its intake wells. As part of this suit, the court referred several technical and legal questions to the Water Board's Administrative Hearing Office, which has been conducting a proceeding on these questions. That office issued a draft decision about a month ago and accepted comments on that draft from the parties in the proceeding. The hearing office will consider modifying its draft decision and forward it in the comments to the Water Board, probably later this spring, for the board to make a final determination and forward its findings to the court. The court will then independently adjudicate these and the other issues in the lawsuit. Before Calam can meet the commission's prior to issuance requirement, we will need the State Water Board's final decision and possibly the court's final decision regarding resolution of this issue. Assuming Calam is able to obtain all these approvals and determinations in support of its project, it will then need to obtain encroachment permits and other similar approvals from local governments and land, landowners. Next slide please. Your approved coastal development permit also includes several special conditions really, related to the mitigation Calam will need to provide to address the project's expected habitat impacts. One of these, special condition 10, requires Calam to submit a habitat mitigation and monitoring plan that identifies available mitigation options and sites and that provides detailed descriptions of how Calam will meet various performance standards, success criteria, monitoring and reporting requirements and other mitigation components to ensure that the required mitigation is adequate and sustainable. Although many aspects of these requirements won't come into play until after the start of construction, Calam has started identifying appropriate sites where it may be able to construct, conduct the necessary habitat mitigation activities. Commission staff is helping review and guide that selection process. Next slide please. Two additional special conditions relate to monitoring, one of groundwater conditions and another of nearby wetlands and bernal ponds. Regarding groundwater, special condition 12 requires Calam to develop a monitoring plan and to fund independent review of that plan. The plan is meant to ensure that Calam's groundwater extraction does not adversely affect area aquifers that serve as sources of drinking water for the City of Marina and the Marina Coast Water District. Calam has submitted an initial plan and the first phase of that independent review is now underway. Special condition 13 requires Calam to develop a similar plan describing how it will monitor nearby wetlands and bernal pond areas to, to ensure the project's groundwater extraction does not affect these landscape features. Calam has submitted its initial plan for that condition and we expect the first phase of that plan's independent review to start soon. Next slide please. Two more important special conditions relate to environmental justice issues. Water from the project is expected to be more expensive than water from other sources, so special condition 16 requires Calam to prepare and implement a program meant to offset those costs to low income rate payers. That work is in progress. Special condition 17 requires Calam to implement a community engagement plan to provide opportunities for residents of Marina, particularly members of environmental justice communities to help identify needed public access amenities in the city. This engagement plan will lead to Calam's development of a public access amenities plan to determine how Marina will use the $3 million Calam committed to the city for public access improvements. Calam submitted its proposed community engagement plan and we understand it will start that engagement process in the next few weeks. With that, I'll close, but I'm happy to answer any questions or provide more detail on any of this, thanks very much.
Thank you so much. Are there any members of the public who are signed up to speak on this item?
Yes, we have one attending in person. DJ Moore, if you're here, go ahead and come up.
Good morning Chair Cummings and Commissioners, DJ Moore of Latham and Watkins on behalf of Calam. Um, I'd like to just request five minutes for Calam to give a supplemental update to commission staff's presentation.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. I see my presentation is up there. Uh, thank you Mr. Lester for the update on Calam's efforts to clear the special conditions and the project's CDPs. I'd like to highlight some of the substantial work that Calam and its consultants have undertaken to satisfy the conditions since the CDPs were approved. These are some of the most complex conditions that I've worked on in my career, which is why the commission gave Calam five years to clear them instead of the standard two. And I can assure you that Calam and its team of biologists, engineers and other specialists is engaged on a daily basis to move this important project forward so that construction can commence and bring this important water supply and needed water supply to the Monterey region. Next slide. First, I just want to note that in addition to the items Mr. Lester mentioned, Calam has had multiple litigation victories over the past year. It will enable elements of the project to move forward. Uh, Calam and. the project to move forward. Calum and the county of Monterey defeated a challenge to the county's approvals for the desalination plant site and its ancillary facilities. In addition, Calum, the county, and the Salinas Valley Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency defeated a challenge to the sustainability agency's authority to manage groundwater beneath the SEMEX site in Marina. Both of these lawsuits took almost five years to reach conclusion. In addition, the trial over Marina and Marina Coast Water District's challenges to this Commission's coastal development permits for the project was completed just last month, and a decision in that trial is expected this spring. A separate trial challenging Calum's ability to develop water rights from beneath the SEMEX site is expected later this year, and I'll discuss that more in a moment. In total, over 10 separate lawsuits challenging elements of this project have been resolved in Calum's favor, the majority of which were brought by Marina and Marina Coast Water District. Next slide, please. As Mr. Lester mentioned, Special Condition 1 contains some of the most time-consuming conditions in the CDPs because it requires securing approvals from other agencies. Regarding the State Lands Commission, a lease application was submitted back in June of 2023, and we have worked closely with land staff on the project and its sequel review, and we're expecting a hearing in the first part of this year. Regarding the regional Water Board's consideration, an application for an NPDS permit for the project's discharge was submitted in October of 2024. That was following a year of technical review by Monterey One Water, which is the owner of the ocean outfall. Calum is now working closely with board staff on evaluating alternatives, as well as marine life mortality data collection. As Mr. Lester also mentioned, CPUC is expected to complete its Phase II supply and demand assessment by this, by June of this year. Next slide, please. I also mentioned earlier the lawsuit involving Calum's ability to develop water rights at the SEMEX site, which is also addressed in Special Condition 1. The Water Board referee issued a draft administrative hearing report to the trial court in that proceeding in December. Importantly, that report found Calum can obtain water rights beneath the SEMEX site and avoid harm to aquifers. Several key findings are on this slide, including that Marina has not demonstrated any rights to groundwater in the basin that could be injured by Calum's project, and that the project will not adversely affect Marina Coast's existing wells. Next slide. Regarding ESHA impacts, the Calum and its consultants have conducted an exhaustive analysis of over 40 sites in the region. This involves physical surveys, drone surveys, engineering work on multiple sites, and we're currently working with Commission staff, local agencies, and private landowners on final site selection. Next slide. In March of 2024, Calum submitted a draft work plan to the Commission to guide the preparation of its groundwater monitoring plan. The Commission has engaged an outside hydrogeologist and is now underway, is our understanding. In April of 2024, Calum submitted a draft wetlands plan to Commission staff as well, and staff is in the process of retaining a third-party reviewer, and we're hoping that review can commence in the immediate future. Next slide. Consistent with Special Condition 16's requirements, Calum has submitted annual reports to the Commission regarding the low-income ratepayer relief programs it is implementing to minimize rate increases on low-income customers. Regarding the development of a community engagement plan to identify public access improvements in Marina, Calum issued an RFP for third-party facilitators last January, submitted all responses to the Commission in March of 2024. Marina declined to give input on that, and the Executive Director finally approved a consultant in October. And as staff mentioned, we're moving forward without a [inaudible]. I'd like to thank you for your time. We're here to answer any questions, and I hope you appreciate the considerable work that has gone into this over the past two years. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, as well. All right, seeing as how there's no more public, members of, members of the public who are going to speak to us, I'll bring it back, see if there's any comments by staff. I know we're going to have another item following this, okay? So with that, are there any questions or comments from the Commission on this item? Seeing none, this is an informational item only, correct? So I just want to appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this to kind of get us moving forward, and it'll be interesting to see like how this develops over time. And so with that, thank you all for joining us, for the folks who are online. And we'll move on to 7A, which is our energy, sorry, 7, which is our Energy, Ocean Resources, and Federal Consistency Deputy Director Report update. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Tufel.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Tom, for your presentation. So for the Deputy Director Report, we have five negative determinations to report this month, along with two immaterial amendments: one for the Calum test well immaterial amendment, and another for repair and maintenance activities on a seawater intake facility operated by the city of Santa Barbara. I'd like to acknowledge that one of the negative determinations is for the Army Corps of Engineers to carry out maintenance dredging activities in Moss Landing Harbor. Because of the proximity of this proposed activity to the recent battery storage fire, we're actively coordinating with the Corps of Engineers, the EPA, and Regional Water Board to understand and evaluate the potential presence of contaminated ash within the sediments that would be dredged. Given the depth of these sediments, the low weight of the ash, and the currents in overlying waters, we expect there to be little risk of contamination, but nevertheless felt that additional consideration and discussion with our partner agencies would be prudent. If warranted based on additional analysis, the Army Corps of Engineers would carry out further sediment testing prior to dredging to determine if contaminants are present and if project modifications and additional commission review would be necessary. I also wanted to provide some brief comments on the immaterial amendment for the Calum test well. And that immaterial amendment would extend the duration of that test well for an additional year. To provide some background, the Commission initially approved this test well in 2014. Calum's original test well permit anticipated that the well would operate for a couple of years, after which Calum would remove it or request that it become part of its larger proposed desalination project. Calum ended its test well operation several years ago, but has pursued a series of one-year extensions while the DSal project was undergoing regulatory review by the CPUC and Commission. While the Commission authorized Calum's project in late 2022, as you just heard, Calum has been working since that time to address and satisfy its prior to issuance permit conditions and receive the additional authorizations that's required. We received several comments on this item, including a comment letter that we received late yesterday afternoon from the Marina Coast Water District, MCWD for short. We prepared and posted early this morning an addendum in response to that letter. Commission staff reviewed the comments, however, and are not recommending any modifications to the proposed immaterial amendment. Two of the commenters raise issues that pertain to the Commission's approval of the 2022 CDP for the DSal project rather than the test well CDP time extension. Another commenter, MCWD, argues that the Commission has not evaluated or mitigated ESHA impacts or other coastal resource impacts associated with the continued presence of the test well. As discussed in the addendum, the Commission did review and mitigate ESHA impacts, and it evaluated potential coastal resource impacts under both the original 2014 test well CDP and the 2022 CDP for the desalination project. MCWD also argues that the Commission is required to perform a new override analysis under Section 30260 of the Coastal Act for the continued presence of the test well. However, as discussed in the addendum, no additional override analysis is required for the test well. The Commission conducted a Section 30260 override analysis for the test well, excuse me, not only in connection with the initial test well CDP back in 2014, but also as part of its review of the CDP application more recently in 2022 for the desalination project. Therefore, as discussed in the addendum, based on our review, the commenters raised no issues that suggest the one-year extension would result in additional coastal resource effects, and despite the objections raised, staff believe the proposed extension meets the requirements for an immaterial amendment. I don't believe we have any speaker signed up to speak on this item, but would note that Mr. Lester is available, along with Staff Counsel Sarah Esmealy, who can respond to questions regarding the comments we've received or the requested permit amendment. If Commission has no questions, we'd ask whether three or more Commissioners object to either of the two immaterial amendments in the Deputy Director Report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'll just confirm, are there any members of the public signed up? Just one?
Yes, just one, Nina Beatty. Nina Beatty, we allowed you to talk. Please unmute yourself.
Yes, this is Nina Beatty. I first request that any army testing must be made public. And definitely, the Moss Landing Harbor dredging cannot go forward at this time due to the fire, the battery storage fire, and unknown levels of toxic materials. It started on January 16th, and I was surprised to not see any mention in the staff reports. It's brought toxicity, injury, financial damage, long-term effects, damage to farmland and homes, to the coastal zone, the harbor, and the marine environment, and people in at least three counties. And already Stan Jose State University researchers have found 100 to 100, to 1,000 times increase in heavy metals and soils within a two-mile radius around the plant. Boat owners have testified at hearings about significant fallout on their boats. Brains have now washed more toxins into the ocean and the harbor. And they, those sediments must be left in place for evaluation, including by independent evaluators. For instance, and dumping of the sediment anywhere is now in doubt due to the unknown extent of toxicity. For example, the landfill in Marina is not accepting debris from nearby Prundale, so this would be a similar thing. In addition, Fiji may have operated an unpermitted nuclear breeder reactor at that site from 1968 or '69 to about the mid to late 1970s. I raised this issue with local, state, and federal agencies over the last year and a half, and none of them would investigate, as Vista was doing demolition work at the site. And I said, this poses a threat to worker safety as well as the environment. We've had, of course, rain since, as they've been plowing up the earth and digging up debris and then taking it, we don't know where they've taken it. But these, those soils could have radioactive, radionuclides in them that have now washed into the harbor. That needs to be evaluated as well.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We appreciate your comments.
And testing results from...
Thank you. Okay. Seeing that, we'll bring it back to the Commission. Are there any, well, is there any staff follow-up in the comments that were made? No. Are there any comments or questions from Commissioners? Seeing none, do...
You have one online.
Oh, there we go. Commissioner Hart.
Thank you very much, Chair. I had two questions. I'll start with the continuing, the lack of removal of the test well. One of the concerns we had in addition to the impacts on ESHA, which I understand the staff does not feel, feels that those impacts are speculative, it sounds like, at this time. One of the concerns we had was just the continuing impact on public access. So I'll ask both my questions, and then Castor, you, Tom, whoever could answer him. The other concern I have is the current lack of input from Marina in determining the consultant on the public access improvements. I was hoping you could give me a better understanding of what happened there, because it sounds like ultimately we chose the consultant. So those two issues, I was hoping you could address.
Thank you. Through the chair, Tom, if you wouldn't mind responding to the first questions, and I think Dr. Hucklebridge can respond to the second.
Okay, certainly. Thank you, Commissioner Hart. Yes, regarding the public access, the slant well is set back from the beach several hundred feet within the SEMEX property boundary. There may be some access available, but it's far enough from the lateral access provided along the beach that we haven't heard any concerns about the slant well, the surface expression of the slant well being an impediment. It's basically along a service road that was used during SEMEX sand mining. It's an unvegetated part of the site, has a relatively small footprint, and so we don't think there are any new public access concerns, none that we've heard of recently.
I can respond to your second question somewhat, Commissioner Hart. So the way that that condition had been initially drafted or approved by the Commission, I should say, was it required, and I'm going to get the exact wording wrong, so please bear with me, but it required Calum to do some community outreach regarding basically mitigation related to public access. And it required, they had to hire a consultant. We were, the Commission staff reviewed the choice of that consultant, and it was my review ultimately in determining if that, if the consultant was appropriate. The condition did also require for Calum and for us to work with the city of Marina to try to get their input on the consultant, the process, et cetera. So as DJ Moore mentioned earlier, Calum had submitted the options for consultant last year. We reached out to Marina, I believe Calum reached out to Marina several times, and during last year, they declined to weigh in. And we tried and, but respect their choice to not weigh in on that selection process. So in October, I made the decision to go forward with the consultant that was ultimately selected. I would like to note that earlier this year, just several weeks ago, we did have the opportunity to meet with the city of Marina at our office in San Francisco, and it was a very productive meeting. I think sitting down face-to-face, talking through some of their concerns was really helpful. I don't have much to report beyond that at this point, but I think we're working towards getting the input, I think, from the city on options for public access and what really the city would like to see. Again, it's complicated. The city is, has opposed the project from the beginning and want to make that very clear. So, you know, we're not sure where this will go, if there's, if there is an opportunity for the city to weigh in or not officially, but at least we were glad to be able to meet with them and try to work out a little bit what, you know, what the needs are for the city outside of the, you know, the process with Calum. So that was productive.
Thanks. If I could, through the chair, I just want to express my appreciation, Dr. Hucklebridge, for that, because it was a difficult hearing. And let's face it, it's a difficult situation where SEMEX is finally presumably out of there, and now there's this new project. And for that community, I just continue to want us to do whatever we can to help this community maintain public access and take advantage of all the economic benefits and, you know, huge amount, you know, all of the benefits that there are of having that beach there. So I really appreciate the outreach and would love it if we could have ongoing updates on the Calum situation at a time that you deem appropriate. Thank you.
Through the chair, just to respond, I think, Commissioner Hart, we completely agree. That engagement with the city is incredibly important to staff as well, and you have my commitment, continue that, to continue that engagement to the extent that the city is willing to be engaged, and we, you know, we can do that. And we will provide updates at appropriate times. I don't know exactly what that looks like at the moment, but we'll definitely, as we have more to report, bring it back to you all.
Great. All right. With that, are there three or more Commissioners who object to the staff determination? Seeing none, the Commission concurs. We don't have to vote on this, right? Okay, great. So the Commission concurs, and I just want to thank everybody for their hard work on all these items that are really important for our coast. And so with that, let's keep moving. That'll move us on to item number 7B, informational update on transboundary pollution crisis in the Tijuana River and Tijuana River Valley. I'll turn it back to Mr. Tufel for a presentation on this.
Thank you, Chair. So I have a very brief update to provide today, informing the Commission that the Commission's Chair and Executive Director recently sent a letter to Governor Newsom, thanking him for his efforts and advocacy on this issue and offering the Commission's full support moving forward. We're hopeful that a number of the ongoing projects we've been tracking will continue to make progress this year and begin to provide measurable benefits. I also welcome the formation of the Commission Subcommittee on this issue, and staff stand by, ready to provide them with any assistance they may need. That concludes my update for this month.
Great. Thank you very much. Are there any members of the public signed up to speak to us on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission. Any comments, Commissioner Escalante?
Just real quick to reiterate our gratitude to the Governor's leadership on this and his assistance. And, you know, we're there and ready to do whatever he needs of us and to help out. So thanks so much.
So the comments, I guess I'll just also share my appreciation for the Governor's office and all their efforts in taking the concerns of the community and the concerns of the Commission into account in his decision-making. And also, now that we have the Subcommittee established, I think we're going to be looking to them to see when items should be brought back to the Commission. So rather than having an item every month, I invite the Subcommittee to coordinate with myself and with staff so that we can put items on when information is becoming pertinent to the Commission. And so with that, if there's no further questions or comments on that item... And so with that, if there's no further questions or comments on that item, we'll go ahead and move on. I believe the next item on our agenda is item number eight, federal consistency, consistency certification number CC dash zero 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 two dash two four, City of San Diego Secondary Treatment Waiver. With that, I'll turn it back to staff for the presentation.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to invite our environmental scientist, Dr. Heather McNair, to provide the staff presentation on this item.
Good morning, Chair Cummings and commissioners. Thanks for putting the slides up. This is item eight A, the consistency certification by the City of San Diego for the discharge of treated wastewater from the Point Loma Wastewater Treatment Plant to the Pacific Ocean. Next slide, please. I think we missed one slide. Thank you. The City of San Diego submitted a consistency certification for the reissuance of a secondary treatment waiver under its National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, NPDES permit, from the U S EPA and Regional Water Quality Control Board. This map shows the location of the wastewater treatment plant in red and the ocean outfall, which diffuses the treated wastewater into the ocean four and a half miles offshore at a depth of about three hundred feet. The waiver would apply over a five-year permit term and would enable the city to continue to discharge wastewater receiving less than full secondary treatment in terms of two key water quality indicators, total suspended solids, or TSS, and biochemical oxygen demand, or BOD. Next slide, please. In the Clean Water Act, secondary treatment is defined in terms of TSS, BOD, and pH. TSS measures the amount of solid material in the water, which can be sediment, organic matter, waste, sewage, anything that would get trapped on a filter. BOD is a metric of the bacterial activity in the water. More bacterial activity requires more oxygen and translates to higher BOD. The city is requesting reissuance of a waiver for TSS and BOD, but is not requesting changes to pH limits. Next slide, please. In brief, the waiver would relax secondary treatment standards for TSS and BOD, allowing the city to remove less than eighty-five percent of these constituents from the effluent and to exceed the thirty milligrams per liter concentration limit for TSS. However, the city would continue to meet the related California Ocean Plan standard of not decreasing oxygen in the receiving water by more than ten percent. We're focused here on TSS and BOD because those are the limits altered by the waiver. The city must still meet many other effluent limits in its NPDS permit, for example, for heavy metals and pesticides. Next slide, please. While other treatment plants in California have undertaken costly upgrades to achieve secondary treatment, the city has taken an alternative approach, which focuses on developing a large-scale water recycling capacity called the Pure Water Program. In its prior reviews of the waivers in two thousand two, two thousand nine, and two thousand seventeen, the commission stressed the need to achieve secondary treatment or its equivalent, but also recognized that the Pure Water Program presented an opportunity to achieve the dual benefits of reducing wastewater and pollutant discharge while also providing a reliable and local source of potable water to San Diego. In two thousand fourteen, the city committed to pursuing water reuse in a cooperative agreement with the San Diego Coast Keeper, the San Diego Chapter of the Surf Rider Foundation, the Coastal Environmental Rights Foundation, and the San Diego Autobahn Society, with targets of fifteen million gallons a day of potable water by two thousand twenty-three and thirty million gallons a day of potable water by two thousand twenty-seven. In the commissioners' two thousand seventeen concurrence, the city committed to an accelerated timeline of thirty million gallons a day by two thousand twenty-two. Next slide, please. The Pure Water Program will reduce ocean discharge by diverting wastewater bound for Point Loma to new water recycling facilities, where the wastewater would be treated to drinking water standards. Due to a series of issues, including legal challenges and supply chain interruptions from the COVID pandemic and war in Ukraine, the city did not meet the accelerated timeline for pure water phase one, or its initial production target of thirty million gallons a day in two thousand twenty-two. However, the city remains committed to the project. Phase one is now seventy percent complete and is expected to be fully functioning by the end of two thousand twenty-seven. This will reduce discharge of wastewater, TSS, and BOD to the ocean by about twenty percent, and will also cut inputs of nitrogen by nine percent. Phase two of the Pure Water Program is in the beginning stages, and if completed on schedule in two thousand thirty-five, would produce an additional fifty-three million gallons a day of recycled potable water. Full implementation of pure water is expected to satisfy fifty percent of the water demand for San Diego and would significantly reduce the discharge of wastewater and pollutants to the ocean. It's worth noting that while the city did not meet its accelerated timeline for initial implementation of Pure Water Project, it remains on track for full implementation and on schedule identified in the commission's last review in two thousand seventeen. Next slide, please. The reissuance of a secondary waiver needs to be consistent with Chapter Three policies of the Coastal Act. The main resources that could be affected by the discharge of wastewater are marine resources and water quality, which can also affect fishing and ocean recreation. The city conducts an extensive ocean monitoring program to detect potential impact from wastewater discharge. The monitoring data show indications of the discharge at stations closest to the outfall, but the changes do not appear to be adversely affecting marine communities and habitats more broadly. Oxygen concentration remains high, and benthic community composition is still diverse. Similarly, the monitoring provides no evidence that fishing and ocean recreation are adversely affected by the outfall. Fish tissue samples do not indicate effect from the wastewater, and in cases where bacterial concentrations are elevated close to shore, for example, at beaches, these exceedances have been linked to terrestrial runoff and other pollution sources. Next slide, please. While ocean monitoring data does not indicate that the discharge is having adverse impacts, there are nonetheless broader regional concerns about nutrient loading from anthropogenic sources, including the four large wastewater treatment plants discharging into the Southern California Byte, which is the ocean space between San Diego and Point Concepcion. In particular, nitrogen input from wastewater plants and other sources can fuel algal growth, which in turn could lean to harmful algal blooms, decreased oxygen, and exacerbate ocean acidification. We also note the ongoing discharge of untreated wastewater from the Tijuana River occurring in South San Diego County, which is contributing significant amounts of both nutrients and pollutants to the coastal ocean and is having direct local impacts, including beach closures. The city has tracked the plume of wastewater from Point Loma outfall as it mixes with the ocean, and in two thousand twenty-two added new monitoring and analysis to assess whether the discharge was contributing to regional water quality issues, including nutrient loading and algal growth. So far, these studies indicate that the plume remains offshore and that the Point Loma Ocean Outfall is not contributing to adverse effects such as ongoing beach closures and shoreside health concerns. Next slide, please. Additional ongoing monitoring will investigate ties between wastewater discharge, nutrient loading, and phytoplankton growth. As noted previously, the implementation of the Pure Water Program will reduce nutrient discharge to the ocean. Additionally, the city continues to implement a broad range of programs and capital improvements that are intended to reduce point and non-point source pollution to benefit local coastal water quality. Next slide, please. Staff recommends that the commission find that the discharge over the life of the proposed five-year NPDS permit would continue to meet Clean Water Act and California Ocean Plan standards. Avoid adverse impacts, and with the ongoing implementation of Pure Water Program, wastewater and pollutant loads would be reduced, protecting and enhancing water quality consistent with the applicable marine resources, water quality, fishing, and public coastal access and recreation policies of the C C M P. Given the importance of the Pure Water Program for the ongoing protection and enhancement of marine resources and coastal water quality in the project area, and the need to ensure continued progress in implementing this program, the city has agreed to provide an interim status report to the commission on the construction, planning, and implementation of Pure Water Phases One and Two before the end of two thousand twenty-seven. Staff is recommending that this commitment be memorialized as condition one. We therefore recommend that the commission conditionally concur with a consistency certification. The motion to implement this recommendation is on page six of the staff report. This concludes the staff presentation.
Great. Thank you so much for that presentation. At this time, I'd like to see if there's representatives from the city of San Diego who would like to speak to the commission on this item. You just turned your mic off. There you go.
Thank you. Appreciate that. We do have a presentation, just a few slides to go through. While they're pulling the slides up, good morning, commissioners, staff, and stakeholders. I'm Juan Guerrero. I'm the director of the City of San Diego's Public Utilities Department, and joining me today is Doug Campbell, Assistant Director. We'll need about ten minutes for our presentation.
And guys, if there's a way to condense it, since we just had a pretty comprehensive presentation, it'd be really helpful.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. So the Point Loma Wastewater Treatment Plant's a critical component of the San Diego of the San Diego region's wastewater infrastructure. Since nineteen ninety-five, we've consistently met permit requirements and maintained water quality standards through our ocean monitoring program and our commitment to strengthening our wastewater system reliability and efficiency. Phase one of the Pure Water Program builds on these efforts by reducing ocean discharges and further protecting coastal water quality. Next slide, please. The Point Loma Wastewater Treatment Plant's a vital piece of infrastructure that's been operating since nineteen sixty-three. Point Loma's a main treatment facility in the metropolitan wastewater system and serves approximately two point four million residents within the city of San Diego that's pictured there in orange and twelve other participating wastewater agencies pictured in green. The plant provides advanced primary treatment and discharges to the Pacific Ocean via the Point Loma Ocean Outfall, which is one of the longest and deepest outfalls in the United States. And I'll let Doug Campbell take the next few slides.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Good morning, board members, staff, and stakeholders. I'm Doug Campbell, Assistant Director with the City of San Diego Public Utilities Department. To monitor the impact of our plant discharge, the city operates a robust ocean monitoring program covering areas from San Diego to Northern Baja California, spanning from beaches to offshore depths of over five hundred meters. The city collaborates with partners, including Scripps Institution of Oceanography and the Southern California Coastal Water Resource Project on regional studies, including kelp forest monitoring and the Southern California Byte Monitoring Program. This graphic is one example of the city's monitoring results. The green dots show healthy benthic response index scores at offshore sites and surrounding the Point Loma Ocean Outfall, which indicates that the marine and vertebrate communities are maintaining high diversity and are in abundance. Our thirty-plus years of monitoring data show that our wastewater discharge is not negatively impacting the environment. Next slide, please. In addition to our monitoring program, the city is committed to creating a sustainable local water supply that maximizes the use of scarce water resources while reducing ocean discharges in our Pure Water San Diego Program. Pure Water San Diego represents a pivotal partnership between the city, prominent environmental organizations like San Diego Coast Keeper, the San Diego Surf Rider Foundation, Coastal Environmental Rights Foundation, and the San Diego Autobahn Society, as well as other NGOs, elected officials, large and small businesses, and civic community and professional organizations. The program is a multi-phase initiative designed to provide a safe, local, and sustainable water supply by using advanced purification technologies to recycle wastewater into drinking water. This integrated water management approach allows the city to complete the one water cycle as displayed in the graphic. Next slide, please. Phase one of Pure Water San Diego represents a one point six billion dollar investment that will supply up to a third of the city's water demand and is anticipated to reduce discharge volumes from the Point Loma Wastewater Treatment Plant by approximately twenty percent. The program is the first permitted project of its kind in the state, and phase one is fully funded through federal grants, low-interest loans, and ratepayer contributions. Collaboration with state and federal regulatory agencies has been essential to our program's success, ensuring alignment with stringent water quality and environmental standards. Components of phase one, which is now seventy percent complete, include a new thirty-two million gallon per day pump station, over thirty miles of pipelines, including tunnels under three major freeways, two expanded and upgraded treatment plants, a new potable reuse treatment facility, and a sub-aqueous pipeline. Phase two planning is underway, which is expected to produce an additional fifty-three million gallons per day, and is anticipated to further reduce discharges from the Point Loma facility by up to fifty percent. And with that, I will turn it back.
Thank you, Doug. So the city of San Diego, sorry, next slide, please. So in conclusion, the city of San Diego agrees with the staff recommendation and respectfully requests commission concurrence with the two thousand twenty-five consistency certification for the Point Loma Wastewater Treatment Plant Permit. The permit reissuance is consistent with the Coastal Zone Management Act and California Coastal Act with no new development, facility expansion, or changes that impact public access, recreation, or the environment. Approval of the modified permit preserves existing infrastructure, aligns with coastal commission goals, protects the scenic and visual qualities of the coastline. The city remains committed to protecting coastal waters through the ocean monitoring program and investing in sustainable infrastructure, including pure water, to ensure a reliable wastewater system for future generations. That concludes our presentation. We're available for any questions.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, before we open it up to the other members of the public, I just want to check to see if there's any expertes on this item. Commissioner Oranga.
Thank you, Chair. Move his head up right now. Okay, hold on. Hold on. I got it right here. On January twenty-seventh at approximately one P M, I had a meeting with Ann Blenker, Susan McCabe, Doug Campbell, Peter Vroom, and Alexandra Barinter regarding the project. They provided a slide deck, which I then attached into this experte, and it's on file.
Any other members of the commission that have expertes on this item? Seeing none, I also had an experte on this item on January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five at ten fifteen A M. Person initiating the communication was Ann Blenker, and I was the person who was the main recipient. And present during the communication was myself, Sandy Brown, my staff member, Ann Blenker, Peter Vroom, Alexandra Barton, Barinter, Doug Campbell, and Susan McCabe. And the representatives from the city provided a similar presentation as to the one that they present now to inform me about the project, and we're available to answer any questions. This was submitted on Tuesday, and that concludes my experte. And so with that, I'll go ahead and open it up to see if there's any members of the public who'd like to speak to us on this item. You can you can take a seat until we bring it back to the commission.
So we have Ariel Bellew and Peter Vroom, which are on Zoom. They're available for questions. And then we also have Juan Guerrero. If you're available, please raise your hand on Zoom, or if you're in person, please come up. And then Courtney Brown, who's on Zoom, and then Mitch Silverstein, who's on Zoom. So those two, please raise your hand on Zoom. We'll start with Juan Guerrero in person.
I'm available to answer any questions, but I don't have any questions.
Okay, I think that's probably for you to come up for the staff presentation, so you're good. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll go with Courtney Brown. Moving to panelists. If you can unmute yourself, Courtney. Courtney Brown.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Hi. And sorry, I missed the first part. Do I have, is there a timer? Is there a minute?
You have two minutes.
Two minutes? Okay, awesome. Well, thank you. I won't take up too much of your time. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Courtney Brown, and I am the staff attorney for San Diego Coast Keeper. On behalf of Coast Keeper, I'd like to express our ongoing support for staff initiatives that aid in the implementation of Pure Water San Diego. As mentioned in the previous presentations, Coast Keeper and other environmental stakeholders were instrumental in the creation and adoption of pure water through a two thousand fourteen cooperative agreement, and we remain actively engaged with the folks at P U D in planning and implementation. The multiple benefits presented by the Pure Water Program far outweigh the alternative requiring the Point Loma Wastewater Treatment Plant to adhere to strict secondary treatment standards only to wastefully discharge treated effluent into the ocean. We appreciate commission staff's efforts to reduce volumetric discharges from the Point Loma Plant and support the recommended condition requiring an interim status report on pure water's phase one and two before the end of two thousand twenty-seven. Therefore, we respectfully request consistency concurrence as conditioned. Thank you.
Next is Ms. Mitch Silverstein.
Good morning, Honorable Chair Cummings and Commissioners. My name is Mitch Silverstein, San Diego County Policy Manager for Surf Rider Foundation. Surf Rider- Surf Rider San Diego supports the staff recommendation for conditional concurrence for the City of San Diego Secondary Treatment Waiver. We are a signatory of the 2014 Cooperative Agreement in support of Pure Water San Diego that established San Diego's current commitment and timeline to pursue the local water recycling, i.e. Pure Water San Diego. We concluded then that the eventual achievement of 83 million gallons of water daily of wastewater reuse, coupled with diversion of that wastewater from the treatment plant, would lead to a much better outcome for San Diegans than upgrading the treatment plant to meet federal secondary treatment requirements. We still believe that today. Basically, that less treated wastewater outflow overall, coupled with a locally sourced water supply that diminishes the city's unsustainable dependence on imported water, is the better alternative for San Diego residents and coastal water quality. We regret that delays have beleaguered the city's process and ability to meet its commitments on time, but construction is underway, and denying this conditional concurrence would threaten Pure Water's future. Pure Water is the largest public works project the city's ever undertaken and is absolutely necessary to establish a sustainable source of water for San Diegans. Even if there were no delays in implementation, this additional concurrence would still be necessary since the ultimate goal of 83 MGD is originally not supposed to be until 2035. Therefore, we can't afford to jeopardize Pure Water's completion and ask that you approve the staff recommendation for conditional concurrence. Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, I'll bring it back to see if there's any additional comments from staff. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission to see if there's any questions or comments from Commissioners.
Happy to make a motion.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and make the motion?
I mean, as a wastewater engineer, just a reminder, flushing your toilet is not magic. And a lot of work and planning and money and effort goes into cleaning up our waste and now recycling it, so I want to thank everybody involved. I don't think there was a question as to whether or not, in my mind, we would be concurring with this, so I move that the commission conditionally concur with the consistency certification CC-0002-24 on the ground, so that if modified in accordance with the condition recommended by staff.
Second.
Can I keep going? The project described herein would be consistent with the enforceable policies of the California Coastal Management Program. And with that, I recommend a yes vote.
Second.
Motion by Wilson, second by Escalante, and before we go on to the roll call vote, I will just say how excited I am to be able to vote on this and to support this project today. Towards the end of last year, we actually had a ribbon cutting for Pure Water SoCal in Santa Cruz County, where we will be taking secondary treatment water from the wastewater treatment plant in the City of Santa Cruz, transferring it to a tertiary water treatment plant, and then pumping it into our groundwater basin as a form of water that can be available during droughts. And we're just so thrilled to see more of these projects coming online, because, you know, if we're going to treat our water to the point where we can pump it out into the ocean, why don't we take that one step further and save it for ourselves so that we have an ongoing water source, especially as we're seeing more drought as a result of climate change? So just want to congratulate you all on this amazing project. Sorry for the delays you experienced, but happy to be supportive of that today. And with that, I'll ask Ms. Miller for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Yes.
Hart, yes. Commissioner Lowenberg.
Yes.
Lowenberg, yes. Commissioner Nada.
Aye.
Nada, yes. Commissioner Turnbull Sanders.
Yes.
Turnbull Sanders, yes. Commissioner Oranga.
Aye.
Oranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner Bocchko. Bocchko, yes. Commissioner Escalante.
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Chair Cummings.
Aye.
Cummings, yes, the vote is unanimous.
All right, thank you all again. That concludes that item. We'll move on to our next item, which is 9A Revised Findings Consistency Determination, number CD-0007-24, United States Space Force, and I'll turn that back over to Mr. Tupul for presentation on that item.
Thank you, Chair. As you noted, this is the revised findings for the U.S. Space Force's consistency determination for space launch activities at Vandenberg Space Force Base. As a brief reminder, on October 10th, 2024, the commission objected to the subject consistency determination by a vote of six to four. Because the commission action differed from the staff recommendation on the consistency determination, the staff report for this item contains revisions to reflect the commission's action. If approved by the commission, the proposed revisions will be incorporated into the adopted findings. In the posted report, modifications to the previous staff recommendation are shown as additions in underlined text and deletions in strike-through text. Staff also published a brief addendum on this item on Monday to make a minor clarification in the findings to prevent any potential misreading. In the addendum, double strike-through indicates text deleted from the revised findings. Commissioners who are eligible to vote on the revised findings are those from the prevailing side who are present at the October 10th, 2024 hearing, including Commissioners Hart, Bocchko, Escalante, Oranga, Aguirre, and Newsome. Commission staff would also note that the U.S. Space Force provided a letter to the Executive Director on November 1st, 2024, stating its intentions to carry out during the last two months of 2024 up to 14 additional launches above the 36 previously concurred with by the commission in August. SpaceX then proceeded with its 37th launch of 2024 shortly thereafter, on November 8th, and ultimately completed a total of 46 launches from Vandenberg in 2024. Notice of today's hearing for these revised findings was sent to all of the interested parties that were previously notified of the commission's hearing in October on the consistency determination. To date, commission staff have received 11 comments on the revised findings, which are included in a correspondence packet for this item posted to our online agenda. The notice that was sent to interested parties for today's hearing specified that the commission will only take testimony about whether the revised findings reflect the commission's October decision. Since comments received by commission staff did not raise an issue of whether the revised findings reflect the commission's October decision, comments were not addressed in an addendum. Additionally, commission staff would note that interested parties providing oral testimony today should similarly limit their comments to whether the revised findings reflect the commission's October decision. We recommend that the commission adopt the revised findings for the commission's October 10, 2024 action on the subject consistency determination. The motion and resolution can be found starting on page nine of the staff report, and we're available for questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. And so just to reiterate, well, first I'd like to ask, are there any members of the public intended to speak on this item?
Yes, we have three.
Three, okay. So for those members of the public, it is really critical, and I will cut you off, if you're not speaking specifically to whether the revised findings reflect the commission decisions. And so I know that many people don't like launches, they may like the launches, but that is not what's before us today. What is before us is whether or not revised findings reflect what was voted on by the commission at the last meeting. And so with that, I'll open it up for public comment, and members of the public have two minutes.
Okay, so first we have Anna Citrin, Rachel Whalen, and last Nancy Okada. Anna Citrin, if you can please unmute yourself.
Good day, Chair Cummings and Commissioners. Anna Citrin, Legal and Policy Director for the Gaviota Coast Conservancy, a Santa Barbara County-based nonprofit dedicated to the permanent protection of the Gaviota Coast for present and future generations. We follow the commission's proceedings regarding SpaceX closely and appreciate the steadfastness with which the commission has sought to protect our coastal resources from the adverse impacts of exponentially increasing rocket launch activity from Vandenberg Space Force Base. The Department of Defense has been a great steward of the many sensitive species and habitats at the base. SpaceX, however, does not have that track record. The discussion at the commission's October hearing raised legitimate questions about the accountability and trustworthiness of SpaceX and the nature of federal oversight over SpaceX that are directly relevant to determining whether the proposal is a federal agency activity and whether coastal commission imposed conditions are likely to be complied with. Moreover, we strongly agree with the statement in the revised findings that SpaceX's continued push for greater and greater launch levels on increasingly truncated timelines will present a significant challenge to its ability to meet its goals of assessing the impacts on coastal resources and uses from increased launch cadences from the base. Time is needed to collect and analyze data on the impacts of rocket launch noise and sonic booms on protected wildlife species from 36 annual launches before additional increases can be determined.
You're getting a little off-topic on whether the revised findings...
We believe the revised findings articulated in the staff report and addendum accurately reflect what we understood to be the basis of the commission's objection, and we support your staff's recommendation that you adopt the revised findings as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Rachel Whalen. Going to unmute yourself, please.
Okay, it's not letting me show my video, but I'll go anyway. Good morning, Commissioners, I am Rachel Whalen, the Governmental Affairs Coordinator at the San Luis Obispo Chamber of Commerce. I am here today to express the San Luis Obispo Chamber of Commerce's strong support for SpaceX's increasing the launch and landing capacity at Vandenberg.
That is not what's before us today? What's before us today is whether or not you all agree that the revised findings in this item reflect what the commission took action on. And so it's not whether or not you support the launches or not, it's whether or not you agree that what staff has written down reflects the action that was taken on the last time this item was heard.
Yeah, we do not agree, as we believe that Vandenberg is the second busiest spaceport in the world.
Ma'am, that's still not, that's still not, no. Ma'am, that's still not what's before us. The item that's before us is that the staff took what the actions that the board took and have now brought these back as revised findings for us to agree whether or not this reflects what the commission took action on. And so if you do not agree that this reflects what the commission wanted to do, then you must explain why. Otherwise, you should be speaking to whether or not this reflects what the commission took action on at the last meeting. So we're not talking about whether you agree or not with how many launches, it's specifically about, does the language reflect the action that the board took?
Okay, I am sorry, I was not adequately prepared for today. Yeah, we'll go ahead and pass.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next is Nancy Okada. Going to unmute you. Can I speak, Nancy?
Okay. Morning, Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak, Nancy Okada, Sierra Club, California Coastal Subcommittee, and we are in favor of this consistency report. We agree, we support your commission and all you're doing, and we believe that the number of launches should definitely be curtailed.
Ma'am, ma'am.
And as it...
Ma'am.
Yes, I know, exactly. So thank you very much for all your hard work. Thank you, committee.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay. We will bring it back to the commission, are there any, and again, although the entire commission can comment, only the Commissioners who supported the motion and prevailed during the last meeting are the only ones who can vote on this item. And so I'm going to open it up to the commission, see if there's any questions or comments from Commissioners on this item. Commissioner Hart. And you're muted. Carol, you're muted.
I'd like to say that the findings that are provided here as part of this item are consistent with the actions that we took that day, and I would be happy to make the motion here this morning.
Commissioner Escalante.
I concur with Commissioner Hart, and I'll second that motion.
Okay, so Commissioner Hart, could you please read the motion into the record?
I move that the commission adopt the revised findings in support of the commission's actions on October 10, 2024, objecting to consistency determination CD-0007-24, and I recommend a yes vote.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Hart, seconded by Commissioner Escalante. I'll turn it to Ms. Miller for a roll call vote from the specific Commissioners.
Commissioner Bocchko.
Yes.
Bocchko, yes. Commissioner Escalante.
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Hart, yes. Commissioner Oranga.
Aye.
Oranga, yes, the vote is unanimous.
Okay, thank you very much. That brings us to, it's noon on the dot. I don't know if lunch is here, lunch is here, okay, so we're going to take a lunch break. How long do people want, 45 minutes?
30?
Or 30?
30.
Okay, why don't we do, why don't we do 40 minutes, so we'll come back at 12:40. Okay, looks like we're ready to get rolling again. The next item on our agenda, South Central Coast District Deputy Director's Report, item number 10. And with that, I'll pass it over to Steve Hudson.
Okay, thank you, a good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Item 10 is the Deputy Director's Report for the South Central Coast District, which includes four permit waivers, two immaterial permit amendments, six immaterial extensions, and one emergency permit. In regard to that emergency permit, I would note that it was issued to the City of Ventura for removal of sand and woody debris from the mouth of San Hoan Lagoon to prevent imminent flooding of adjacent roads, homes, and businesses. I would also like to note that one of the waivers being reported today is for a new accessory dwelling unit, or ADU, and a second waiver is for the in-kind replacement of an existing mobile home. And are examples of how your staff continues to work to expedite through the commission's waiver process new ADUs and housing projects that, after review, our staff has determined would not result in any potential impacts to coastal resources. That concludes my report. Staff is not aware of any opposition to any of these items being reported today, and we're asking whether three or more Commissioners object to any of the items in the Deputy Director's Report. I am available for questions.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anybody online to comment?
No speakers.
No speakers, okay, so bring it back. Are there three or more Commissioners who would like to object to the staff's recommendation? Seeing none, the commission concurs.
Thank you, and that brings us to item 10.1A, which will be presented via Zoom by Denise Gonzalez, a coastal program analyst in our South Central Coast District. If we could pull up the PowerPoint, please, and Denise, take it away.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Item 10.1A is a substantial issue hearing for an appeal of a CDP approved by the County of Ventura to construct a new three-story, 1,671-square-foot commercial and residential mixed-use building with two associated driveways and four off-street parking spaces. The project also includes granting three variances to authorize a 10% increase in maximum building coverage, an additional driveway, and a reduced carport setback. The applicant is Juan Carlos Lugo, and the appellant's are Elizabeth Bradford, Mark Bradford, and Lauren and Anita Naaman. Next slide, please. As seen here, the project site is located on a vacant 1,400-square-foot parcel zone coastal commercial located at 202 Ocean Drive in the residentially developed neighborhood of Silver Strand Beach in Ventura County. There are existing residential development on adjacent properties to the east, south, and west, while commercial development is situated to the north. Further, the site is approximately 200 feet inland from Silver Strand Beach and approximately 250 feet from the entrance road to a public beach parking lot. The three appeals in this case contend that the approved second driveway will reduce on-street parking from four to less than one parking space along the site's 70-foot frontage, resulting in a loss of public parking for public access to the beach. The appeals also allege that granting the 10% increase in building coverage variance will result in a larger building structure that will block ocean views, and that the building's glass exterior will cause glare issues. The Silver Strand Beach residential neighborhood provides pedestrian access to the beach via numerous public street ends. However, there is a lack of on-street public parking resulting from narrow streets and existing property driveway aprons spanning much of the street frontage, leaving very limited on-street parking. The county's LCP emphasizes the need to enhance public access by requiring replacement parking to be provided for new development that requires the removal of existing parking. In this case, two driveway aprons are required to accommodate the LCP-required off-street commercial and residential parking spaces. Next slide. As shown on this slide, the 70-foot property frontage along Santa Monica Avenue is currently available for parking because the site has not yet been developed, and a driveway has not yet been established. The two approved driveways would reduce the frontage available for on-street parking from 70 feet down to 33.6 feet. In its action, the county found that three unmarked on-street parking spaces could be provided within the... provided within the site's 70-foot frontage. However, given the spaces are unmarked, it would be possible for four cars to fit within the 70-foot frontage. However, it's uncertain how frequently the site's frontage would accommodate four vehicles. Further, the county determined that the remaining 33.6-foot curb frontage could accommodate two small or mid-sized cars. Therefore, the project would result in the loss of only one parking space. To address the loss of one on-street parking space, the applicant proposed to include an additional onsite commercial parking space, which would be available for the general public outside of business hours. This additional space serves as replacement parking to offset the one on-street parking space lost. As a result, the county determined that the approved project would not result in any public access impacts, given the adequate parking for the project will be provided in a manner consistent with the LCP. In this case, Commission staff concurs with the county staff's finding that the project will not result in any new significant adverse impacts to public parking for beach access, and that substantial issue is not raised by the county's action relative to the public access policies of the certified LCP or Chapter III policies of the COSSAC. Next slide. The appellant's also argue that the 10% increase in building coverage from 40% to 50% will result in a larger building structure that will block ocean views inconsistent with COSSAC Section 30251, and the building coverage increase will be detrimental to the value of the neighboring properties due to the loss of views. However, the appeal makes a general assertion regarding blocking ocean views and does not cite specific examples or explanations regarding which ocean views are being impacted. As can be seen on this slide, the subject law is on the inland side of Ocean Drive, and beach and ocean views are largely blocked from view by beachfronting two and three stories on the west side of Ocean Drive. As a result, the county found that the approved structure would not obstruct public views of the coast. Furthermore, assuming the appellant's assertion that the loss of views would be detrimental to the value of the neighboring properties is related to private ocean views, the county's LCP does not protect private ocean views, and therefore this appeal contention is not a valid ground for appeal. Thus, Commission staff agrees with the county's findings of approval relative to public view impacts, and that the appeals do not raise a substantial issue on these grounds. Further, the appellant's assert that the required findings necessary for issuance of the three variances could not be made by the county. In this case, the county found that special circumstances apply to the vacant 20-foot-wide and 70-foot-long corner parcel due to its small size, commercial zoning corner location, and proximity to residential zones. The county also found that the variance would not confer special privileges inconsistent with the limitations of other Silver Strand Beach community properties. Additionally, the county found that applying the LCP's building coverage, driveway number, and carport setback standards to the small subject parcel would potentially make its development feasible, and that the granting of the variances would not be detrimental to the public or neighboring properties. The county also found that no significant coastal resources or environmentally sensitive habitat areas on the site would be negatively affected by the project. The project will be compatible with the surrounding area and will have no adverse impacts on visual resources or public access. For these reasons, Commission staff does not believe that substantial issue is raised relative to the county's issuance of these variances. Lastly, one of the appeals assert that glare concerns related to using low emissivity glass coating were improperly handled in front of the Ventura Board of Supervisors. The county's LCP only addresses glare from lighting and illuminated signage, but is silent regarding building materials. Therefore, the appeals claim that the glare concerns related to glass coating were improperly handled is not a valid grounds for appeal. However, I would note that in response to glare concerns raised in the local appeal process, the county conditioned the project to require south- and east-facing exterior windows and glass railings to be non-reflective or treated with a non-reflective or low emissivity coating. To conclude, the county's action included findings and evidence supporting its conclusion that the approved development is consistent with the relative policies and provisions of the county's LCP. Therefore, staff is recommending that the Commission find that no substantial issue exists with respect to the grounds on which the appeals were filed regarding the project's consistency with the LCP. The motion for this can be found starting on page seven of the staff report. This concludes the staff presentation, and staff is available for questions.
Great, thank you so much for that presentation. Just give them one sec, so I'm just gonna look to staff for a little bit of guidance on this. So do we want to open up to the appellant's first, and then the applicants, and then members of the public?
Appellants first, then applicant.
Okay. Is there a representative for the appellant's here for us today? If you'd like to step up to the mic to provide your presentation, and how much time would you need? Two minutes? If you hit the button at the base, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mark Bradford. Thank you for your attention. This coastal property is zoned for 40% coverage. Project plan...
Two minutes.
Project plan is actually over 80% lot coverage. They're trying to create new definitions of what lot coverage is, pretty clearly defined in standard publication. This increase in coverage reduces all setback requirements. These reductions in setback requirements exceed the county's own published authority to reduce. This lot does not fit this building. This lot would fit a much smaller building. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. And before we move on, I just want to bring it back to the Commission to see are there any exparties on this item? Okay, seeing none? Okay, and then we will open up to the applicants, if there's a representative from the applicants who are here. Oh, I didn't realize you all were... Okay, and then you're gonna split the two minutes amongst yourselves? Okay, so you can get three minutes total, and I think you only used about 30 seconds, so we'll give you two minutes and 30 seconds between the three of you. And so you can continue with the presentation.
Good afternoon, I'm Elizabeth Bradford.
Can I pause real quick? Can we bring the slides back up? And then make sure to bring the mic down to your mouth and speak directly into it. There we go. Okay, go ahead.
I'm here to urge you to not approve this project as designed. The Coastal Act emphasizes the importance of the public's access to the coast and new development not interfering with that access. This project prevents access to the beach. It's taking away the parking. As you can see up there, the lot is actually 3.67 feet into the curb return, which that cannot be counted for the 70 feet of parking. So the California Vehicle Code 22500 said there's no parking the first 20 feet from marked or unmarked crosswalks. So this is going to reduce the 70 feet, 23 and 2/3 feet. Now, the second driveway that they're requesting to add is going to, and they've created new definitions for driveway aprons, from the three-foot published, they're taking it down to two foot on either side of the driveway. This is a shared driveway. Shared driveways are supposed to be between adjacent properties, not on a single property. So that second driveway is reducing it further to, down to 22 feet further, leaving only 24.43 in actual on-street parking. The stated replacement parking is nonexistent as it is required for the commercial business. The ADA space, which is on the top left, it does not provide a three-foot path of travel. The path of travel is 1.8 feet. Approving this project violates five federal and state laws. It eradicates Coastal Act Chapter III's ideology, and it is noncompliant with over 30 Ventura County Coastal Zone Ordinance codes. Do not approve this project as currently planned. It does not satisfy the conditions to apply for a variance, and it needs modifications. Thank you.
And if we can pause the time and invite the last member of the appellant's. You all had three minutes amongst yourselves, so that's the way you wanted to divide the time up.
Can you put up my third slide? The third slide. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the project. It's a slab-sided sided glass house. The planning commission found that it needed to have low emissivity glass so that there wouldn't be no reflection, and they mandated that. But they forgot that the emissivity is into the house, not out of the house. And by mandating it, they've added from 12% reflectivity to now 40% reflectivity. Got it just upside down.
Thank you so much. Okay, so is there a member of the applicant who's here today to speak on their behalf?
Oh, Lugo on Zoom, Juan Carlos.
Okay. If we can bring them...
Lugo, if you can unmute yourself.
Bye, can you hear me?
Yep, are you the only person representing the applicants today?
Yeah, my wife's a teacher, so she's actually teaching right now.
Okay, so we'll give you three minutes as we gave to the appellant's.
Okay. I'm not gonna go that far, but just want to say thank you to the Commission for hearing this. We've worked with the Ventura Planning Department for almost four years.
Can I pause it?
Been through. We've been through the votes for this with the planning department.
Can we pause it for one sec? We just gotta get your clock up. Okay, there we go, continue, sorry about that.
Okay. We've worked with them for four years, it's been a long process. We've listened every single time that they've asked us to do anything, like you have to move this a foot or that a foot. So I think a lot of these questions that they are bringing up, although they are allowed to ask them, they've been answered by the Board of Supervisors, they've been asked by the planning department, and they've all agreed that this project should be approved and has been approved unanimously twice. This lot's been here since 19, what, 1924? So there is no other way to develop it rather than this, and I know the Coastal Commission, they do like businesses here, this is a commercial, it's mixed use. The two applicants that are, I guess, appealing this are both, you should know, my next-door, are soon-to-be next-door neighbors. No one else in the area is appealing it. There's also a vacant lot right behind this lot, so that will be built, and it will be built to the standards that most homes around there, sure, like 35 or 38 feet. So the, I guess, the ocean view blockage that, although they do have a point, you are allowed to build in both their homes that are next door, are over 35 feet. So I don't see why that's a problem with anyone. If you guys have any questions about anything, I'd be more than happy to answer any. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any person from local government who'd like to speak to us on this item?
We have Mike Ocongar, he's available for questions.
Okay. With that, I'll open it up to members of the public who oppose this project. Do we have any members of the public signed up to speak to us on this item?
No.
Okay. With that, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll bring it back to staff, and responses from what was heard during the comment period.
All right, thank you, and Denise Gonzalez will start off the comments.
So I just wanted to reiterate that the county's LCP only addresses glare from lighting and illuminated signage, but is silent on building materials. Therefore, the appellant's glare concerns are not valid grounds for appeal, and in response to that concern at the local government process, the county did condition the, did condition the project to require the exterior windows and glass railing to be non-reflective or treated with a non-reflective or low emissivity coating. And then one of the other appellant's cited the California Vehicle Code Section 22500 N1A, also known as the Daylighting Law, which prohibits parking within 20 feet of a crosswalk, yet a local authority can change the distance if it meets certain requirements. In this case, the property is a corner parcel adjacent to a crosswalk. So in this case, the county's findings, it did not specifically address this Vehicle Code section in their parking analysis. Nonetheless, had the county applied the law in its parking analysis, the total number of on-street parking spaces eliminated due to the new development would not have changed. In this case, the law would reduce the on-street parking from three spaces that currently exist down to two spaces, but the development of the project, specifically the second driveway, still only requires the removal of one parking space, and that one parking space is being replaced by an onsite parking space as part of the project. It's also important to note that this law is not a part of the county's LCP, so it's also not a valid grounds for appeal, and that concludes my comments. I'll pass it over to Steve if you'd like to make any additional.
Thank you, Denise. Just to briefly add that in addition to the explanation regarding parking, given that small size of this lot, we agree with the, with the local government's findings that there was no feasible alternative in this case, and that the changes approved by their variance did not result in any significant impacts to coastal resources, and in particular, that included no impacts to public views or access, in our opinion. And that we also concur with the city's analysis, as Denise explained, that there's no feasible alternatives to their parking configuration if the applicant complies with the ADA requirements, provide at least one space onsite while still providing for the necessary parking spaces onsite. So with that, I'll just note that we are available for any questions, but we continue to recommend the Commission find no substantial issue.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, I'll bring it back to the Commission to see if there's any Commissioners with questions or comments on this item. Commissioner Lowenberg.
Just for clarification, this is, it's ground floor retail with one residential unit above.
Okay, Denise, would you like to answer that question?
Sure. Yes, the ground floor is retail, and the second and third story will be the residential unit.
Okay. Is there any reason, if you look at the diagram, that is, what's it called? Well, it's the one that's sort of looking down on, oh, I just hit it, shoot. My question is, is there a way to combine the curb cut in the back with, is the curb cut in the back where it says public parking? There's one that's like red-hatched, there's in the exhibits. You've got that? I'm just wondering if there's, next to the two-car stack, is there a way to put the accessible one there, and is that even legal as opposed to the front? Just trying to get rid of a curb cut. Yeah, it's this one that's kind of hatched. You see this one? It's in the staff report, it's an exhibit. You don't have it? Okay, all right.
I also want to just see, I mean, I just want to check with staff as well, because I'm not sure how much of those kinds of details we can actually get into when it's a finding.
Yeah, probably not.
Yeah, substantial issue or not.
All right.
But I'm just, let's just hear from staff.
Yes, I'd say we're happy to respond to those questions. They weren't specific grounds for appeal, but parking was generally raised, so I believe it would be appropriate to go ahead and respond. And I'll just ask Ms. Gonzalez if she knows the answer to that question.
I'm not entirely certain, but I know the county's planner is available for questions if there were any certain limitations to setbacks in order to accommodate the ADA requirements on the backside.
The backside meaning where the stackable, where the stackable, the two cars?
Correct. There's a carport that has, correct.
All right.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments, Commissioner Nava?
I just wanted to say that I appreciate...
I just wanted to say that I appreciate staff's clarification on the daylighting law analysis. And I think that's important, that we make sure that we incorporate that going forward. But you've clarified the question that it does comply with that.
I'm happy to make a motion if that's.
Sure, go ahead.
Sure. I move that the commission determine that appeal number A-4-VNT-24-005 raises, five-six, excuse me, raises no substantial issue with respect to the grounds on which the appeal has been filed under Section 30603 of the Coastal Act, and I recommend a yes vote. And I just, before I get to that, I just wanted to ask this question, which is, would it be possible in the future, and I think maybe it was just asked, the area above the, what is the new public parking space made onsite? Could that be available above that space for future ADU development?
I, well, I'm gonna answer that. I think it's unlikely, given the, I believe it's a parking lift system. But given that space, I don't think they would have adequate room.
Okay.
But I'm gonna also ask Ms. Gonzalez if she can add any detail.
You had it all, Steve, don't have anything else to add.
Okay, thank you. Just confirming, we, I don't think there's space for an additional ADU.
I was just encouraging of that. But with that, I think that the staff analysis, the analysis by staff has done well. I think that the city, or, excuse me, the county did what they could in this case. We're in favor of these mixed uses and higher residential densities in this area. So with that, I'm very supportive of this project, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion, bye. Second one, bye. Commissioner Lowenberg, let me confirm, you're asking for a yes vote on finding no substantial issue?
Yes.
All right. And then I'll just thank everyone for their participation here today. And I want to thank the county and the city planners, or the planners, the planning department for their review of this. And I agree with Commissioner Wilson's comments. You know, there can't be conflicts between people who want to build in the coastal zone, conflicts when they want to build near their neighbors. But in this instance, it's pretty clear that they met the conditions, and the county and the planning department did their best to make this project conform to the Coastal Act on the basis of what the applicant has submitted. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Miller for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Lowenberg?
Yes.
Lowenberg, yes. Commissioner Nadoff?
Aye.
Nadoff, yes. Commissioner Turnbull Sanders?
Yes.
Turnbull Sanders, yes. Commissioner Oranga?
Aye.
Oranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner Bajko?
Yes.
Bajko, yes. Commissioner Escalante?
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Hart, yes. Chair Cummings?
Aye.
Cummings, yes. The vote is unanimous.
Okay, thank you very much. That concludes that item. Moves us on to our next item, item number eighteen, coastal permit applications. And this will take us to item number eighteen A, application number 1-22-0260 Alexandra Derry at Del Norte County. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hudson for the presentation.
Yes, pardon, Mr. Chair, one, one change. We did skip over item twelve, the deputy director's report for South Coast District.
All right. My apologies, we'll go back to deputy director's report for item number twelve for Los Angeles County. Take it away.
Thank you. Item twelve, the deputy director's report for the South Coast District this month includes five waivers and one certification review. The report also includes a memorandum responding to objections received within the ten-day period for public comment for an immaterial permit extension that was reported at our December hearing. Specifically, we received two objections from Margaret Malloy and the group Citizens Preserving Venice for the one-year time extension of the coastal permit for the Venice Place Hotel Project by Winku Properties LLC. And that project was approved by our commission at its December 2022 hearing. It was for the demolition of an existing restaurant, small private school, office, retail, commercial space, private parking lot, and three residences, and the construction of a new two-story, three, two-to-three-story mixed-use seventy-eight-room hotel that would have ten lower-cost rooms, a mix of retail, restaurant space, and four new residential units in the Venice area. As explained in detail in the memorandum, the objections assert that the financial feasibility study for the project is outdated, the cumulative impacts analysis for the project was not accurate, that the project would result in parking impacts, and the city's contemplated outdoor dining program in conjunction with the approved hotel would impact public access and parking. However, these issues, most of these issues were fully evaluated as part of the commission's approval of the underlying project, which found that the project would not result in any new significant adverse impacts to coastal resources, and that included public access. Specifically, as noted in the memo, in regard to the financial feasibility analysis, we would note that a new study would, in our opinion, not change the findings made by the commission relating to its approval, nor its decision to require onsite affordable rooms or replacement of the residential units onsite. The commission adequately addressed the cumulative effects to coastal resources as part of its previous approval. And moreover, in regard to the city's outdoor dining program, at the time of the commission's action, the city was already implementing a temporary outdoor dining program pursuant to the governor's emergency action in response to COVID and a 30611 emergency waiver by the commission. And the city's contemplation of potentially making such a program permanent at some point in the future, and that action itself would need to come back before this commission as a new permit or LUP or LCP amendment, that would not constitute changed circumstances relevant to this project. Moreover, such an action by the city, well, as I mentioned, that action for an outdoor dining program would itself require another amendment or permit by this commission to evaluate any potential effects to resources. Thus, staff does not believe that the comment letters provide evidence of any change circumstances. And pursuant to Section 13169 of the commission's regulations, I would note that in order to deny a permit extension request, objections must identify changed circumstances that may affect the consistency of the development with the Coastal Act or a certified LCP. It would not provide an opportunity to rehear the merits of the project itself. And for these reasons, staff does not believe that there are changed circumstances affecting the commission's previous action or the project's consistency with the Coastal Act, and we recommend the immaterial time extension be approved. Moving on to the other items in the deputy director's report. In regard to the certification review being reported today, it is for an LCP amendment by the city of Long Beach to update its certified 1989 Victory Park Design Guidelines, which is part of the city's certified implementation plan, by adopting the new Victory Park Santa Cruz Park Design Guidelines. The amendment was approved by the commission at its August meeting this year, and the executive director has determined that the local government's subsequent action, accepting all of the commission's suggested modifications pursuant to a resolution, is legally adequate, and that this amendment will become certified upon being reported to the commission. This matter is being reported today pursuant to our regulations, and it does not require any additional action or concurrence by the commission. With the exception of the one permit time extension, we're not aware of any opposition to any of the other items being reported today, and we are asking whether three or more commissioners object to any of the items in the deputy director's report. Staff is available for question, and I would just note that we do have some speakers in regard to the immaterial time extension.
Great, thank you. All right, then I will look to my speaker promoters. So Simone, just wanted to know how many speakers we have with us today?
We have five speakers. So we have three in person that are available for questions, and two that are on Zoom that would like to speak out on the subject.
Okay.
All right.
So for those members who are here in person, well, actually, for everybody who's involved, we have two minutes. And so if you can call up the speakers, we'll go ahead and get started with public comment on this item.
All right, so those that are here, Ted Harris, Mary Ann Cronin, and Alex Muldro. If you guys can come up to the podium in that order, please.
Hello, Chair, members of the commission. I'm Ted Harris, and I represent the applicant. I'm just here to answer any questions. We strongly support the district director's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Alex. Mary Ann couldn't make it, so I'm here on her behalf. I'm representing the Victory Park, the new Victory Park Guidelines. I'm only here for questions. So if you have any questions, I'm here.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, so next we have Robin Rudesel via Zoom. Robin, can you unmute yourself, please?
Yes, hi, good afternoon. I'm Robin Rudesel, Citizens Preserving Venice. Good cause for this permit extension is required by Coastal Act Section 3517. You'll find there's no good cause mentioned because there isn't any. But there are many significant changed circumstances, as thoroughly described in our attorney's letter, which do materially affect both coastal access and community character. Commissioners, this is not your run-of-the-mill permit extension request. These applicants were given an extremely rare financial benefit related to COVID. But according to the WHO, the COVID crisis was officially over in May 2023, subsequent to that permit issuance. That is a changed circumstance. The permit decision, even if justified at the time, is no longer valid as it was based on conditions that no longer exist. Commissioners, how could you allow them to use the COVID crisis to pay less in lieu fees or provide fewer affordable hotel rooms? That's one of your most important issues. Moreover, the analysis of this project is loaded with conclusory statements and findings. If you, if you read the staff report, you'll, you'll see that. The facts just don't support it. They're not, the evidence is not there. There's also an extremely large mixed-use density bonus project very close by that isn't finally approved yet, but certainly qualifies as a probable project. I know this doesn't rise to the level of the impacts of spaceship launches or the Tijuana River pollution crisis, but this is by far the largest project ever for Venice. And it's very important to us that it doesn't result in adverse significant cumulative impacts on our neighborhoods while taking advantage of a worldwide health crisis that has since come to an end. Please give us and our dedicated work the respect of having a hearing on this extension. There are clearly circumstances that affect the development's consistency with the Coastal Act that warrant a closer look. We need three votes to request a public hearing, please, and thank you.
Next, this is David Ewing.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Can you, speaking of changed circumstances, can we please stop pretending the Venice local coastal program has not been prejudiced during the nearly fifty years since the Coastal Act was passed? Our LUP certified twenty-four years ago was meant to be a temporary protection, the state equivalent of an interim control ordinance. But during these twenty-four years, the character of our coastal zone has been altered, diminishing the very qualities that earned its designation as a special coastal resource. For instance, most of the black community who created much of the vibrancy for which Venice is internationally known and beloved have been driven out, and gentrification has bulldozed numerous historic buildings, replacing them with larger structures for an affluent influx. The project before you now is the biggest and most impactful Venice has ever seen. The developer did everything in his power to circumvent our LUP, and then brought in a Sacramento lobbyist to huddle with staff, working the COVID-based financial hardship angle while community members were kept at bay. A false inconsistent radius was applied for cumulative impacts, excluding major projects nearby that have morphed, increasing those impacts since the CDP. And COVID used to leverage a financial benefit hasn't been an issue for over two years now. We understand that you, as a commissioner, have to be adroit in dealing with powerful interests, but you must not pretend you're protecting our coastal resources as they slip through your fingers. We're just asking for a hearing on these clearly changed circumstances. Please ask the chair for time to read our attorney's brief letter before you vote. And at least three commissioners, please vote for a fair hearing of this matter. And thank you all for your commitment to our precious coast.
We have another speaker, if you're willing to let them speak, Margaret Malloy.
Thank you so much.
Can you hear me?
Yes. I concur with Robin and David's comments and Amanda's letter. And I'm asking you to please, please really consider a very early morning email I sent you. I apologize, we're working people, we can't be as timely as we would like. But everybody who appears in a suit before you is paid to be there, and that's just the odds. So please consider the voices of the local people who are doing this on a volunteer basis, day in, day out, because it matters, community matters. Palisades is wiped out, you can see the community matters. Venice is an incredibly big, tiny, three-mile-square area on the entire coastal zone of California. That's the number-one public visitor destination. It's also the first and only remaining intentional black coastal community on the West Coast. That isn't even mentioned in the staff report or analysis. And you know, lobbyists have a job. Their job is to direct your attention, to address issues that they want to have some mitigating conversation about, and to distract you from the really, really consequential issues over which you could not possibly approve their projects. And that includes the impact of this project and the other four nearby projects within five hundred square feet of each other, five hundred feet of each other, that all directly impact that black historical Oakwood community. At the very least, have a hearing. It's very unfair how this is being done. And staff was told that this is a major project that's unlikely to occur other places. That's absolutely untrue. Own entire blocks in Venice, commercial zone.
That's it.
Okay. All right, well, we'll bring it back to the commission, and I'll look first to staff to provide a response to some of the comments that we just heard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, in response to Ms. Rudesel's comments, I would just note that there was no COVID waiver by this commission or by its staff. Perhaps she was discussing the action by the local government. We don't have that information. The only waiver that was approved by, by this agency was for the temporary dining program by the city, similar to other local governments, and we don't believe that constitutes a changed circumstance. But bear, I want to be very clear that there was no relationship between COVID and the commission's previous findings for approval and action on this project. The two are completely separate. And there were no exceptions whatsoever made on the number of affordable units, the in-lie fees, the number of replacement residential units, or any other type of mitigation that was required to our conditions. Those findings are consistent with the commission's past decisions, and they're part of the record. I would also just note that the issues raised by the other speakers and staff's opinion primarily relate to the merits of the project itself. And as explained in our memorandum, a time extension is not an opportunity to rehear the merits of the project itself. It should be based only on whether or not there are changed circumstances. And in this case, we do not believe that any issues regarding any sort of changed circumstance exists in this case. So we continue to recommend that this one-year time extension be approved.
Thank you so much. Okay, are there any questions or comments from commissioners on this item? Seeing none, do three or more commissioners object to the findings brought forward by the staff? Seeing none, the commission concurs. Thank you so much. So we'll move on. The next item is item number fifteen, North Coast District Deputy Director's Report. So I'm not sure who's here.
Shannon Gray will be giving the deputy director's report, and she's online today.
Okay, great, welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair Cummings and commissioners. Item fifteen is the deputy director's report for the North Coast District, which includes two waivers and one permit amendment this month for development in Humboldt and Mendocino Counties. First, I would note that we have received correspondence from a member of the public regarding one of the waivers being reported today. And that is the application by the Karuk tribe to install broadband fiber optic cable along eleven miles of PG&E right-of-way in Humboldt County. The project is intended to supply middle-mile and last-mile fiber optic cable connections to people living in the ancestral territory of the Karuk tribe, which is. which has been an area largely underserved by existing service providers. In this case, the commenter raised concerns related to implementation of the project unrelated to coastal resources protection, specifically the potential for damage to private roadways during construction and the potential for residences along the right-of-way to also connect into the broadband services. While these do not raise substantive resource issues, the applicant's representative confirmed that the project includes requirements to restore roads to pre-construction condition should any damage occur as a result of the project, and also that houses along the cable route will be eligible to connect to the proposed fiber optic service by paying for a connection from the line to their private residence. Therefore, staff continues to recommend approval of this item as part of the Deputy Director's Report. Now, in addition to the items just mentioned, we are reporting out three emergency permits that were issued in December. First, the failure of a culvert and associated tide gate within an existing agricultural levee in Bayside, Humboldt County. This was posing a threat to low-lying structures, including residences and infrastructure. The landowner was authorized to replace the culvert and tide gate in kind with a new culvert and tide gate. Second, the breach of an existing agricultural berm along Ryan Slough, a tributary to Humboldt Bay, was posing a threat to farmland. The landowner was authorized to repair the breach by placing rock and soil in the location of the berm that had washed away. And finally, winter storms resulting in rising lagoon levels in the Lake Earl, Lake Talawa Lagoon Complex in Del Norte County was posing a flooding risk to infrastructure. The emergency permit authorized a one-time mechanical breach of the sandbar between the lagoon complex and the Pacific Ocean to alleviate lagoon levels. Other than the one letter received regarding the fiber optic line, staff is not aware of any controversy related to these items, and we are asking whether three or more Commissioners object. Staff is available for questions.
Great. Are there any members of the public signed to speak on this item?
No.
Okay, bringing it back to the Commission. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, do three or more Commissioners object to the staff recommendation? Seeing none, Commission concurs. So with that, we will move on to our next item, which...
Yeah, that brings us to 17A.
17A, that's right.
Yep. This is a new appeal in the City of Trinidad. Rebecca Jacobson, a coastal program analyst in our North Coast District, will be giving the presentation.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Item 17A is an appeal of City of Trinidad's approval of a CDP for the continued temporary closure for up to one year of the Axel Lindgren Memorial Trail due to unsafe conditions. Next slide, please. The trail begins atop a steep 160-foot-tall coastal bluff at a vista point south of Edward Street on property owned by the City of Trinidad. The trail is located in a culturally and geologically sensitive area. Next slide, please. As seen here in Slide 3, the 400-foot-long trail descends the bluff and provides access to Old Home Beach, a sandy beach on the north side of Trinidad Bay. The trail features open water views of Trinidad Bay, as shown in this picture taken at the top of the trail in January of this year. Slide 3 also shows trail workers contracted by the city descending the trail. The trail is named in honor of Axel Lindgren, a millennial descendant of the Chirai and longtime caretaker of the Chirai village, which is the southernmost village within the Urok tribe's ancestral territory. The trail follows much of the traditional route used by the Urok people, except for the top of the trail and the bottom 80-foot portion of the trail near the beach. Next slide, please. Slide 4 shows an image of the bottom of the trail taken in September of last year. The trail has been closed since February 2023 through prior CDP actions due to substantial erosion that has washed out the bottom portion of the steep trail, as shown on the picture on the slide. The city approved the subject CDP for the extension of the temporary trail closure for up to one year due to unsafe conditions that require more extensive repairs and permitting than was initially contemplated, and to work with stakeholders to develop and plan additional trail repair options needed to restore vertical access. Next slide, please. The continued erosion has resulted in a 10-to-12-foot vertical drop at the toe of the bluff where the trail meets the shoreline, shown in this picture, taken at Old Home Beach in January of this year. Next slide, please. The appellant's primary contention is that public access is restricted due to the closure of the trail, inconsistent with public access policies of the Coastal Act. Other contentions raised that were not valid grounds for an appeal include assertions that cultural resource policies of the LCP were erroneously applied, and procedural issues were also raised. Next slide. The city's findings acknowledge that the trail closure is temporary. Other public access to the shoreline exists in the area, and material progress has been made in developing solutions to repair and reopen the trail. The extent and scope of the approved development is relatively limited in scale as it consists of temporarily closing a trail that currently does not provide safe access to the beach due to erosion and for which alternatives are currently being evaluated for rerouting the lower eroded portion of the trail in a manner that protects coastal resources. There is a high degree of legal and factual support that the approved project, as conditioned, will continue to maximize public access while protecting sensitive coastal resources consistent with the LCP. Due to the relatively limited extent and scope of the project and the fact that the city's decision does not involve any novel LCP interpretive issues, staff recommends that the city's approval, as conditioned, does not present a substantial issue with respect to the grounds upon which the appeal was filed, and that the Commission decline to take jurisdiction over the CDP application for this project. Next slide, please. Finally, please note that we received four comments since publication of the staff report, including comments from the appellant, which are posted in the correspondence packet on our website. Commenters support the appeal contentions and reiterated concerns over multiple extensions of trail closures for the subject trail and for nearby trails in the City of Trinidad in recent years. The comments also cite local enforcement and procedural matters and assert that the trail closure signs and barriers should be removed pending Commission action on the appeal. However, staff recommends that the appeal raises no substantial issue due to the limited scope of the approved project, the fact that the trail closure is temporary, and evidence is in the local record identifying solutions that are in progress for reopening the trail in an alignment at the lower end that protects coastal resources. The motion for no substantial issue can be found on Page 8 of the staff report. This concludes the staff's presentation, and we're available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there members of the appellant's available to speak on this item?
No.
Are there, I guess, are there representatives from the city to speak on this item?
We have Trevor Parker on Zoom. He is the applicant. Looks like he's the applicant. And then we have Joe Tagliboshi, and he looks like he's from the city.
Okay, so if the applicant wishes to speak, we can give you 30 minutes, but just noting that the appellant isn't present, so.
They both indicated that they're available for questions.
Okay, great. Well, then I'll... Sorry, I'll pull it back to the Commission then to see if there's any questions or comments on this item. Commissioner Wilson.
Yeah, just a quick question for city staff that is on the line. There's just a comment from one of the, I guess, from the correspondence that the city manager announced that the Galendino Street Trail would no longer be maintained, and I was just wondering what was that, if you could just refer to that. Respond to that, please.
Let's see, we can get him on. We're not sure this is him. Let's just see. Unknown number, can you unmute yourself? We've asked you to unmute. No answer.
So if there's a representative from the city who'd like to respond to the question that Commissioner Wilson asked, if you can please unmute yourself. The staff's trying to promote you.
I'm Trevor Parker. I'm the city planner, and I'm... I didn't make that statement, and I'm not sure exactly what it refers to, but the Galindo Trail is another trail that is impacting cultural resources, and the Urok tribe and the Chirai ancestral society have requested that it be closed. And the city is, we are working on a plan for that, and we've been working closely with our local coastal commission staff, but the trail does remain open today.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then, just wondering, so you can still walk down to that beach either from walking around down to the harbor or in the other direction, that old road that kind of goes on the south side of town there? Is that right?
Yeah, so the Parker Creek Trail accesses the other end of the eastern end of Old Home Beach, and that can be accessed from behind Murphy's Markets, the Old Wagon Road on Wagner Street, and then Groth Lane off Scenic Drive, all come together to access Old Home Beach from the Parker Creek Trail.
Okay, I appreciate the update on that. I thought, I like the description of it being a sandy beach. It's not the most sandy beach I've ever been to, but I'm happy to make a motion to move this forward. I most move that the Commission determine the appeal number A-1-TRN-24-0035 raises no substantial issue with respect to the grounds on which the appeal has been filed under Section 3063, excuse me, 30603, and I recommend a yes vote.
Second.
And I just want to say that this is not an easy place to have trails for various reasons, although everyone's trying as best we can to create that access wherever is possible. But geologically speaking, you can see from those photos, it moves around all over the place. And from a cultural resource perspective, there's also a lot of challenges in those spaces too. So, but I think the city, for all the reasons, is trying real hard to do what it can, and I know our staff is also, so. Thank you.
Chair, if I may just...
Go ahead.
I totally concur, and I was just actually there recently looking out on this, on the broken trail. And so I'm excited that folks are working to repair in the most appropriate manner. And for the rest of California, this area, this particular spot, is one of the greatest gift from the heavens for our state. It's just so beautiful. So I really encourage everyone to come up and visit that spot of Trinidad. You won't regret it. Thanks.
One more thing. I think the appellant's, from my perspective, are... Their heart is in the right place in that they really are advocating for access. There may be disagreements on sort of the strategy around the challenges that we face in this location, but I don't want them to ever stop advocating for access because it's not just here. The folks that are advocating here advocate in other places too and are pushing us to open up access and have access remain open. So where we can agree, I'm grateful, and where we can't, I'm hoping that, you know, we can find some resolution. Thanks.
Commissioner Nada.
I just had a question. I too wanted to, really, I'm sorry that the public has to bring an appeal on something like this to get it in front of us. And I just was wondering, I acknowledge that this is a difficult place geographically, but what is the recourse if this one-year extension and the trail hasn't been opened within a year? Is there... What happens then?
I'm not sure. I think we'll have to see kind of how they try to work through the issues and what the, you know, what the, if there are continuing challenges, what those continue to be. I mean, I think it's a, I mean, even when I was district director of the North Coast several years ago, I went to this trail. This was an issue then. This is a longstanding challenge in this area. And so what I have, I just, I think where I feel the most positive I have in several years is the fact that everybody seems to be working together to find a solution, to bring access and protect resources and make it safe. And so everybody's sort of finally working kind of towards the same goal, and so I have some hope that there is a solution. I mean, I do think we heard also there is another way to get down to that beach, and there, I believe it was a subject of a violation case, actually, that the Commission brought years ago. So there are other options, and for some reason, this continues to be difficult for, to get down to the beach. And we'll just continue to work with the city and work with the Chirai ancestral society to try to work through those problems as they come up. So I don't have a great answer for you, Commissioner Nada, but, you know, it does seem like we find... We do have people all moving in this, you know, kind of with the same goal moving forward, and I'm really grateful for that.
And it sounds like we have a reasonable expectation that we'll be able to resolve this.
I think so.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, good luck on continuing to try to get this access point open, and I just want to, you know, thank everybody for their concern and for their desire to provide access. So with that, we have a motion by Commissioner Wilson to find no substantial issue and recommending a yes vote. Second about Escalante, I'll turn it to Ms... To Vanessa's, please. Call the role, Ms. Miller.
Commissioner Nada.
Aye.
Nada, yes. Commissioner Turnbull Sanders?
Yes.
Turnbull Sanders, yes. Commissioner Uranga?
Aye.
Uranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner Bajko?
Yes.
Bajko, yes. Commissioner Escalante?
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Hart, yes. Commissioner Lowenberg? Lowenberg, yes. Chair Cummings?
Aye.
Cummings, yes. The vote is unanimous.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, we will move on to our next item, which I believe is item number 18A, application number 1-22-0260. Alexandra Derry, Del Norte County. And with that, I'll turn it to staff for the presentation on this item.
And Tamara Geddes, as supervisor in our North Coast District Office, will be giving that presentation.
Right. Thank you, and good afternoon, Commissioners. Item 18A is a proposal by Alexandra Derry to install and operate water diversion infrastructure within and adjacent to the Smith River to seasonally irrigate approximately 355 acres of prime agricultural land in Del Norte County. We want to note that we've received one public comment letter that is available in the correspondence section of item 18A on the website, and we have also prepared an addendum that is available on the website responding to public comments and to feedback from representatives of the Talawadini Nation after publication of the staff report. Next slide, please. Slide 2 shows the location of the project site located approximately 13 miles north of Crescent City. The project site is situated on prime agricultural lands within the Smith River Plug Plain, 3.8 river miles upstream from its outlet at the Pacific Ocean. The project site was previously part of a larger 1,600-acre ranch, formerly referred to as Reservation Ranch, and now referred to as Smith River Ranch under the new management of the applicant, who operates an organic pasture-based dairy. Next slide, please. The project has two main components: installing new fish-friendly water diversion infrastructure to replace prior unpermitted infrastructure removed in 2021, and installing underground conveyance piping that will connect to an existing water irrigation system landward of levees. The proposed project aims to rely on a riparian water right that was established in 1969 and has been affirmed by the State Water Resources Control Board to provide a necessary water supply to support ongoing agricultural operations to irrigate predominantly prime agricultural land during the dry season and growing season period of May through September. Next slide, please. The primary Coastal Act issues raised by this application involve archaeological and cultural resources, impacts to farmed wetlands, and water withdrawal from the Smith River to support a necessary water supply for agricultural operations that have been in continuous operation for many decades. Slide 4 shows a map provided by Talawadini Nation depicting the Deni homelands and the location of the project site, which is situated within the Aboriginal territory of the Talawa people. The Smith River basin has been a significant ancestral homeland to the Talawa people since time immemorial. Next slide, please. In 1862, the Secretary of the Interior reserved much of the Smith River Plain, including the subject property for the Smith River Indian Reservation, where Benny Talawadini... where Benny Talawatani were forced to remain during a period of desecration and genocide in, on Native American lands. Slide five shows an excerpt of a story map with a historic map and rendering of reservation lands. Today, the Talawa People are represented by various tribal entities, including among others, the federally recognized Talawatani Nation and Elk Valley Rancheria, all who care deeply about the natural resources on the subject property and surrounding area and rely on the Smith River and surrounding lands for subsistence and their cultural way of life. Commission staff have coordinated with representatives from Talawatani Nation and other Native American groups and their feedback and recommendations on appropriate cultural resources protection measures are incorporated into special condition six, which requires submittal and implementation of a final tribal and cultural resources monitoring plan with various requirements to protect cultural resources. Next slide, please. As mentioned, the project will provide a necessary water supply to irrigate prime agricultural lands during the dry season by relying on an affirmed water right established in 1969. Although the property is a farmed wetland, during the dry season, the upper soil layers dry out completely and application of water is necessary to support the continued growth of pasture grasses and crops. Next slide, please. The amount of water proposed for extraction is significantly less than the amount that historically was extracted over the past 50 years before the old pumping system that used to be located at this site was removed in 2021 under the direction of National Marine Fisheries Services in coordination with commission enforcement staff. The old system was not a fish friendly design and had not obtained proper authorization when it was replaced in 1973 without the benefit of a CDP. Slide seven shows a photo of the prior diversion infrastructure that was removed in 2021. Mitigation and penalties for this unpermitted pumping were addressed as part of the Reservation Ranch Consent Agreement case that the commission approved in 2022 and nothing in the consent agreement present, prevented the applicant from continuing to pursue the subject CDP application for a new fish friendly diversion design on the Smith River at this location that retrofits the one that was removed in 2021. This CDP application had already been submitted at the time of the signing of the consent agreement in 2022 and commission action on this CDP application will not affect or alter the requirements and enforceability of the consent agreement. Next slide, please. To protect fish and aquatic life, the proposed new water diversion system will meet current standards and regulations set by California Department of Fish and Wildlife and NIMPs related to volume and timing of water withdrawal, screen size, screen mesh size, design features to control approach, velocity, pump speed, maintenance requirements and other factors. Both agencies have been closely consulted with on the design and both have issued permits and or letters of concurrence for the proposed diversion system, concluding that the revised project design is not expected to result in a measurable decrease in salinity, water quality, water velocity, or water depth below the diversion point. Both agencies noted that the proposed diversion represents less than 2% of the Smith River flow during the lowest flows of the year and that any effects to critical salmonid habitat were expected to be insignificant because the project related disturbance to rearing habitats and migration corridors is temporary and spatially very small. Next slide, please. Slide nine shows in dark blue the route of the water conveyance line from the diversion point to the existing underground irrigation system, which is shown in red. To connect the water diversion to the existing underground irrigation system, the applicant plans to excavate or trench a narrow strip of farmland for approximately 4,500 feet. All areas of disturbance will occur in managed farmland that has been subjected to past and repeated disturbance over many decades, including livestock grazing, planting, tilling, aerating, and in some cases, deep ripping of soil for farming practices. The installation of the irrigation line will occur during the dry season when the area is dry and the vegetation is expected to recover quickly after backfilling the trench within significantly less than a year's time. This area will continue to be farmed in the future, so it does not represent a conversion of agricultural land to non agricultural uses. Representatives of the Talawatani Nation raise a concern regarding export of water off the property. To address this concern and ensure that the water supply diverted from the river is only used to support agricultural operations on the subject property, staff recommends special conditions five B and thirteen. These conditions restrict water use to only the subject property and require submittal of final plans for the water conveyance system that demonstrate adequate physical controls will be included in repairs to the existing pipeline system to ensure the use of diverted water is restricted to the subject property. Next slide, please. The commission's ecologist identified the trenching area as a coastal wetland and the commission typically views wetland impacts with significant ground disturbance as permanent impacts under the coastal act. As you can see from this photo in slide 10, which was taken in November of 2023, just past the end of the dry season, these farmed wetlands are highly modified from original conditions and sometimes referred to as seasonal wetlands because they naturally dry out during the summer months and the application of irrigation water is necessary for pasturing and crop cultivation. Alternatives to the trenching method were evaluated and based on information provided by the applicant, there were no feasibly less environmentally damaging alternatives identified for pipeline installation. Installing a pressurized water line above ground is not compatible with or feasible with the farming operations on this farm. The footprint of trenching is restricted to areas previously disturbed by farming, including, as mentioned, significant ground disturbance from farming activities such as ripping of soil, planting of crops and cattle grazing. However, because these areas do have habitat value for wetlands and have the potential to contain sensitive cultural resources, several mitigation measures are recommended under special conditions six through 10. These include measures to protect nesting birds, sensitive amphibians, soil productivity, water quality and cultural resources. Next slide, please. To mitigate for trenching impacts to wetlands, the applicant proposes to enhance 4,500 square feet of riparian area around and adjacent to the project site, including the levee and a portion of the riparian corridor. As proposed by the applicant, the area will be planted with a mix of locally occurring riparian overstory trees. This riparian enhancement will aid in the control of polluted runoff, prevent soil erosion, improve water quality, provide foraging and nesting habitat for birds and contribute to the food web for fish and wildlife species of the Smith River. To ensure that the applicant implements riparian enhancement as proposed, staff recommends special condition eight, requiring the applicant to submit a final devised enhancement plan that adds provisions for removing invasive species in the enhancement area, specifying maintenance and monitoring procedures and success criteria and provisions for permanently excluding livestock access to the riparian mitigation area. Next slide, please. As noted earlier, staff has prepared an addendum to address corrections to the staff report and to make changes to the recommended findings and conditions in response to comments received from a member of the public and Talawatani Nation representatives. One of the comments suggests that the restoration plan required by the consent agreement should be approved and implemented prior to authorizing new development under the CDP. However, permit streamlining act deadlines require commission action on the CDP prior to March 5th and as mentioned, nothing in the consent agreement prevented the applicant from continuing to pursue the subject CDP application. Other comments are addressed in the addendum and in updates to the findings and conditions and we're happy to go into further detail if the commission has questions. Next slide, please. With that, we recommend that the commission upon completion of the public hearing approve the coastal development permit with the special conditions and findings included in the staff recommendation of January 24th and as modified by the changes recommended in the February 4th addendum. The motion for the permit action can be found on page six of the staff report and this concludes the staff presentation and commission staff are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for that comprehensive presentation on this item. So how many members of the public do we have online or in person to speak to us on this item?
We have seven speakers signed up.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open up public comment and we'll start with the first speaker. Are there any speakers here in person?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we do expertise first?
Oh, my, my apologies. Are there any expertises on this item? Okay, looks like there's none.
Okay. We have the applicants, Chris Howard and Blake Alexander in person.
How much time will you need?
I think if we reserve five minutes for both Mr. Alexander and myself, on behalf of the applicant, that would be wonderful with two minutes of opening comments. If, if the chair pleases.
Okay, so let me get this straight. So.
So five minutes, I think is adequate and two minutes for opening statements. And if we need additional time for rebuttal, that three minutes can be spent on that rebuttal.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we, we've worked a lot.
Well, sorry about that. So we'll set the clock at seven minutes to begin and then you all will be in charge of partition that time between the two of you. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. This property has had a long history. A lot of it occurred long before colonization. And in 1857, the Darby family settled this area through Swamp and Overflow Act. And that Swamp and Overflow Act designated in a section of this area which they named Reservation Ranch. It was during a period of time where lands were coalesced under the Swamp and Overflow Act. And in about the early 1900s, members of the Westbrook family culminated those lands in what is known as Reservation Ranch property today, which the commission acted on here years ago. During those actions within the restoration plan, we, the Alexanders and previous owners of the ranch, Stephen Westbrook and Bobby Westbrook, agreed to decommission much of the irrigation system for the ranch, including pulling the pumps out until it slew. In order to retain a lot of that irrigation potential for this ranch on these prime agricultural lands, we need that riparian right back. And that's what we're asking for here today is to allow us to reinvigorate this riparian right and withdraw 3,000 gallons per minute to irrigate the 355 acres as exhibited in the staff report. We think it's a very worthwhile plan and for what essentially remains of the last of the dairy operations here in Del Norte County. We'll hold our.
So if we can pause their time. And then we'll, at this time, open up to the public for public comment on this item.
Okay, we have a couple of people signed up that are representing the Talawatani Nation.
Okay.
We'll start with Rachel McCain and then we aren't seeing Monica Heiner. Monica, if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. Rachel McCain, I see that you're in as a panelist now. You should be able to unmute and begin.
And we'll give everybody online two minutes.
Rachel, I see that you're unmuted.
All right, thank you. My name is Rachel McCain. I'm the.
Hold on, we can't hear you at all.
We can barely hear you. Are you able to speak closer to the mic?
It's not better.
Not better?
Sounds very distant still.
Let's try that. How's that? This is as good as it's gonna get. My office here.
We, we unfortunately can't hear you.
Okay.
Maybe if you could try calling in a different method.
Yes.
If you're on a computer, maybe we can give you the phone number so you can just call in directly.
Yeah, I can just switch to myself. You can come back to me.
Or, yeah. And then Monica Heiner, if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. And other than that, we have three more speakers. One is in, in the room and control, if you want to. And then Josefina Barantes and Nancy Ihara. Josefina Barantes, we also don't see you in Zoom. If you would, raise your hand. Okay. We'll give a second for Ann Control.
And then if we can set the clock to 10 minutes, please.
Good afternoon, commissioners Ann Cantrell, Sierra Club Lo Ceritos Wetland, South Forest. We oppose this project, which will divert 3,000 gallons of water a minute from the Smith River to water 355 acres of grazing land for a dairy. Trenching a seasonal wetland for irrigation would disrupt sensitive habitat, alter native species and extract massive amounts of water without sufficient study of long term effects. This is not, quote, temporary wetland disturbance, unquote, as the pumps will be shut down and back up two times a year, causing disturbance to wildlife, especially breeding birds in May. The Smith River receives 78 inches of rain a year. We suggest that this farmer capture and store rainwater on his property to water his fields. Please read the correspondence that you received. We agree with Kenny Elias that this project needs more steady and more environmentally friendly alternative. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Josefina Barantes. I believe you're signed in as Power and Nutrition Coalition. If that is you, please unmute and begin.
Hello. Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Josefina Barantes and I'm the Del Norte County Advocate for the Environmental Protection Information Center, also known as EPUC up here on the North Coast. I'm here to speak in regards to the staff recommendation for approval of the coastal development permit for Alexander Dairy. Trenching a wetland to support cattle grazing in the wetland would be ecologically harmful to the natural and cultural features of the Smith River Plain. The proposed water diversion and wetland trenching for the irrigation pipes has potential significant impacts on the Smith River and its features and species. The project fails to mitigate and analyze the loss of 3,000 gallons of water being diverted from the river per minute. Trenching a wetland, a coastal wetland, and extracting water from the Smith River requires a thorough analysis with baseline surveys for all potentially affected species, including Yulacan smelt. Moving forward without this critical step exposes the project to severe environmental risks. Diverting water from the wild and scenic Smith River would impair the beneficial uses and outstanding remarkable values it is known for. With these points in mind, we hope that you reconsider recommending this CDP for approval. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And then next is Nancy Ihara. Nancy, give us a second as we're promoting you as a panelist. Or Nancy, if you're able to unmute now. Okay, I'm not seeing any movement. So we'll wait a second for Rachel McCain. I believe they're being sent the link. And there were no other speakers, so we're, we're just waiting on that one.
So just wait on Rachel McCain.
Oh, yeah, we're, we're still waiting. Okay, oh, Rachel McCain just popped in.
Thank you. Sorry about that. How's that?
Oh, yes, it sounds much better.
Okay. Hello, commissioners. My name is Rachel McCain. I'm the Natural Resource Department Director for the Talawatani Nation. These comments are submitted on behalf of the nation's Natural Resources Department. Further correspondence may be submitted as part of our ongoing government to government formal consultation procedures. The nation's Natural Resources Department recommends a denial of coastal development permit number one two two zero two six zero submitted by Alexander Dairy. This permit seeks at its heart to legitimize an illegal diversion structure installed by the previous landowner. This diversion is necessitated by the existence of an also illegally built levee along the Smith River. along the Smith River to prevent natural seasonal flooding. The project area is within the original Talawa reservation and contains significant cultural resources. These resources will be irreversibly impacted and disturbed during proposed development, and these impacts cannot be fully mitigated. It is the responsibility of the California Coastal Commission to prevent such impacts to these sensitive resources. The project area in question is a documented wetland, as stated by both contract biologists and commission staff. As such, permitting the proposed trenching activity, which will knowingly cause extensive damage to these wetlands, violates the mandated protections set forth in Section 30121 of the Coastal Act. Deep trenching through nearly a mile of wetland soils is not a requirement to maintain this parcel's agricultural designation or its production. These concerns were raised with commission staff at various levels throughout the permit review process and as part of our commitment to working together on the Reservation Ranch Restoration Plan requirements set out by the enforcement action brought forth in July 2022. These violations have not yet been addressed, and it is inappropriate to issue a permit for further development before the extensive environmental degradation documented in the consent agreement is returned. Thank you.
Thank you. And we aren't seeing any of the other speakers.
Okay, I guess I'll bring it back to the applicants to see if you have any final comments, since you deferred some of your time.
My name is Blake Alexander, and I would be the dairy farmer.
If you can pull the mic up a little bit further.
A little higher?
Yeah, there we go.
Sure. Well, thank you for being here. Thank you for listening to our situation. And I would invite you to come see our farm anytime. It's-- I think we've heard a little bit misrepresented today in terms of the sweatlands that we're going to dig across. It's right now, you would recognize it as a field. It's been a pastured field for at least five decades. Oh, there we are. So five decades at least of, you know, tilling and farming. We're-- we are a regenerative, certified regenerative and organic farm. We don't really till anymore. We don't do that type of stuff. But I can assure you that, you know, as we put this trench in and bury the water pipe, it's probably the best solution for the situation. And the grasses will reestablish on top. We will plant them. And in addition to that, we're going to mitigate and do some work out on the levee, the space between the levee and the river. And so we have nothing but good intentions. And in terms of bird count, we've managed land across the river for 32, almost 33 years. We have 240-some species of birds that nest and use our ranch. And so, you know, we're here to do the right thing environmentally. And I just ask that you go with the staff's recommendation. We thank you to Amra and the crew up there for all the work they've done. They've heard all these issues before and have worked through them, and they're recommending a yes. And that's what we're here to ask for as well. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll close public comment. You can take a seat, and I'll turn it back to staff for any comments on what was mentioned during public comment.
Yeah, just a little overarching comment. I think for the most, for everything that we've heard, we had a very detailed staff report, a very detailed addendum, and a very detailed presentation. And really, everything's covered in there, but I would like to just kind of walk you through our thought process of how we got to this recommendation. Our ecologist at the time of the application reviewed this project early on and determined that, you know, the trenching would occur in a wetland. It is also the location of a pre-coastal agricultural operation, and that is why the staff report refers to this area--
Can I pause for one sec? It sounds like the volume just went down. Okay. Thanks.
Can you hear me now?
Guess we can.
Okay. And that is why the staff report refers to this area as a farmed wetland. Now, farmed wetlands in our North Coast areas raise some really interesting issues because they are both highly prioritized under the Coastal Act. So staff did not take this recommendation lightly. We really relied on the circumstances of this particular case, specifically that the site is within the bounds of a historic ag operation, is actively maintained with pasture grass. And the commission has recognized that ag as an opportunity for this area in the certified Del Norte County LCP. The State Water Resources Control Board has reviewed the water rights for this operation and recognizes a riparian water right for these parcels that are the subject of today's hearing. And the amount of water proposed for extraction was specifically calculated for use on these parcels for pasture grass growth during the dry season only. And this amount is substantially lower than historically extracted. And finally, that the pipeline corridor will occur in this existing managed farmland area that we talked about in the presentation. So I think I'd like to leave it at that, and then the balance of our response could be in response to any questions you have, so we can address your concerns better.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, I'll bring it back to the commission for comments, questions, and action. And so I'll start with Commissioner Escalante.
Thank you, Chair, and I have a question for Mr. Alexander, just because it was brought up. I know I'm your friendly neighbor, neighborhood commissioner there down in Crescent City, so I'm very familiar with the property. And for those Californians listening, the mouth of the Smith River is the most beautiful spot of the entire California coast. So absolutely gorgeous, sorry. So obviously, it's a very sensitive area, especially because of all the architectural issues involved as well and the tribe's priorities. So I am keen to listen to this carefully. When they were mentioning recycling water, just from my information, does a farm sort of do any capture, rainwater capture, any of that? I mean, obviously, I mean, I figure that, you know, the operation can't possibly supply you with everything that you need, but do you guys use some of that?
Not-- We have plans and intentions to develop a lot of water, holding ponds, if you will, and rebuilding wetlands, you know, to the neighborhood, like 25 acres in one spot and a few others. And that's, it's not on this 355 acres. It's the land next to it, you know, the rest of the ranch going north. So the answer is yes, in a way. This flatland down here where, you know, we couldn't capture water that I'm aware of because, you know, it's a little bit uplands. It's not really draining through or passing through. We believe we are capturing as much water as we possibly can. We measure that by infiltration and how long it takes an inch of water to soak into the ground. At our ranch that we've been regenerative on for 30 years, that water goes in in about 20 seconds. And on this land, when we took over here three years ago, after 30 minutes waiting for the water to go in, we quit timing it. It was very poorly managed before. And so most of the water that is stored on a ranch needs to be in the soil. And we do that two ways, by having healthy soil with healthy aggregation, and then building topsoil, organic matter, carbon within the soil. It's like a sponge, and for every percent of organic matter that we can improve into the soil in the top, it holds an extra 20,000 gallons per acre. We have improved our land across the river by about 12%. So we're holding 250,000 gallons of water per acre that we never used to hold 40 years ago, say. We have that same intention for this ranch, but we need some water to prime the pump to keep things rolling literally during the dry season so that we can keep the right population of plant species. We don't want drought tolerant grasses. We need other herbs and forbs that are tap rooted and deep rooted to help condition and create the soil health that we need.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that explanation. Thank you, thank you. That was it for my questions.
Any other questions? Commissioner Wilson?
I guess while you're there, I've got a couple of questions for you too.
Sure.
So going to what you're talking about drought tolerant species, and so if this was, if you weren't able to move forward with this project, then how would that substantially change the, what you would do in terms of crop alternatives for the area that you're looking to--
Yeah, the changes are very subtle. It's hard to really see them all in one year. It happens slowly over time. We would, you know, maybe have a right to develop more water through groundwater extraction or something like that, but this particular plan seemed like the most logical. You know, I just want to point out, this is 2% of the water that's going down the Smith River during the driest point. And it's just literally a mile from the saltwater wedge. And so this freshwater is lost to saltwater just, you know, within hours. And so I don't see where that is, should be a huge concern. You know, it doesn't make sense to me.
That's okay. That's not what I was asking you, but I appreciate that. So what I was just wondering is, you know, if you're-- So what you're saying is alternatively, you might consider groundwater sources for irrigation if this, if the surface water diversion isn't approved?
Yes, that is what I said.
Okay. This, I'm looking to-- I think my next questions are for staff, so I think you're good for now. So there was a mention of smelt as a species. One of the issues I have here is that, in terms of some of the questions that were being asked, is like this level of significance of impact as determined by our resource agency partners. And so what I'm not hearing is significant levels of impact being enumerated by the, by our, you know, by our Natural Resource Agency partners. But it seems like smelt was an issue that, or a species of significant concern, and can our staff speak to the protection of that species from how this project's being proposed?
I'm going to turn that over to Tamara.
Thanks, Shanna. Yeah, I can say that our staff did coordinate very closely with our other resource agency partners, including National Marine Fisheries Service and California Department of Fish and Wildlife in our review of this project. NIMPs did make a determination through a letter of concurrence on the Corps of Engineers' evaluation of the project that this project was not likely to adversely affect any critical habitat for any listed species. And we did specifically ask about smelt because we recognize that that is, you know, a particularly unique species, especially rare. And, you know, NIMPs indicated that in part due to the timing of when this is going to be operational, it would not align with the same timing when smelt would be in the area. And if, for some reason, there happened to be some that were still around this time of the year, the screen size design that has been approved by NIMPs, you know, this project really did come about through their very close coordination with the applicant initially to ensure that the design was more appropriate for various species throughout the river system. And so they were not concerned at any risk of affecting species, including the smelt in this area.
Okay, and then in light of the questions around the impacts to wetlands from trenching, is it, my understanding that the analysis says that this is, that these impacts would be temporal, that there would be reasonably fast recovery of those spaces? I mean, we're just, we're talking about a trench through these areas that would be getting filled back in and seeded. Is there any long-term impacts that we have, like through compaction or anything else that we would anticipate? It's a question for staff.
I can go ahead and answer. Sorry, Shanna. I'll take a start and then feel free to answer any further. You know, as we mentioned in our presentation and in our staff report, these lands have been very actively tilled and managed over time. We do have requirements under our conditions to submit a revised enhancement plan that not only addresses some of the riparian enhancement that the applicant is proposing nearby, but that also addresses the treatment of the pasture areas after the trenching has occurred to ensure that they do readily reestablish with the same pasture grass composition that exists currently. So it's our understanding that there is no concern over anticipated future compaction impacts. And it's in the applicant's best interest too, because these are actively managed farmed lands to maintain them in productivity for that purpose.
And, sorry, just jumping around, the pumping, the season for pumping, there's a limit to that. Can you kind of put some brackets on that, when that would or would not occur? What are the parameters for when pumping would occur?
Yeah, the applicant has requested, and the permit is conditioned to limit the pumping season to the time period of May through September. And that's to align with the time of year when the soils start drying out in that upper soil layer.
Okay, but it's not-- Is there, and maybe this is a question for the applicant. Is there a time, I mean, you don't expect to be pumping 24 hours a day from May to September. What is that, what do you, what is that, what's a reasonable expectation for that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thanks, Tamara. Yeah, generally, no, we don't expect to be pumping 24 hours a day. Correct.
But is it, is this a daily activity, or do you--
Yeah. It's hard to know. As I was explaining earlier, as the soil improves and gets better, we need less and less water. And so, you know, in the beginning here, we normally would irrigate five or six days a week. I don't know that we'll do six or seven. I really don't know at this point. Most likely, we will. If it's a particularly dry year, then that would certainly lean towards that. The pump is designed to turn off and blast air and clean off, you know, any debris that might get sucked around it or it's really not supposed to do any sucking, but it could happen.
Okay. Just, and now I'm back to staff again. And this is sort of the last part of my questioning, which is around the addendum edits that were made associated with the consultation with the Talawa Dene in response to their concerns around archaeological or cultural resources. Can you just outline what those changes were one more time?
Tamara or Shanna?
Sure, I'll go ahead and start, and yeah, feel free to chime in. The primary issues were, some of them were corrections to the findings in the staff report to more accurately represent the Talawa people and their ancestral uses of the land. The conditions, we added some additional language around the timing of cadaver dog surveys and to specify that the Talawa Dene Tipo or Cultural Monitor shall be notified at least 30 days in advance of the surveying of the cadaver dogs on the site and also include the Talawa Tipo or Cultural Monitor during that survey. So that was the primary change to the conditions of the report associated with their comments. And we did also talk during our consultation with them about some of their environmental justice concerns over the water use. So this has been an area of subsistence farming for the Talawa people and, you know, part of their cultural way of life. And so we did add some environmental justice findings to acknowledge that use over time. It's staff's belief that the less than 2% withdrawal a year does not disproportionately adversely affect their use of the water in this area. But we did address that in the addendum as well.
And there was reference to levees and the legality of the levees. Now, I know it doesn't seem like-- And there was reference to levees and the legality of the levees. Now, I know it doesn't seem like there's levees directly adjacent to the farmland that's being proposed to be irrigated, but was there any discussion around sort of the long-term use of and/or retention of the levee structures?
There was not a specific discussion about the long-term use of the levee adjacent to this property. Um, it's our understanding that the levee at this location is a pre-coastal act levee, um, and so it's, it's not, um, you know, we're aware that there are other levees in the, in the general vicinity off of this property that were addressed through the consent agreement, um, and this is not one of those levees.
Okay. That's it for my questions for now, but if there, I mean, I, my comments to this are, I think our staff did everything they could to move this to align with our responsibilities around the coastal act. I align myself very strongly with the intentions of the, of, of the tribe in, in this area, in that, and especially when we talked about the restoration work that we talked about a couple of years ago, in sort of moving back towards the, the ecological and, um, just cultural productivity of the estuarine system in general, uh, as a, you know, for that, for the future. And, uh, I, I just really, I've just believe very strongly that, that they're right in, in those spaces. The problem I have is, I don't have coastal act language that significantly moves me away from, you know, uh, seeking denial or moves me towards, you know, where I feel like I would be comfortable denying this project because I don't really have, I don't know what the, I, I don't know what the, um, the revised findings would really say in that regard, to be, to be frank. Um, I do encourage our staff and the tribe and the, and the dairy, uh, and, and, and the farming community within that, uh, in that area to continue to move, to work together as best we can. But there are some longstanding and legitimate conflict and, uh, issues, uh, that are not going to be addressed today, that just, we're not going to get all the way through. Um, that being said, I, I will support this moving, uh, in as much as, um, as I feel like it's as far as we can take it today. So that's all.
All right. Any other questions, Escalante?
I'll just align myself entirely with Commissioner Wilson's comments. Thank you.
All right. Seeing other questions or comments from commissioners, I'll just say that I, I align myself with Commissioner Wilson and Commissioner Escalante and their comments that were made today. Um, you know, I've, I struggle with, you know, how we, um, can get, you know, ancestral indigenous lands back to indigenous peoples. Um, but that being said, you know, given the ownership of these lands and the, the historic activities on these lands and the analyses that were conducted by our staff to try to really minimize and mitigate the environmental impacts, I do feel like this is a reasonable way forward. Um, you know, of very, you know, 2% of the total amount of water that's going out. I think the one concern I do have is like during times of drought, how that might be addressed. Um, I mean, it's going to have impacts on a lot of variety of things and could lead to impacts on not only the farming, but also on biological species. So I think that that's something that we should keep an eye on. Um, but when you have a space that's been farmed and we've had grazing for very long periods of time, if you're trenching and replacing that soil, um, and allowing those activities to continue, and it's not like this, this environment has been restored and now you're going backwards to a practice, it, it just seems like a reasonable way forward. And so I agree with the conditions, um, that were brought forward to us, and I agree, um, to the extent that the farmers, the tribes, the commission, the local government can work together, um, moving forward to make sure that's having the least amount of impact on cultural and environmental resources as possible seems like a reasonable path forward. And so that concludes my comments. And, um, Commissioner Wilson, if you want to move forward with the motion, we can continue moving forward.
I will do that. I, I move that the commission approve, unless there's, uh, approve coastal development permit number 1-22-0260 pursuant to the staff recommendation, and I reluctantly recommend a yes vote.
We have a motion by Commissioner Wilson, second by Commissioner Lowenberg. Um, if there's no further discussion, I'll ask Ms. Miller to please call the roll vote, roll call, and, uh, the commissioners asking for, or the right, motion makers asking for a yes vote.
Commissioner Turnbull Sanders?
Yes.
Turnbull Sanders, yes. Commissioner Uranga?
Aye.
Uranga, yes. Commissioner Bajko? Bajko, yes. Commissioner Escalante?
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Hart?
Yes, and I didn't want to intervene, interrupt, but I wanted to align myself with the comments that were made by the three commissioners who spoke on this item, but my vote is yes. Thank you.
Hart, yes. Commissioner Lowenberg?
Yes.
Lowenberg, yes. Commissioner Nadoff?
Aye.
Nadoff, yes. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Chair Cummings?
Yes.
Cummings, yes. The vote is unanimous.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, we'll move on. I think we have two more items, the first of which is item number 19, San Diego Coast District Deputy Director's Report. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Schlang.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. Um, so with the deputy director's report, we are, I'll begin with, uh, three emergency actions covering bluff stabilization measures in Solana Beach, a lagoon breaching in Oceanside, and construction of a temporary fire station in Encinitas. Uh, next, we're reporting National City's adoption of the commission's suggested modifications related to their LCP amendment for their balanced plan, and, uh, the city of San Diego's adoption of modifications for their 2022 land development code update. The executive directors determined that, uh, those actions are legally adequate to complete the certification process for those two items. And, uh, last, we're reporting two waivers for projects in Solana Beach and San Diego, one immaterial amendment for a project in Encinitas, and one extension for a project in Solana Beach. And we haven't had any comments in opposition to any of those items, so we're asking whether three or more commissioners object to the waivers, uh, extension, or the amendment in the report.
Great, thank you. Okay, do any members of the public here who would like to speak to us on this item?
Uh, no, we only have available for questions.
Okay. And so are there three or more commissioners who object to the staff's recommendation of staff's findings? Saying none, uh, that means the commission concurs. And so before we move on to our last item, which is item number 21A, oh, sorry, 21B, we're going to take just a 10-minute break, just so that, because we, we're going to have quorum issues, and if we, this item takes time, I want to give everybody an opportunity to just use the bathroom real quick. Okay, so we'll take a 10-minute break, so we'll come back at 2:45. All right. Thank you all, um, for your patience. With that, we'll, we're going to move on to our last item, and I just want to remind commissioners, we just lost Commissioner Bajko, which means we are at quorum. So if, if anybody leaves, we're going to lose quorum, so we need everybody to stay here as we try to work our way through this last item. So this is item number 21A coastal permit applications, application number 6-24-0806 Armed Services YMCA in San Diego Unified Port District, Big Bay Boom Fireworks, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Schlang to lead us off on the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings, I mean, Chair Cummings. Um, we do have a staff presentation on this matter, if we could bring that up. And Alex Yarandi with our San Diego Coast District Office is going to do the staff presentation on that matter. So please go ahead.
Good day, commissioners. Item 21B is an application by the Port of San Diego and YM, Armed Services YMCA to conduct the 2025 and 2026 iteration of the Big Bay Boom Independence Day Firework Show on 4th of July of each year. The commission's water quality ecology staff have analyzed the primary ways in which fireworks can adversely impact coastal resources such as sensitive species and water quality, and work with the port and YMCA to develop conditions requiring best management practices to lessen those impacts and gather the necessary information to further refine the show or identify alternate performances for future years. Thus, staff is recommending that the commission approve the 2025 and 2026 shows as conditioned. Slide two, please. The Big Bay Boom is the largest firework event held in San Diego Bay, held the night of the 4th of July and utilizing more fireworks than all of the port's other annual firework shows combined. For safety and cleanup purposes, each of the four barges from which the fireworks will be launched will have two support boats, each enforcing a 1,000-foot safety perimeter and to aid in post-show cleanup. Next slide. The fireworks will be launched from four barges located in northern San Diego Bay, so as to maximize visibility along the miles of shoreline that the public uses to view this event. Next slide. The circles around each point show the relative size of the 1,000-foot safety zone around each barge, and the areas along the coast that they'll be located. Next slide. While the proposed event site is located within a mostly urban bay environment, many birds inhabit or utilize the bay due to its location on the Pacific Flyway, fireworks displays have the potential to impact coastal wildlife, particularly birds, including the state and federally listed California leestern, which has two nesting sites for at least one mile from the launch barges. One colony is located at the San Diego International Airport to the north, and one to the southwest with, within the boundaries of Naval Air Station North Island. Since 1970, the leesterns had nested within the airport, as the slide shows, while it has hosted substantial numbers of nests in the past. In the years leading up to 2019, the number of nests has notably decreased, with monitoring conducted by the applicant before and during the 2024 Big Bay Boom also finding small volume of nesting activity. Last year's monitoring also noted that during the Big Bay Boom, the leesterns and fledglings there in the nesting site became agitated and left their nest to run or fly, though generally stayed in the vicinity of the area upon conclusion of the fireworks show. However, monitoring to date has not recorded ambient acoustics or noise levels during the show, which is important determining what impacts may be occurring. Next slide. In addition, debris from a fireworks show can impair water quality as well as harm wildlife that may ingest or become entangled in such debris. Fireworks are designed to ignite in the air following launch, consuming the fireworks material and the ensuing combustion. However, not all materials consumed, and materials such as plastic and aluminum, are likely to persist in the marine environment for lengthy periods if they are not washed ashore or removed by personnel. Next slide. Therefore, commission staff directed the YMCA to look into alternatives to a fireworks show, specifically a drone show, given that such shows have demonstrated lower noise levels and have been successfully implemented in venues across the world. The alternative analysis conducted by the YMCA acknowledges that a drone show would produce considerably less noise than a fireworks display, but argues that the presence of drones could antagonize local birds into attacking the drones as potential threats. The alternative analysis also noted that YMCA has no experience operating a drone show, and concluded it would be infeasible to produce such an event for the 2025 or 2026 Independence Day holidays. Next slide. Thus, commission staff worked with the port to develop conditions that will both limit impacts of fireworks in San Diego Bay and explore options for alternatives in future years. The port has offered a comprehensive approach to the fireworks displays regulated by the port, as proposed to adjust either the size or scale of its annual permitted fireworks to reduce cumulative impacts of fireworks in San Diego Bay. Currently, the port allows up to 47 total fireworks shows utilizing up to 9,056 total pounds of fireworks per year. The port has offered to reduce that weight total by 15%, representing a reduction of about 1,358 pounds in 2025, with an additional 5% reduction for a total of 20% reduction in 2026. Additionally, all reduction will be from fireworks shows launched from coastal waters, as those are more impactful to water quality than shows launched from land. While the port acknowledges that the historic fireworks data for the years 2021 through 2024 show that in no year has anything close to 47 fireworks shows been conducted, with an annual average of 18 shows those years, such a reduction still represents a good faith effort to lessen the impacts of fireworks in San Diego Bay and shift away from regular fireworks shows. Next slide. Furthermore, the port has agreed to fund and conduct an implementation study analyzing the design and performance of a future drone show. However, the port has informed commission staff that due to administrative realities such as budgeting the money for studies of a drone show, and the time that would be required to conduct the environmental review for such a project, such a study will not be completed until early 2026, too late to include as part of its application for the July 2026 event celebrating the country's 250th anniversary. As a result, staff is recommending a two-year permit to cover both the 2025 and 2026 Independence Day events, to allow adequate time for conducting the implementation study that will be a required component of any application for events after July 2026. The aforementioned reduction in allowable fireworks shows during the two years carried by this permit will help initiate that transition away from fireworks that the implementation study is intended to foster, while the permit's conditions will minimize the impacts of the Big Bay Boom events in the interim. Next slide, please. Therefore, special conditions require the applicants to conduct noise monitoring as part of this year's event and provide a post-event report that analyzes impacts on marine and bird life. This information will help inform a view of future projects both in San Diego and elsewhere along the coast. The applicant must also implement a multi-part debris removal plan, with the support boats skimming the water's surface following conclusion of the show. The following day, when there is sunlight, the event crew walked adjacent parks and shoreline to collect debris, whether it's fireworks-related or not. All collected materials bagged, weighed, and photographed to be compared to the pre-launched firework volume and reported to the relevant agencies, such as the regional water board. And if diving conditions are safe, divers would inspect the bottom, the bottom of the bay for debris. Next slide. In conclusion, commission staff has worked with the applicants to achieve the least impactful 4th of July show feasible, that will continue a popular annual event that is free to the public, with conditions addressing sensitive species monitoring, water quality protection measures, and planning for future shows to identify even less impactful designs. For those reasons, staff recommends that the commission approve the development per the staff recommendation. The motion resolution can be found on page six of the staff report, and there is an addendum to the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, I'll call up the applicant, um, to, um, provide a presentation to the commission. How much time will you need?
Commissioner Cummings?
Yeah.
Do you want to ask for ex parte's before we?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. Um, are there any ex parte's on this item? Saying none? Thanks for the reminder. Um, moving forward, we'll open up to applicant. How much time will you need?
Uh, there are two of us speaking. If we could have three each, and I promise we'll finish in less than.
Sounds great.
Okay, thank you. Honorable Chair, members of the commission?
Okay, we pause you real quick. Oh, also, do you have a slide deck or no?
No.
Okay. Um, can we just get the clock up?
Honorable Chair, members of the commission, thank you for the opportunity to speak to today. My name is Lesley Nishihara, representing the Port of San Diego, one of the co-applicants for the CDP application. Today, I'm joined by Joe Stivacent with Armed Services YMCA, the nonprofit organization that puts on the 4th of July Big Bay Boom fireworks event held on San Diego Port tidelands every year. And it's been a long day, and out of respect for your time, we will keep our comments very brief. And after my remarks, Joe will close at our presentation. First, I want to start by saying that we support the staff recommendation and agree to all of the conditions proposed in, in the CDP. We have worked hard to reach this place of concurrence. We are only, we were only aware of one opposition letter submitted by the Los Ritas Sierra Club, and if necessary and appropriate, we respectfully request time after public comment to address any issues that might be raised by that letter if necessary. You should have a copy of more than 80 letters of support that were collected in the last couple of days and sent in after the addendum was published. We are proud to have broad and diverse support, including from local elected officials, for an event that attracts more than 250,000 people to recreate on our tidelands in San Diego Bay for free. Many families bring blankets and picnic lunches as they spend the day on the bay culminating in the 4th of July fireworks show. Since 2017, the Port of San Diego has regulated fireworks through our ordinance, which was developed in consultation with environmentalists. We take pride in the fact that our ordinance exceeds, and we've been told far exceeds, what other jurisdictions are doing. Until this year, the fireworks have been conducted within exemption from the requirements of a CDP. For this year's 4th of July show, we learned that a CDP would be necessary, and the timing of this has been a challenge, given that contracts with pyrotechnic, pyrotechnic companies are usually entered into, and fundraising begins the year prior to a 4th of July show. This year, the Armed Services YMCA is scrambling to put the pieces together and are moving forward with contracts at risk so that we can be ready for the 4th of July. We are grateful to be before you at this hearing because it gives us just enough time to make things work and fulfill the conditions of the CDP. In the interest of collaboration and getting a permit by February, we have made some significant concessions, including we have made some significant concessions, including a 15% cumulative reduction in the first year and a 20% cumulative reduction in the second year in the total weight of fireworks from overwater barge shows over San Diego Bay, as allowed by the Port District's ordinance. And the Port District commits to fund and complete a drone pilot project study. We also appreciate the local San Diego environmental groups who have been willing to communicate with us about their needs, expectations, and concerns. The concessions were crafted with them in mind as well. They have raised a few other additional items that we have also agreed to. Now I'll turn it over to Joe.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair, Commissioners. Joe Stuyvesant from the Board of Management of Armed Services YMCA. I'm speaking on behalf of the nonprofit Event Producer. Armed Services YMCA has been serving military families in San Diego for over 105 years, and we've been proudly associated with Big Bay Boom for 24 years. Our show results in significant free activation event for all Californians while raising funds for military families serving our country. The challenges confronting our young military families are at an unprecedented level. Primarily funded by donations, the Armed Services YMCA provides essential services such as bi-monthly food distributions, childcare, and support to Naval Medical Center wounded, injured, and ill. We're grateful to everyone who's worked to get us to this hearing today. It's been an educational journey. While we're behind schedule on our fundraising, with your approval today, we will have enough time to put a show that all Californians will be proud of this Fourth of July. We understand and support the staff conditions, which will result in a show that we can all feel good about. Special thanks to the San Diego Coastal Staff for working with us. We thank you for your support and education. We respectfully urge your support and request a yes vote. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, we'll go on to members of the public. So how many members of the public do we have signed up for this item?
We have nine speakers.
Okay. Do we have any in person?
We have two in person.
Okay, so we'll start with the people who are in person with two minutes, and then we'll move on to the individuals who are online.
We'll start with Ann Cantrell, followed by Gordana Kajer. And then our first Zoom speakers will be Anna Christensen, followed by Kristen Northrop and David Koontz.
Hello again, Ann Cantrell, Sierra Club Los Ritas Wetlands Task Force. I hope you've been able to read our letter, which is in the correspondence for this item. Although staff addresses water pollution and nesting bird disturbances caused by fireworks, they fail to mention war-conditioned, serious other issues: air pollution, negative effects on veterans, victims of gun violence, children with sensory processing issues, and trauma to pets. Most troubling is the excuse that drones will affect nesting birds when studies show that night drone shows do not affect nesting birds, especially at the height and distance of this San Diego Bay location. In their original report, staff dismissed substituting fireworks with drone shows this year because there was not enough prep time. In the addendum, special condition one was changed to give the promoters not one, but two years to implement a drone show. It took me one hour on Google to locate two experienced drone show operators in the area willing to do shows this July. Jeff Stern of Drone Show IO, based in San Diego, wrote, "We would love to do shows in both San Diego and Long Beach this year, especially since we just upgraded our fleet." Unquote. If you approve this application, you will be setting a precedent, making it very difficult to deny other applicants. We urge you to deny the application and suggest alternative ways to celebrate holidays instead of polluting and ear-splitting fireworks. I guess I can't.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gordana Kajer.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Gordana Kajer. I live in Long Beach. I'm a member of the Coastal Environmental Rights Foundation, SERF. And it's clear that SERF does not support any fireworks show discharged over California's coastal waters. But we do support coastal staff and this commission for thinking long-term and moving to a world that enjoys celebrations that do not negatively impact our coastal environment. Special condition one for a drone implementation study as an alternative to fireworks is especially significant. We look forward to the results of this study and how the data can be used to understand the impacts of drone shows proposed for other parts of California. I'd like to remind you that Long Beach is the home of the Big Bang on the Bay, the subject of a CDP for fireworks launched every year over Alameda's Bay. Last year's Long Beach fireworks show, held in September, was permitted with a condition to submit a completed CDP no later than January 15th for the fireworks show planned for this July. The application for this year was indeed received by your staff. Sadly, it was deemed incomplete just last week. The Long Beach applicant, John Morris, and the Naples Restaurant Group neglected.
Ma'am, can I pause you for a sec?
Yes.
Since we're talking about the San Diego item, let's not talk about the Long Beach item today.
I understand. I simply would like to remind you that there's a great contrast between the applicant of this show in San Diego and their amazing willingness to work with your staff and to understand the consequences of fireworks going into the future. I'd like to just remind you that the CDP for Long Beach will be coming up before you in the near future. If and when it does happen, please consider the attitude of the applicant in San Diego and the applicant in Long Beach as we move ahead. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Moving on to our Zoom participants, we'll start with Anna Christensen. So you're joining via phone. You should be able to unmute now. You can unmute by dialing star six. Anna Christensen, are you there? Okay, we're going to move on for a second and come back. Next would be Kristen Northrop. You should be able to unmute now.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Kristen Northrop, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Coastal Environmental Rights Foundation, also known as SERF, as policy advocate. We do not support fireworks as a long-term solution, but we recognize and appreciate the efforts of both the staff and the commission in trying to think long-term, and we support staff's recommendations. By exploring alternatives, we're taking a step closer where celebrations don't harm our environment. The reduction in debris and the proactive monitoring of the conditions are important steps forward. Additionally, the conditions set in place to minimize the amount of fireworks used are a positive development, and we are hopeful that these actions will have a lasting beneficial impact. One of the most significant advances in this proposal is a drone pilot project. This initiative holds great promise, not only here, but as a potential model for other communities as well. If successful, it could allow us to celebrate without the negative environmental effects that traditional fireworks bring. SERF has been active in the discussion around fireworks for many years. A portion of our efforts are mentioned in Mackenzie Elmer's Voice of San Diego article cited in the addendum. We are grateful to staff for bringing this matter before the commission and for their ongoing efforts to identify alternatives. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And next will be David Koontz, followed by Courtney Brown, and then we'll try Anna Christensen again. David Koontz, you should be able to unmute now.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and staff. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Okay, thank you very much. I'm Dave Koontz from the USS Midway Museum in San Diego, California, and I'm speaking in favor of the coastal development permit application for the Big Bay Boom fireworks. The Big Bay Boom fireworks is a very important community event here in San Diego, and it's a tremendous activation for everybody in San Diego and our visitors on San Diego Bay. As was stated earlier by Leslie, more than a quarter million people do flock along San Diego Bay in a tremendously positive activation every year for these fireworks. And it's also important to note, as Joe Stuyvesant did, that this is an event that tremendously supports very, very critical programs for the Armed Services YMCA. And I'd like to let you know that the USS Midway Museum is an icon here in San Diego, and we only support quality events. I think there's just a tremendously excellent plan in place that's done in conjunction with the recommendations of coastal staff to ensure that there is no negative environmental impact on the bay in conjunction with these fireworks. And I would request that the Commissioners vote to approve this application request. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Courtney Brown, followed by Anna Christensen, and then Mitch Silverstein. Courtney Brown, you should be able to unmute.
Hello. Good afternoon. Courtney Brown with San Diego Coastkeeper. For years, Coastkeeper has advocated for greater awareness about the harmful impacts, ecological impacts of fireworks displays over surface waters, including before this commission. However, we fully recognize and appreciate the efforts of the commission in thinking long-term and moving us closer to a future where celebrations don't have to harm the environment. Approving the permit with staff's recommended special conditions will surely bring us closer to this goal. For instance, conditions requiring a reduction in debris, monitoring and reporting, reducing the amount of allowable fireworks will all curtail environmental impacts and increase public transparency. Additionally, we are very supportive of the drone pilot project condition, which will provide meaningful, practical insight for shifting to less impactful alternative displays in the future. As noted in the staff report, the best way to avoid pollutants entering coastal waters is to avoid them being present in the first place. Therefore, as long as fireworks continue, all conditions recommended by staff must be strictly followed. So in conclusion, we respectfully request the commission approve the CDP as conditioned. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anna Christensen, please try unmuting now. You should be able to unmute by dialing star six. I see that you're unmuted.
Yes. Do you want me to mute?
No, please go ahead.
So I'm a member of the Los Ritas Wetlands Task Force, and we have been involved in trying to stop a single fireworks show over several years in Alameda's Bay in Long Beach. And we have done surveys. We have had people sign petitions. We have talked to all kinds of residents. And we have also researched the impacts of fireworks where studies were done that were a lot more extensive and very expensive to do. We appreciate that it does cost money to do surveys. And what the conclusion that I have reached about this is that it's really just a matter of public will. And we give away an awful lot to people who simply decide that they can do something, whether it's a Naples Restaurant Group or a boat owner who takes people out in the ocean on tours. They propose a project and on it goes. Now, I have no doubt that some of these people are sincerely trying to raise funds, but you can do good without doing harm. What there is no doubt about is that fireworks are extremely harmful. They're extremely harmful to our environment, and we're doing these to do what? To celebrate freedom? But is this to celebrate our country's freedom, a foundation? Is this really the proper thing, or in our case, to celebrate Boys and Girls Club, to give money to boys and girls? But what is the lesson implicit in creating these highly toxic and polluting events for just a moment of fun? I mean, it's cruel. You're cruel to veterans. So this may be the armed forces benefit thing for veterans, but it's just, these are acts of cruelty.
Thank you.
So please, we cannot support fireworks anymore.
Thank you. Next, Mitch Silverstein, and then our last speaker will be Andrew Meyer. Mitch Silverstein.
Honorable Chair Cummings and Commissioners, Mitch Silverstein, San Diego County Policy Manager with Surf Fighter Foundation. As an environmental organization concerned with coastal water quality and marine wildlife, we naturally have concerns about debris and toxins from thousands of pounds of fireworks being launched directly over San Diego Bay. We don't usually support fireworks, and we still don't for those reasons. However, we also understand that July 4th fireworks are a longstanding and very popular tradition here in all of the U.S. and that we can't change it overnight. It does take time to move beyond fireworks to better alternatives. With that in mind, we do appreciate the work staff did on this and support their recommendation to approve the conditions. The fact that fireworks shows like the Big Bay Boom are now coming before the commission with a CDP application in the first place is progress in and of itself, and we appreciate and support the proposed conditions. We especially appreciate special condition one, which, among other things, requires support to conduct an implementation study for a drone show with a substantially lower volume of fireworks or no fireworks. Of the two, we would, of course, prefer no fireworks. We'd also prefer that this drone implementation study take one year and not two. Regardless, this does help to set the stage for an eventual potential replacement of the Big Bay Boom with a drone or laser show that would likely be far less impactful to water quality, marine life, and birds. We also appreciate the subsequent special conditions, such as special condition number three, which limits some of the toxic and non-biodegradable materials often used at fireworks shows. Lastly, we support conditions requiring cleanup and restoration, nesting bird surveys and protection, and pre- and post-monitoring for marine wildlife and water quality. We ask for strict enforcement of all special conditions and thank staff and the commission for moving the needle towards a reduced amount of fireworks, better conditions, and the eventual replacement of fireworks shows with better alternatives such as drones. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Andrew Meyer.
Hello, this is Andrew Meyer, Director of Conservation at San Diego Bird Alliance. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you to the coastal commissioners and especially to coastal commission staff for all the work on this application. San Diego Bird Alliance is optimistic that the habitat, endangered species, and water quality impacts of fireworks events are being addressed more fully by the coastal commission and coastal commission staff in this application. With several other partners, we recently helped move the city of San Diego, the city council, towards supporting greatly restricting fireworks shows in Mission Bay after a die-off of elegant tern after July 4th fireworks shows there. So this is very pertinent. This is a very important issue, as been mentioned by many other of the speakers, and we greatly appreciate the work that's gone into this application and the path that is very clearly displayed after the course of these two years and this application. The San Diego Bird Alliance hopes that the application will be improved in the following way. On page two, YMCA acknowledges that a drone show would produce less noise, less water quality impacts, but the presence of drones could antagonize local birds into attacking the drones. So this was mentioned earlier. We would strongly encourage the applicant to provide documentation to back up the claim. It would help establish the known impacts of the issue. Drones have had disastrous impacts on birds, but many of those known issues could be avoided by drone shows occurring at night, occurring outside of a buffer of known bird nesting colonies, and maintaining minimum heights above sensitive areas. So more information over the course of this drone study would be very helpful, especially on that particular issue. And we appreciate that special condition number one was improved to be very clear that at least one of the alternatives studied will be a fully drone and fully no-firework show that the port and fellow co-applicants will be looking at. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Chair Cummings.
All right. Well, I'll open it back up to the applicants in case you want to make any final comments, given that you ceded some of your time towards the end of this public comment period. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, with that, I'll turn it back to staff to see if there's any remarks based on some of the comments that we've heard today.
I'd like to make just a couple of comments. First of all, I want to thank everybody for coming today, and I just wanted to note that this commission has learned a lot about the effects of fireworks on coastal resources over the last year or two. And I want to appreciate members of the public for bringing these issues to our attention and really helping us to dig in and understand what those potential impacts are. That said, I agree with some of what the public speaker said about this really being a transition. I think we do want to encourage and promote other alternatives, but understand that we can't simply flip a switch and immediately get that change. And that's just not a realistic way to approach it. So I think as staff, we've really been approaching this as a transition. And that transition will look different in different places. We have to look at each. We have to look at each case individually, the facts on the ground, the applicants, et cetera. So I want to really appreciate the port, the YMCA, for working with us on this and understanding that we're trying to learn some things about other alternatives. We understand it's hard, and we-- I want to acknowledge the time limitations, and, you know, we tried to get this hearing as quick as we could, and we're all a little bit in a time crunch here, so just want to appreciate that and note that we're-- I just-- it's better when we can be on that transition journey together, and we're just gonna have to keep working through it. And that does include, for example, understanding potential impacts of drone shows as one alternative and other-- we do need to learn those things. But, you know, we're-- I think this-- this application really does move the needle as-- and that's where we're trying to go here. So just wanted you to understand our thinking as staff. We have heard you and what you-- you know, what you have-- what you're looking for and understanding that there are coastal resource impacts from fireworks, and we do need to begin to move away and avoid those. And so that's where we're trying to-- we're trying to do that here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for questions and comments, and start with Commissioner Uranga.
Thank you, Chair. Obviously, I'm not new to this topic here. As been mentioned several times, Long Beach has its Big Bang on the Bay, and last year was a very controversial issue that came up. But we're learning-- we're learning more and more about how we can best mitigate and get away from using fireworks. Condition One, I think, is an excellent move. I think Alumbridge said it best, is that it's a transition, there's a period of transition where in order to get away from one and get into the other, you come into this space where you have to make a move eventually. And I see that coming as well with Long Beach. I really am-- I try my best, everything works, to read all this, but there were a few of you that stood out. And one was obviously the purposeful effort to lower the amount of fireworks used by 15%. And in coming years, you had less. When you look at the fact that this event here in San Diego has been going on for 24 years, you're right, you can't just stop and move in another direction. It takes time, and it takes a transition. Yeah, people are getting used to the idea that fireworks are on their way out, drones perhaps, or maybe something else comes in, it's on its way in, and we need to be open to that. And I think that one of the things that we need to especially keep in mind is that we have to keep an open mind about all these celebrations and what they're for. I've always been a person that says, you know, traditions are great, but some traditions just need to go away. Some traditions have run their course, and it's time to move on. And this is one of them. So with that, I'm not gonna change my vote again. I'm gonna stick with my brothers and sisters in San Diego because that's what we do in Long Beach. But I want to also encourage you to take advantage of Condition One, because I know we're doing that in Long Beach as well. We're looking at that, and the sooner the better. But I will be supporting you in the item today. Thank you. And when you're ready, Chair, I can make the motion.
Okay, sounds good. Commissioner Navha, and then we have Commissioner Escalante.
I do want to really acknowledge, it seems like you've come a long way, and certainly by the testimony that we got from groups that you've consulted with and that are-- recognize this transition, that's really reassuring. I did want to ask if the applicant-- there was one suggestion by the San Diego Bird Alliance for an amendment to Condition One, and I wondered if that's something that you had heard before and had considered, or would you consider it now?
We're coming up together. My name is Allison. I'm with Collaborative Land Use Solutions, and Commissioner, we're aware of the topic, but I wanted to just clarify. It was the suggestion that we provide data about the--
In the first year, I believe. We could clarify with Andrew Meyer, I think, is if he's still on board, but I think that's what he was suggesting.
I don't think it's a problem. I think he raised it in his letter, correct?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. If it's the same issue that was raised in his letter--
Then we are comfortable agreeing to that.
So would staff be able to amend that condition to reflect that?
It wasn't clear to me that he was looking for an amendment. My understanding was that he wanted better data on the impacts of drone shows on birds, but the condition already requires a study of drones and their potential impacts, so we could ask for clarification, but it wasn't my understanding that an actual amendment was needed.
Or maybe a commitment to getting something within the year. Is Andrew Meyer on the-- is he still around? No.
Sorry, I accidentally just muted you.
Oh, it's in the letter, maybe.
Andrew, you're on.
Hello. Thank you, Commissioner, and hello, Port and Allison. Yeah, the-- I-- the Special Condition Number One, this is straight from our letter, but my understanding is that Special Condition Number One has now been improved to say that the drone study will include a drone-only portion as well as a drone-plus fireworks portion. That was in our letter, and I feel I-- as far as I understand, that's been improved now to guarantee that one of the-- one of the pieces of the study that will happen is a drone-only study. The other piece was just that I encouraged the applicant to include more information on the known impacts of drones and bird nesting colonies. They mentioned that on page two, and I think it's pretty unsubstantiated in their letter. So I would love more information as the study goes along on that particular issue.
So if I can just jump in real quick, I think if the request is encouraging you all to provide more information on the impacts of drones on bird nesting colonies, I think that would just be something that would-- I think that it sounds like Commissioner Navha and members of the public would appreciate just some more information on that when the study comes forward.
Absolutely. We intend it to be a very comprehensive study, which would be inclusive of suggestions.
Great.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, so Commissioner Escalante, followed by Commissioner Hart.
You guys probably heard that I wasn't a big fan of fireworks, but today I'm happy to align myself with Commissioner Uranga. I think I'm very excited of how collaborative you guys have been, how open-minded, that you've been working with a lot of the local enviros, sort of getting the buy-in, and I think it'll be helpful also to, you know, create the-- this-- as it kind of gets rolled out, you know, to the public, getting also the public's buy-in and enthusiastic buy-in into the new drone world. We really appreciate you guys working on this. So I'm a yes.
All right, Commissioner Hart, you still have comments?
My comments were related to the need for more study on-- because of the comment that drones impact birds, so I'm looking forward to seeing that data. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. If there's no further questions or comments from Commissioners, I'll just say, well, first I just want to thank staff for all their hard work, and I want to thank the Port District of San Diego for-- and the Armed Forces YMCA for really being collaborative partners in this effort and, you know, taking into account the concerns being brought up by the community, actually realizing you need a coastal development permit and coming forward to get one in a timely manner, and just, you know, that willingness and then the willingness of the staff to try to help you all, you know, in this effort and with the recognition that there's a desire to see us move away from fireworks and towards other, less impactful forms of just light shows, to say, I think really provides the commission with confidence that we're working in good faith and we're collaborative in this effort. And so, yeah, I guess I'll just leave my comments there because I just-- I think this is a really good moment for us when we're coming together and working together and is able to demonstrate that agencies are-- can be working collaboration and not in conflict. And so with that, I'm happy to pass it back to Commissioner Uranga to hear the motion on this item.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. I want to add that I do commend staff for working with the city of San Diego in coming to a solution that has long-term impacts for this type of event. I'm moving that the commission approved coastal commission development permit, six-dash-two-four-dash-zero-eight-zero-six pursuant to the staff recommendation, and recommend a yes vote.
I'll second. So we have a motion by Commissioner Uranga, seconded by Chair Cummings, and we're asking for a yes vote on the motion that's before us. With that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Miller for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Uranga?
Aye.
Uranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner Escalante?
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Hart, yes. Commissioner Lowenberg?
Yes.
Lowenberg, yes. Commissioner Navha?
Aye.
Navha, yes. Commissioner Turnbull Sanders?
Yes.
Turnbull Sanders, yes. Chair Cummings?
Yes.
Cummings, yes. The vote is unanimous.
Great. All right, well, that concludes our February meeting. Before we go, I just want to thank Billy and all of his crew, the IT people. We wouldn't be able to do this without you. And then I want to thank all of our commission staff who helped us here today, members of the public for being here. Our next meeting will be in one of my favorite cities in California, which is Santa Cruz, and that meeting will be held March 12th to the 14th at the Courtyard Marriott. And since we're here, I'll just say that if any Commissioners are interested in coming early on Tuesday, like early afternoon, I know there's some interest in the city of Santa Cruz of wanting to take you all on some tours, and I'm interested as well to show you all the repairs that have been made on West Cliff, the damage done to the wharf this year, the damage done to the harbor, just so you all can get a sense of kind of what's been going on, and also so we can ask questions of city staff, since none of those items will be on our agenda.
Congratulations, Chair, on completing your first run of meetings. You killed it. Thanks.
And I also want to thank you all for coming to Long Beach. I hope you had a great stay and have a good time.
All right, we will.
Be safe.
Chair, could I just say, thank you so much. I'm sorry. I just wanted to acknowledge and thank Commissioner Uranga. My understanding at the beginning is that you said this was your final meeting?
I'm turned out in May.
So we have a few more months, because I couldn't--
Here in Long Beach, yeah.
So you'll be up at Santa Cruz with us and--
Yes.
Oh, fantastic. Okay.
Your plans go well, yes.
No, that's fantastic. Good, because I just wanted to acknowledge you, and you too, Chair, what a great job for your first meeting.
Thanks. All right, with that, let's be done.